Okay. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the December 8, 2020 Glendale City Council meeting. Due to evolving situation with COVID-19 and health recommendations from LA County Health Department, the Glendale City Council meeting will be available to the public electronically. Due to social distancing requirements, the public will not be able to attend the meeting. This meeting can be viewed on local cable spectrum and Charter Cable Channel 6 and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. You may also stream online through our website, www.glandelca.gov, by scrolling all the way to the bottom of the webpage and selecting "Live Streaming", which is the third icon from the left. For public comments and questions during the meeting, call 818-937-8100, which is on the screen. Please do not call in advance of the agenda item. With this being said, may I have roll call, please?
Councilmember Brotman.
Here.
Devine? Councilmember Devine?
You're on mute, Paula.
We can't hear you, but we'll mark you as here.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, we hear you now.
Oh, we hear you now.
All right, okay.
Councilmember Kasakian?
Here.
Najarian?
Here.
Mayor Agajanian?
Present. So, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a very common republic and one nation, with liberty, justice for all. Thank you.
Please remain standing for tonight's invocation. Heavenly Father, we thank you this evening for your continued blessings on this community and its citizens. Grant our elected officials the wisdom to make appropriate decisions. Be with each of us in our daily lives that we present ourselves in a manner that is pleasing to you. In your name, we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you. Next item, please.
Next would be the agenda for December 8, 2020, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council, which was posted on Wednesday, December 2, 2020, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Mayor, next item would be presentations and appointments, and we're going to go ahead and get the agenda preview for the meeting of Tuesday, December 15, 2020.
Now? Ms. Golani? Who's next?
Mike?
Okay, so we do it at a later time?
Yes, sir.
All right. Next item.
Next item would be consent items, including minutes. The following are routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed.
Okay.
I'll move the consent calendar.
Just a second, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Brotman.
I have a few comments on... Which item here? Hold on. The Montrose Community Park project, can we pull that?
Okay. Montrose Community Park. That's...
It's item 4B.
That's 4B.
All right, so we pull 4B for the...
Yeah, I'll move the rest of the consent calendar, so it's okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes, so, okay, could you read... The clerks read item 4B, Public Works, Montrose Community Park Project.
Public Works, Montrose Community Park Projects, B1, Resolution Adopting the Plans and Specifications for the Montrose Community Park Project, specification number 339, plans numbers 22-100 and 49-245, and directing the city clerk to advertise for bid.
Thank you, Mr. Brotman.
Yeah, I don't know, does Mr. Imran want to say anything? Or, yeah, I think it would be Mr. Imran, does he want to tee this up? Or should I just mention my... Give my comments right now?
Is Mr. Imran on... Yes, he's here. Mr. Imran, you want to brief us on this item 4B?
Sure, be happy to. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. This is a project that we are making some improvements to Montrose Park parking lot mainly, including resurfacing of the parking lot and the removal and replacement of the electrical conduits that are underneath the parking lot. We're also constructing some curb ramps, ADA curb ramps, and repairing sidewalks and deteriorated asphalt concrete pavement. The size of this parking lot is about 20,500 square feet. It's part of a two-phase approach. This is phase one of it, and then phase two could be additional improvement to the park amenities. And be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Imran. Is there any question, Mr. Brotman?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a couple of comments, and Mr. Imran and I have already talked about this, but we are, you know, we're replacing the asphalt in a parking lot, and we know that asphalt is, you know, problematic for a number of reasons. And there are efforts, I know, already underway to look at alternatives, or at least coatings that we can put on it to keep it from getting overly hot. As everybody knows, we have hotter and hotter summers, and the heat from the asphalt actually does... Or the heat, I should say. Once it hits the asphalt, does release chemicals that are polluting and potentially harmful to children's health. So I just wanted to make sure that we look at every opportunity when we're doing these kinds of projects to use materials that are going to be reflective. And I would also urge us to look at materials that are permeable as much as possible or a way to design it so that there's permeability of the groundwater, because we certainly want water seeping into that aquifer there rather than going into the storm drain system. And the third thing I would like us to always consider are materials that are lower in their embedded carbon content. And one thing that I know Councilmember Kasakian asked for some time ago was an environmentally preferred purchasing policy, and that's a policy that would take a look at everything we buy and kind of put a weighting on the environmental impact so that we take that into consideration when we make purchases. And some, you know, some materials are going to be lower carbon than others, and I would like to make sure that we do always take that into account and we make the best environmental choices we can when we choose the materials that our contractors put on. So I don't know, in this case, to what extent some of these things could be worked in, but I wanted to definitely pull this and raise this point in the hopes that we will consider these, you know, every time we look at any kind of a replacement of any of the asphalt in the city.
Thanks. Okay, yes, Mr. Najarian?
So, you know, along those lines, one of the things that we need to keep in mind is, is it better to recycle the asphalt by digging it up and recycling it like we do with some of our roadway services? So there's a lot of different factors, and I don't know the answer to those questions, but those are things that we need to keep in mind. This should be, you know, so to sort of get on a tangent, this is stuff that our, hopefully, our Sustainability Commission can deal with and set a series of standards and procedures. Whenever we do something, this isn't a huge parking lot, it's like half an acre, but whether it's our roadways or whatever, this is the sort of thing I envision our Sustainability Commission in working on and setting up some guidelines for advice to council and to, you know, anyone else. Because it's a lot of, everything we do, I mean, everything we do has an environmental component. From the park, we're going to discuss later on, to, you know, the bikeway on Verdugo Wash. So I'm looking forward to getting our commission involved and helping us with some of these analyses, so. But I agree with Mr. Brotman's...
Thank you, Mr. Brotman. You want to move the item?
I think Mr. Imran wanted to respond to some of the points.
I guess, Mr. Imran, Imran, would you want to answer that?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Brotman. Yes, we are going to look at any opportunity on the coatings as they definitely have that heat island effect that we are trying to minimize as much as possible. And we are going to be looking at some candidate parking lots for the potential permeable pavement to see what would be a good candidate to be able to implement them. So we would be looking at all of them.
Ms. Devine?
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Imran, you do this with every project you do in the city, don't you? I mean, look at state-of-the-art, the most environmentally friendly. Is that part of your policy in Public Works?
We try to do that, for example, to Councilmember Najarian's point in terms of recycled asphalt. We look at any application that we can do that uses, for example, recycled tires. We have projects that use recycled tires as part of the mix, and we try to do that where possible. Some of these are a little bit more expensive than others, but as the technology is becoming more and more available, we are going to look at that more and more as we're making our designs, yes.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Sure, I'll move the item in the meantime, hoping that as these come up in the future, there's more explicit, you know, discussion on some of these points. But I'll move the item for now, thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes, what's next, please?
Mayor Agajanian, we do have the agenda preview for the meeting of Tuesday, December 15, 2020. I do believe the city manager is going to go ahead and read that.
All right, Mr. Golani?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, member of city council. We apologize for that delay. For December 15, 2020, we don't have a business agenda item for the Housing Authority. And... Nothing on the special city council agenda. We do, however, have a joint meeting of city council and the Housing Authority in the afternoon to commence at 2:00 PM. One item from Community Development regarding request to note and file the 2019-2020 Low and Moderate Income Housing Asset Fund Annual Report. In the evening, we have a fairly substantial agenda, which includes three items on the consent. The meeting will start at 6:00 PM. First one from Public Works, regarding the approval of the final map of a six-unit condominium subdivision at 344 West Melford Street, followed by the Police Department regarding the 2020 DNA Capacity Enhancement and Backlog Reduction Grant, followed by Glendale Water and Power regarding the GWP power source disclosure for calendar year 2019. Under action items, from Community Development regarding Armenian-American Museum and Cultural Center of California, followed by GWP regarding amendment with StanTech Consulting Services and with Black &amp; Veatch Corporation for additional professional services pertaining to the limited notice to proceed phase of the proposed Grayson Repowering Project Alternatives. From Finance, Resolution of Appropriation Approving $1,404 in adjustments to the adopted fiscal year 2021 budget, followed by GWP regarding update to GWP's Public Benefit Programs fiscal year 2021. Finance, regarding annual financial reports for the city of Glendale as of June 30, 2020. Police Department, amendment to the agreement between the city and Axon Enterprises to expand the scope to purchase unmanned aerial aircraft systems. Pardon me. Community Services and Parks, regarding fiscal year 1920 Annual Action Plan, substantial amendment for Community Development Block Grant CDVG, ESG and Home Investment Partnership Act funding. Finally, from management's... No, I'm sorry, two items from Management Services. One, resolution to cease current and future business activities with firms associated with the governments of Azerbaijan and Turkey and boycott of products produced in Azerbaijan and Turkey. Finally, Management Services, regarding discussion of establishing a local public health department. That concludes my report, Mr. Me.
Is that all? Okay, thank you. All right. Now, I would like to invite my colleagues to share any comments that they have. Anybody wants to... Ms. Devine?
Okay, I have a... I had, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of things. First of all, on the COVID-related items, I received this email, I'm sure we all did again, but just if Mr. Golani or the city attorney or anyone else that's at the meeting. The parking street sweeping days, we have extended the citations for a month, correct? For parking streets, for street sweeping days?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, member of city council, Councilmember Devine, we have relaxed those citations for a month, and we have issued a notice, as you indicated. We have also providing free parking for the first 20 minutes to facilitate delivery and pickup of food from restaurants. And this has gone effect as of yesterday. Our parking garages will continue to operate as normal with the first 90 minutes free.
Okay, thank you. And mask enforcement? We're still, the police department is still kind of going through the city, watching out and giving out gift cards for those that are conforming to the mandate?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, member of city council, Councilmember Devine, that is absolutely correct. We are staying the course and following up on the protocols and incentive with the gift cards. If you'd like a brief run over the numbers of the citations, we have Robert William on the call from the Police Department.
Have they been given... Well, if he has a little report, that would be great. We can find out that there is actual enforcement, because I think a lot of people don't believe that.
Yes.
Though I think a report would be very important right now.
Captain William?
Captain William, Robert William?
Hi.
Yes, he's here.
Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
All right, thank you. Mayor Agajanian, members of city council, actually, thank you very much for giving me an opportunity to briefly go over some of these numbers. Like you said, Councilmember Devine, there seems to be a perception that the Police Department is doing enough, is not doing enough. And as a resident of Glendale, I sometimes see those comments as well. But I hope the numbers that I'm about to share with you kind of put those perceptions aside, because I think our department has been very active since the beginning of the pandemic. So I'll start from there. Going back to March of 2020, we have made approximately 7,200 contacts. The vast majority of those contacts have been self-initiated by our officers. To be exact, 6,682 of those contacts have been initiated by our officers. 518 of those have been calls for service, meaning people have called the Police Department on incidents related to social distancing and people not wearing masks. About 4,747 of those contacts have been at city parks. And beginning in August, our department, we took two officers and we designated them as response officers, if you will, for COVID-19-related incidents. And they've been working since August, seven days a week, and they continue to work. And they are responsible for handling any calls for service related to COVID-related calls in terms of social distancing and the mask mandate. This is in addition to just our patrol officers. Also, our patrol officers, motor officers, essentially anybody else that's working out in the field, all of them are responsible to handle enforcement and education as they see. But specific to this unit, I'd like to share some numbers with them as well. To date, those officers, the manpower, has been roughly 2,500 hours spent on enforcement and education. As I mentioned, we've had 7,200 contacts. These two officers have been responsible for 5,600 observations that they initiated themselves, 402 calls for service that they handled. They've issued 123 citations for our social distancing as well as the mask mandate. And you asked earlier if we provide cards. So there's a little bit of a bright side to this as well. So we have issued 94 gift cards for those who are actually complying as a positive encouragement, I guess. So, again, I mean, the Police Department has been very active and very involved. I'm not aware of any other agencies that have dedicated officers specific to mask enforcement and social distancing enforcement. In the last several months, we have stepped up our efforts specifically as it relates to the parks. We do get a lot of calls related to the parks, and so we've been working very closely with our Parks and Rec Department. We've been working very closely with our economic development as well as LA County Department of Health to address a lot of the issues involving restaurants and outdoor dining and, under the current order, illegal dining outside of restaurants. So we're trying to address those as well. And on top of everything else, we are still addressing some of our other priorities as it relates to speed enforcement, traffic-related issues. We're addressing, you know, calls related to mental health, homelessness, and we're averaging about 10,000 to 12,000 calls per month. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, if there are any.
Well, thank you, Captain Williams. That's very informative, and I hope that our residents appreciate the hearing, and I'm sure they do, hearing exactly what you're doing, because as I say, and you know, there is that perception out there. Thank you very much. I don't know if any of my colleagues, I have more to... Mr. Brotman, I guess, has...
Well, I did want to talk about the same topic, but I'll let you finish and then...
Thank you, thank you. And, okay, so then I'll get back to Mr. Golani and city manager. The city, we have signage in all of our multi-unit buildings and commercial buildings. I think I've seen them all over.
Yes, Mr. Member of city council, Councilmember Devine, we did have them previously as the onset of the pandemic was happening, but we are working on additional signage if necessary to either replenish the ones that are missing or facilities that don't have them already.
Okay, well, this particular person is asking about multi-unit buildings. So if you can maybe put an emphasis on that or a little asterisk by those locations. Next question is about the GWP bill payment. Have we extended the moratorium on that so that there will not be retaliation?
Councilmember Devine, I am not sure if we have, but I will have to double-check with our GWP folks and get back to you.
Okay, all right, thank you. And last one is, where are we on the, if you refresh my memory, on the eviction moratorium? Going along with the state?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, member of city council, Councilmember Devine, we are bringing a report to you next week, December 15, to go over the options. City attorney is going to do that item.
Thank you, okay, thank you. And my next item, and I've talked to staff about this, I received an email concerning the Friends of Griffith Park, and I've asked for a report on the ATS, that's the Aerial Transit System, that the city of LA is thinking about putting, erecting, constructing in Griffith Park. And the Friends of Griffith Park are opposed to it, along with a lot of other, like the Sierra Club. Senator Portantino has written a letter to Mayor Garcetti. Burbank City Council is writing letters to the city, to the mayor in opposition of this tram. So they are requesting, the Friends of Griffith Park are requesting that our city council also write a letter of opposition to the tram. It could be as many as 24 towers. And the impacts that they're talking about, the ATS would angle around the park with massive towers. Some route options call for up to 24 of these towers. It would ambush wildlife, native plants, and peace for hikers. And most importantly for us, and this is where it impacts our community, would be the equestrian community of, over at the Rancho. So I don't know if anyone wants to second this request, but until we get a report from staff on this project, but I just wanted to bring that up in case my fellow, my colleagues are aware of this, what's going on, and if you would like to have staff look into it and oppose this.
I'll second that.
Thank you, thank you, Councilmember Kasakian. My final... This is a suggestion, and this might go to Oni or to Rubik. And I read a very interesting... And I read a very interesting article about a free pilot project in Portland, Oregon. And it's it involves e-cargo bikes. And it's done through Saris, S-A-R-I-S, infrastructure, and it is being used by their Parks Bureau. They are three-wheeled bikes with storage bins attached. And they can carry up to 881 pounds of payload, that's debris and leaves and whatever, plus the rider. It's a 250 watt engine, but it 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 has hauling capacity. It's healthier for the employee, and potentially, it's much more efficient. So I'd like for to suggest that maybe staff look into. Maybe we can get a free pilot project here in Glendale because we're working so hard to be environmentally friendly. And I think this would be a a great step if we could get a pilot project like this for our Parks Department.
Yes, definitely, Councilmember Devine. We will look that up and look into it and see if we can bring the same program to Glendale.
Thank you. And my last item is I would like to thank GTB6 and all of the staff that were involved in the virtual Christmas tree lighting last night at 6 o'clock. It was absolutely fantastic. I was cooking and listening to the carols and looking at the kids. And so thank you for doing such a wonderful job for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. My colleagues, is there, Councilmember Rotman?
Yeah, I wanted to, I wanted to follow up on COVID-related enforcement questions. But first, to Mr. Galani, and you read the agenda for next council meeting, but you didn't mention the commercial eviction moratorium. Are we going to be discussing that? Because that, you know, ends at the end of the calendar year, that we, that's something that we is is very time sensitive.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Mayor City Council, Councilmember Rotman. Although it wasn't listed on the agenda, but as I indicated before, this was a last-minute add-on. We'll definitely have it on the agenda for next week.
Okay, so our list is even longer than we thought. Okay, but this one really can't wait. So I'm glad it's on there. Yeah, I I had also been planning to discuss, you know, enforcement of face covering and and social distancing orders. And and I agree, there's there's definitely a perception that we're not doing any enforcement. And I had read these numbers from an earlier report, so I know that it's incorrect. We are doing a lot. There's also a perception that Glendale is doing worse than other communities, other nearby communities when it comes to controlling the spread of the virus. And that that is actually not true, although it keeps coming back for one reason or another. But just just want to point out some interesting data. So Glendale, in the last two weeks, its daily average case rate per 100,000, and you have to do this always per capita, is 44. So 44 new infections per 100,000 each day on average over the last two weeks. The L.A. County is 62. So we, 62 daily new infections per 100,000 for the county as a whole. So we are, we are doing better than average. There are many places doing better than us. The point isn't to say we're doing great, because I'll give you another number in a minute which shows that we're not. But the the point I'm trying to make is we're not an outlier. I want people to understand that, you know, it it's bad, no doubt. But we are not an outlier. And even if you look at our neighboring communities of Burbank and Pasadena, they're pretty much where we are. So that's important to note. However, and I think there's a big however here, is as much as our police department is doing and as much as we are putting up notices, it's still not working. It's still not good enough, and this is the problem. You know, I was, I I got on my bike the other day and and was riding around some of the parks because I wanted to see what was going on out in the world. It can get kind of isolating with COVID. And I I I rode up to Brand Park, and I saw two active picnics on both sides of the road as you come into the park with 12 to 15 people each, some people wearing masks, some people not. Mylar balloons, but that's a separate issue. You know, this is happening anytime you go, you see stuff like this. And I also rode through Verdugo Park, and I saw a whole group of people at a bench, you know, just kind of having a social event. So as much as we're doing, we just are not doing enough. And I was, I was hoping that perhaps staff could look at something that I just read, and you probably read also, that Pasadena is doing. They've set up some kind of a volunteer, I don't know, kind of like a COVID Brigade or something. And I don't have any details about who's on this task force. But they are going out, they're not there to cite people, they're not there to yell at people or get into fights. They're just there to hand out masks and hand out information. And if somebody is intransigent or if some or if there's a situation that doesn't look good, they can, they will call it in. But I think we need to bring the community into this. I think we need more than just leaving this all on our police department because we don't have the resources to do what's needed despite their hard work. So I I would like to get some response from the interim city manager or or anybody else as to this idea. And maybe you can't give me a response right now, but I would like to look at what else we can do besides the police. And again, this is not to say that we're not doing it as Councilmember Devine made it clear by bringing up Mr. William, that we are doing a lot, but it's just not enough. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Councilmember Kusakian, do you have anything to add or I go to?
No, thank you, Mayor. I don't have anything to add. I know we have a full agenda ahead of us.
Thank you. Councilmember Najarian?
Thanks. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of things. I understand that the the item that we've placed on today's agenda for the Health Department may not be addressed as follows. So I had asked the Fire Chief to come forward and give a status on where we are, what the rules are and where we are. So in addition to that, I know this is kind of a last-minute thing. There was a ruling today by Judge Chalfant in the L.A. Superior Court which addressed the county's no outdoor dining program. And I don't know if the city attorney or anyone from the Fire Department is aware of the specifics of that ruling. But if you could fold that into your remarks, no pressure, you've got like 10 minutes. But to fold that into your into your remarks, that would be helpful as well, if you could. The other request I'd like to make is from the police chief and perhaps the city attorney. I understand from reading the news reports that our new district attorney has made a lot of changes with regard to sentencing and bail and arrests. If we could get a short summary of how things have changed, the proposed changes that are being put through and how it would affect Glendale and our law enforcement capabilities. I don't know if anyone wants to hear about that, but I think it would be to our benefit.
I'd like to hear that.
Yeah, that's a great comment, Councilmember Najarian.
Unless unless you've had him on your TV show already, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Gascon.
Don't get the scoop on us.
Mr. Gascon changed lots of things. It's unreal what he's offering. And I don't know where this will go because the, what he is offering is kind of scary, in fact.
Yeah, I won't comment on it at this point, but let's let's go through it. If if the chief or their city attorney or someone, the best, the most knowledgeable person could give us just a little summary of that.
How about if we start with Chief Lanzes? If you have finished your comments?
I have one more.
No problem. Go ahead.
I have one more. This is something that I I foreshadowed several months ago. We are now starting a program. Glendale is one of the few cities in the county that is going to have a micro transit. That will be kicked off this week. And micro transit is a transportation option which will give folks a opportunity to get to and from the train station, bus stations, metro stations in the region and to their work or to their home. So it's, it's not like an Uber or Lyft. There may be some shared rides, but if you can't make that last mile trek to work, you're at the train station or you have to get to the train station or to the bus stop, there will be low-cost transportation available. These will be vehicles, I believe they're a lot, or they're hybrid. They will be staffed by Metro employees and will be kicking that off. As I said, I think the kickoff is a virtual kickoff the end of this week, early next week. But it will soon be available to the residents of Glendale and the surrounding areas, Eagle Rock, I think a little bit of Los Feliz, Silver Lake as well. So that's, it's always a good thing when we can get people out of their cars and and to transit. And I can give you guys a little more detail of that once the program is fully underway. That's all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Najarian. Now I go to our chief, Mr. Galani.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Just in response to a couple of comments and questions. On the ruling by Judge Chalfant, we can cover that. Chief Lanzes and the city attorney Garcia can cover that under item 8D later on this evening. On the new district attorney's proposed changes, Chief Povolitis can provide a report next Tuesday. But if you want an abbreviated version, I'm pretty sure Mike Garcia can cover that. In response to Councilmember Devine's question regarding GWP bills, the the moratorium for not issuing late fees or discontinuing service is in place until the end of December. So there will be no late fees charged or no services disconnected until the end of the year.
Thank you, Mr. Galani. Mr. Garcia, you want to comment or we go to Chief Lanzes?
Well, I think we're going to cover the the health orders during item 8D, Mr. Mayor. And I'm, I can discuss the the issue of the district attorney's announcement, but I think it's it's probably more beneficial that I I confer with the chief and his staff so we can give you a more detailed, either a report next week or written a written report. I do know that there will be some impacts to Glendale and, but I I think it's more appropriate for the chief to speak to them when we've had a chance to actually look at them and and give you give you a broader response.
Okay.
I'm okay with that.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Before we move off of the comments, I I did want to get some feedback on what I talked about, which was finding a way to do more active messaging slash enforcement. Are any of my colleagues interested in us looking at ways that we can involve the community in some form or fashion, looking at what Pasadena has done and seeing how we can step this up? Because I I do think we, we have a problem.
If I'll, I'll second to bring it back for discussion.
Sure, thank you.
But I I will, I'll, if we could sort of expand the the options, Mr. Rotman, as a friendly amendment. You suggested one way of having the ambassadors, if you will. If we can look very broadly and look at other different opportunities as well, I fully support that.
Yeah, it's the end result. I don't care how we get there. Well, not that I don't care. I don't, I don't want to be beating people over the heads and handing out citations left and right. That's not my objective, but we we all, I think we're all on the same page on that.
Thank you. So Chief Lanzes, still, you have to report something?
No, sir, Chief Lanzes will cover that under item 8D.
Oh, okay, thank you. But however, L.A. County reaches tragic milestone on coronavirus. And hopefully, we hear more about it a little bit later because there are, it's unbelievable, 8,547 new positive cases, which is not that bad. I mean, a few days ago, where more people were infected. Okay, we go to callers.
Mayor, we do have five callers. Community event announcements, three-minute portion.
Thank you. Yes, the first caller, please.
Ted Wells, you're live, Ted.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Ted Wells, and I work in a large Glendale business, and I live in Glendale. And I appreciate being in a city that is free of the cannabis shop that troubles other cities. I've recently heard that there is a proposal to overturn the ban. I read this proposal. In one section, they state that they intend to go into the Glendale schools, including the elementary schools, and talk about cannabis use. Really? Where had we heard this tactic before? Well, it was Juul, the vaping company, which was caught teaching school kids about vaping. Juul is now under fire for their unethical behavior, and there are multiple lawsuits against them. Businesses that deal in addicted substances such as pot must attract a young user in order to expand their business. That is simple business fact. Most addictions start in the teens. How could an ethical businessperson even think about going into our schools with their drug message? How could they think our schools would welcome them to teach kids about drug use? Honestly, it is difficult to take the proposal seriously due to the many spelling and grammar errors. Any person who claims to be an expert but doesn't know some of the basic business terms demonstrates the lack of due diligence. I'm in the insurance business, which deals with the field of liability. This proposal is riddled with increased potential liability for Glendale. In this time of COVID-19, we need to focus on the things that matter. There are only so many resources of the city, and keeping the ban helps Glendale to achieve the important goal. Thank you for keeping the ban, and thank you for all you do for Glendale.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Mane Shamirian, you're live, Mane. Go ahead.
Hi, good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. I'm a family nurse practitioner. I specialize in oncology. So throughout the years, I've been working with many patients diagnosed with hematologic and solid tumors and many different cancers. We, I wanted to bring to your attention that currently there are no local cannabis dispensaries in Glendale. We have so many patients and family members who always ask us to provide, you know, a referral to a local cannabis dispensary who can help them with pain management and to prevent their suffering as we know that not a lot of medications can fully help with their pain. So we constantly have to tell them to go find one of these dispensaries on their own because the city of Glendale doesn't allow cannabis dispensaries. So please, I truly, as a healthcare professional, I encourage you as elected officials who have been elected by the city residents to consider at least approving one cannabis dispensary so that our patients and our family members, so that we can refer that to them and they can have an option to choose from. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Hannah Murphy, Hannah, you're live.
Good evening, City Councilmembers. I am Hannah Murphy, and this is the first time I have spoken to a city council. I want to express my support for Glendale's ban on cannabis. I am a young woman who has seen firsthand some of the damage caused by drug use, both illegal and legal. In order to get my point across, let's compare youth tobacco use to youth marijuana use. The tobacco industry profits by hooking kids on flavored nicotine. When the product seems harmless, teen use rises, and nicotine changes to the brain could be permanent. Now, add the warnings about cannabis. The cannabis industry profits by hooking kids on marijuana. When the product seems harmless, teen use rises, and the THC changes to the brain could be permanent. Both of these statements are true and backed by science. Now, here are some differences. The legal age of tobacco and alcohol use in California is 21 years. But due to a loophole in our law, the legal age in our law, the legal age for today's powerful weed is 18. This loophole gives an 18-year-old a medical card which opens the door to future addiction. Per the Surgeon General, no amount of marijuana is known to be safe for teens. How do we fight back against the tobacco industry and the pot industry? Don't normalize the use. Don't put it in easy reach. With each passing month, more studies are released which say that today's pot is a genetically modified drug with unknown future consequences to our mental stability, to our lungs, and to our IQ. What can we do in Glendale to protect the next generation? Keep the ban and let the science catch up. It took decades to prove the case against traditional cigarettes, but less time will be needed to prove the case against use vaping and use marijuana use. It is not too much to ask responsible adults to do the right thing for their kids and grandkids. Let's encourage kids to grow up tobacco-free and drug-free. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next caller.
Eric Simonian, you're live, Eric. Go ahead.
Hello, Honorable Mayor, City Councilmen, City Staff. My name is Eric and I'm calling to address and clarify a phone call that was made by a gentleman last week speaking forward cannabis dispensaries and about its operators either being criminals or attracting criminal activity. I am a cannabis dispensary owner and I operate off of Ventura Boulevard near Studio City Sherman Oaks. I have not seen a single criminal. He also mentioned about homelessness being more in area of cannabis dispens. I'm not sure if the individual is aware that cannabis in the legal market is pretty expensive and not attract any bad actors who may damage the reputation of the city. There are over 15 dispensaries on Ventura Boulevard and I can assure that the home values in terminals and Sino and Studio City have gone up and are probably more expensive now than in Glendale. If cannabis-derived products were so horrible and devastating, why would the World Health Organization recommend the United Nations to approve cannabis last week? U.S. Councilmembers listening to this type of call will jeopardize the city and one day the state will mandate its maximum allowable dispensaries per 15,000 residents. Cannabis businesses, besides providing essential services, also participate in giving back to the community. We provide food for the homeless and provide financial assistance to our neighboring businesses. Some people don't see what we actually do for our neighbors and the community. The individual who was bad mouthing the industry, I bet, has never given back to his community nor donated to the single mothers and families who can't put food on the table or pay their rent at this hard time. I should say that we as cannabis business owners have done and are continually doing. Please consider at least approving a single dispensary in your city and you will see the dedication that the cannabis dispensary owners will provide to your community. Thank you and have a blessed night.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
RB Masih, RB, you're live, go ahead.
Hello, Honorable Mayor and City Council. My name is RB Masih. The purpose for this call is to encourage the City Council to agenda cannabis study session. I'm a local hospice care owner and a licensed nurse practitioner. This is not about kids, this is about terminally ill patients, the patients that have cancer that need other than pain medication. We have a tremendous interest from patient family members to get a recommendation to be able to purchase cannabis. We should approve at least one or two cannabis dispensary in our city so that hundreds of patient family members don't have to go out of their way to different cities to find cannabis products. Please consider agendaizing and approving at least a single dispensary in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller.
Mayor, that was the five callers for now.
Thank you. Okay. Now, do we have any community event announcement? Anybody has called?
That was it.
That was it. Okay. All right, next item, please.
Next item would be seven, adoption of ordinance. I will be reading seven A and seven B together. Seven A, Community Development Regarding An Ordinance Amending Sections 30.10.070, 30.11.020, 30.12.020, 30.14.020, 30.15.020, 30.70.020, and 30.70.110. And repealing and replacing 30.34.080 of Title 30, The Glendale Municipal Code 1995, Establishing Standards and Ministerial Processes for Reviewing and Approving Accessory Dwelling Units and Junior Accessory Dwelling Units, Case Number PGPA 2016760. B would be Community Development Regarding An Ordinance Adopting General Plan Amendment to Amend Downtown Specific Plan, DSP, Establishing Standards and Ministerial Processes for Reviewing and Approving Accessories, Dwelling Units, and Junior Accessory Dwelling Units, Case Number PGPA 2016755.
Thank you. Mr. Gulanyan.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, Member City Council, City Clerk read the item into record. This was, these ordinances were introduced by Councilmember Kusakian last Tuesday. We are requesting for its adoption and per council's request at last week's meeting, staff has prepared the diagram and going to provide some definitions of configurations of through lots and corner lots as it relates to ADUs and junior ADUs. With that, I'm going to turn it to Ms. Kirsten Asp for a brief, I guess, presentation on the item.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Can everybody see this? Great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council. As was already stated, both ordinances were introduced last Tuesday on the first of create permanent standards for ADUs and JD, ADUs to replace the current urgency ordinance, but requested some graphics to clarify through lots. So this graphic shows an example of a lot that is, that has double frontage. Through lot is the more common name. You can see that there are streets on both sides and that there is a larger front setback that would apply to both sides and the standard interior setback on the left and the right.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Brot.
Can I, can I ask questions as we go? I have, I have just a few here. Yeah, yeah, one question, Kirsten, is how do we handle alleys? Do we treat an alley as a street or no?
We do not treat alleys as a street.
Okay, so it wouldn't be a through lot if there's an alley there. And then that setback from both sides, regardless of what we do, would be 25 feet in an R1 zone? And what is it? I forget, I wrote it down. You're 15 feet in an R1R? Is that right?
Councilmember Brotman, that's correct. It would be a 25-foot front yard setback that would apply to both street frontages in an R1 zone and 15 feet in an R1R zone.
Right, okay. Okay, that's what I thought. Thanks.
Do you, excuse me, Kirsten, do you, we'll look into it, I don't know if it's here, the street which is both sides of it, let's say not the through lot, but on the corner lot.
I will, Mayor Ajani, I will get to that in a few slides.
Okay.
So just a, just a reminder, as introduced, the ordinances, the ordinances proposed to allow all new construction of attached or detached ADUs at the rear facade or side facade of the primary dwelling, similar to lots that without two-street frontages, while still maintaining the street setback. So this, this diagram illustrates a primary dwelling that the front facade faces to the, to the right and therefore the rear facade locates a detached ADU, again, maintaining that, that front setback at the second street. The next diagram shows something very similar. This would be an example where the primary dwelling has a side, a primary side elevation to the side and so the ADU would be located to the side facade. And then finally, this example is a corner lot. Corner lot is defined with a street front setback and a street side setback, as has always been allowed. And a detached ADU may be located on a corner lot. They would have to maintain a street, street side setback and abide by that, that number. You get, all ADUs get a four-foot minimum interior setback and that is what this graphic is to show.
And, and if I could just clarify on this one?
Yes, please.
So is that, is the setback from the side street then less? Is it, is it not the 25 feet or 15?
Councilmember Brotman, Members of Council, a street side setback is not the same as a street front setback. So for instance, in an R1 zone, street front setback is 25 feet. The street side setback is six feet in an R1 zone. It is 15 feet for both street front and street side in an R1R, ROS zone situation.
And, and how, if you have a corner lot, how are you deciding which street is front and which street is side if you're, you're right on the corner?
To, by definition, a street front is the narrowest of the two sides.
A street front is the narrowest. Can you explain that?
So.
Narrowest street, the width of the street itself?
The width of the lot, the narrowest part of the width of the lot adjacent to the two streets.
I see. If it's a square lot, then you just flip a coin?
That, that has rarely, rarely ever happened. There's always a narrower side of the two.
Okay, but both the side street and the, what do we call it? The, the main street or the front street or I guess the front street? I mean, they both can be equally active streets. I mean, you know, you've got their, they're both equally visible, they're both equally part of the neighborhood, right? So it is, that does seem.
There's, there's no, there's no rule of a house that's on a corner lot that forces a, even the orientation of just the primary dwelling has to, has to face one way or the other. They just have to abide by the setbacks out in the zone.
Okay, all right, so six feet. All right, thanks.
Kirsten, do you want to explain when you might not have a six-foot setback on the side or it might be greater because the house is set back further?
Sure, thank you. The, as was proposed and as the, as the code has been introduced, this primary dwelling, no, no ADU detached or attached, may be located between the primary dwelling and the street side setback. So for instance, if a house was developed that had a larger than the minimum street side setback, so for instance, this may be showing six, perhaps the actual dwelling has an eight-foot setback. A detached ADU would not be allowed to, to pierce or come before that primary dwelling, so it would be in line. My example would be eight feet. Providing additional protection for detached accessory dwelling units in relation to the primary dwelling.
So if I may, Kirsten, in other words, the ADU has to be in the backyard and not on the side of the house, on a corner lot?
On a corner lot, as depicted here, the ADU is in line with the primary dwelling and that would be regardless of whether that is at minimum six-foot setback. Or if the house is developed with a greater setback, the ADU could not be, could not come closer to the street. It would have to be in line with the house. So whether that's eight feet, 10 feet, 15 feet, the primary dwelling will dictate the setback of the, of the ADU from the street side setback.
Okay, thank you.
And that concludes the, the graphics I have and I'm available for any questions.
Is there any question? I guess I already asked you already. Thank you, Kirsten. Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes. Yes, who has question?
I believe there's a caller.
As Councilmember, okay, Councilmember Najarian, then I go to the callers.
Thank you. So Kirsten, let's, and this isn't specific to the, the through lot discussion that you just had, but just so I can understand this totally. Let's say that the, the image that you had shown, the graphic, was not a flat lot, but there was a steep drop from the rear of the house to the street below. Steep, let's say it's 45 degrees, 100% slope. That homeowner could locate an ADU on that slope without any design review. No issues of line of sight, no issues of, there's too much parking on the streets, no issues at all. As long as they could get the building permits, that can be done with the size, according to the, the appropriate size and the setbacks and all that.
Councilmember Najarian, Members of Council, no formal design review could be done in a situation like that, but we could apply, as I mentioned last week, compatibility standards such as building materials, colors, uniforms, things like that. The ADU itself can't have design review, but anything else that would maybe be associated with that, perhaps there's a proposal for a retaining wall or something like that. The zoning code standards would apply to those other things, just not the, just the minimum for the ADU.
So, I mean, again, just so I'm clear, later on tonight, we're going to have a intense discussion on the appropriateness and the design of a structure that's on a slope. If that structure was smaller in scale and it wasn't ADU, it would be hands-off. It wouldn't even get the design review. It would go to building and it would be approved as long as it met the zoning, the setbacks and all that other stuff.
Councilmember Najarian, Members of Council, correct, there is a discretionary process for reviewing accessory dwellings.
You know, that, anyway, that's a problem I have with this whole ADU thing in general, but thank you, Kirsten, for answering.
Can I follow up on that?
Yes, Councilmember Brot.
Yeah, because it's, it's a great point and I started picturing it now. So now, years ago, we used to require a conditional use permit for building on a certain slope, right, greater than 50%? And we removed that. If we had a, you know, if we had a conditional use permit requirement, would that be something that we could require before building on a slope like that? Because, you know, our hillsides, that's something we care about, not just for, you know, the look, but also for, you know, the stability of, of the hillside, right? And we're, and, and now with design review, like this case we're going to be talking about later, we're able to talk about, you know, is it safe to remove a certain amount of territory? What kind of landscaping? So is there a way that we would use that approach to be able to at least control things that could be dangerous?
Again, Councilmember Brotman, Members of Council, a conditional use process or something of the like that is discretionary is not allowed when in context with reviewing accessory dwelling units.
And the safety issue, is there, what if, what if there's kind of engineering, you know, questions about whether this, this, this is going to slip off the side of the hill? I mean, there's got to be some level of discretion that we have to keep, keep the residents safe.
Accessory dwelling units are subject to a building permit and all sort of life safety issues that would, that would involve the actual structure and the safety of it on the hillside. That is still review in Building and Safety Division.
So that's a good point. I mean, just not to, using example of the case that's on the agenda later this after, later this evening, that's going to have to go, when it goes through the building permit process, it's going to have to, and it actually already did because it was a, it was a discretionary project where they had to submit a geotech study that had to be reviewed by an expert. Would certainly, in a, in a case of an ADU, a ministerial ADU, that's going to go to our Building and Safety Department to review for all the health and safety issues. So those are still within the city's purview, it's just not discretionary. It goes through the building official and his or her staff.
So, so in other words, if I may, Mr.?
Yes, Ms. Devine.
So in other words, it could be stopped at one point or another. So in other words, it could be stopped at one point or another, the building of the ADU.
If it presents health and safety issues, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think that's what we're looking for.
All right.
Mayor, we do have three callers on the line waiting.
Okay, let's go to the callers.
Alex Chachaturian, you're live. Alex, go ahead.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Ahajaniyan, honorable council members and city staff. My name is Alex Chachaturian. I'm a resident of Glendale. I'm calling to offer a proposal for amending the language of the ADU ordinance, which you will be voting on later today. As you know, there is a, there is the intent to ban ADU additions on top of detached garages. I understand the motive for that, and I'm, I appreciate the city's concerns for mass and scale, but I do think that we should take into consideration a few things before rushing into and banning all additions, all ADU additions on top of the detached garage. Now, I understand the state requires that ADUs be approved ministerially, and you don't have discretionary review over.
Okay.
Which is why you're forced to either say yes to all or no to all. And so you've decided that, well, we'll see what you're going to decide later on, but most likely you're going to decide no to all. But there is a way, I think, now, I'd like you guys to deliberate on this if you're interested. There is a way to circumvent that requirement, which will also, which would meet, you know, it's like a happy medium, I think. So if I want to build a new garage, chances are it's going to go to design review, not in all cases, but in some cases it will. So suppose, the, the language is amended so that if the homeowner builds a new garage from scratch, then they should be allowed to put an ADU on top, because the, the garage construction would be subject to discretionary review by the design review board. In the meantime, the ADU would also get subjected to review, just because it's, it's part of the same project. So that would be one way to circumvent the state law. You would be able to subject the, the garage, the, the ADU addition to design review and not ban all of them altogether. Now, if it's just an ADU addition on top of an existing garage and no changes are proposed to the garage, then yes, because of the ministerial criteria, which the state is imposing on the city, I agree. It would, it makes more sense to, to say no to all rather than yes to all, because then you might end up with some lousy project which the neighbors don't like. But if it's possible, I don't know if it's legal, I don't know, it's just an idea that I had. If it's possible to subject a, a new ADU addition on top of a detached garage to design review, then I think that there should be an exception added and giving that a possibility so that homeowners aren't, you know, denied of their garage in the event that they want to have an ADU, because garages are useful things for parking cars and et cetera. So also going back to what councilmember Arun Najarian said, if, if the city can ban ADU additions on top of detached garages, I think they can ban ADUs on steep hillside. The, the city doesn't, the state doesn't require that the cities allow unsafe or, you know, ADU construction on steep hillside. It just requires that you allow ADUs. So it's the same argument. If, if the state allows the city to regulate second stories, then it must allow it to regulate on hillside.
Mr. Chachaturian.
I just hope that the council can, you know, discuss somewhat my proposal to see if we could have it some, an amendment to the language.
Mr. Chachaturian, you do, you're talking almost for five minutes. It was supposed to be three minutes. Thank you for your call and for your suggestion. Thank you very much. Thank you. Next caller, please.
Catherine Urka. Catherine, you're live. Go ahead.
Hi, thank you, Mayor Agadiniyan and members of council. I have an image that I submitted to the city clerk. If, if that could be shown, that would be great. I'm calling on behalf of the Verdugo Woodlands West Homeowners Association, and I'm sorry I couldn't call in last week, but I did watch the hearing. We want to say first that we really appreciate council's concern about the design and placement of ADUs and your willingness to impose whatever standards are allowed under state laws. Appreciate the staff support and the ordinance. Thanks to Ms. Asp for the clarification about through lots, I understood the definition that was laid out in the staff report previously. We still would hope council would prohibit ADUs between the house and the street front if they can, with something like 270 applications in the works and with a mandatory 60-day approval window. I think the last thing staff needs is to process more applications. I appreciated your discussion last week of possible development standards for ADUs. The state does allow you to impose objective standards for ADUs. And I, I put this image up as an example, not of a through lot ADU, but of an ADU in the front yard. The property portal lists this as a conversion of a carport, not a garage, but a carport, but it was never built to be integrated into the house. Notice that the roof line overlapped with the front window of the residence in a way that just can only be described as terribly awkward. It's a plain stucco box. It has interior grid vinyl windows. Please note, these windows would not be permitted on the front of the house. The window guidelines banned these cheap windows about four years ago on older homes, which this is one, but here they're on an ADU right in the front. I hope you can agree that this image, although it disappeared from my screen, looks pretty bad. ADUs can look very nice, but they don't have to. I, I think council could make window standards the same as our window guidelines. You could have standards regarding exterior finishes, so long as they're not different from guidelines for residences. I would urge you to request that staff come to you with a proposal for design standards for ADUs. They cannot be unduly burdensome, but there's got to be a way to get something better than, than that. And my apologies if the neighbor is looking. I sincerely doubt they are. Owners can build also a new house to a maximum floor area ratio and lot coverage. And then after that's been built, they can come back a month later and insist on building an 800 square foot ADU. In addition, even if they're at the maximum. So perhaps it's time to review those standards as well, so that they reflect the intention of what council has wanted for development standards. So I want to thank you so much for your time and attention to this matter.
Thank you very much. Bye. Next caller, please.
Laura Dominguez. Laura, you're live.
...to get something better than that.
Laura Dominguez?
Hello?
Yes, you're live. Can you lower the volume on your TV?
I'm sorry?
Thank you. We can hear you better now. Laura, you're live. Go ahead.
Oh, good evening, mayor and, and council members. Thank you kindly for taking my call. I would like to thank council members who responded to my email. I'm sorry that the one on, on the screen, I guess, is really lagging behind. Thank you kindly, council members who responded to my email and who assisted with facilitating a response from the city director. I have, that concern still stands, the concern that I emailed. The, basically yesterday, last night, I, at 4:49 PM, I received an email from the city planner saying, here's my phone number, I'm available until 5:00 PM. And having to network, there's no way that, that 11-minute window would have allowed me to take that call. But I was, I did everything and I could to be able to attend that and participate in that meeting. And what I got from the meeting is that we were approved to continue with our plans, but then told that we don't have enough time. Now, my plans were sitting in plan check for, since June, nearly six months that they sat in, in plan check, waiting to get this information. Once I emailed the city council members, I appreciate all your help and we better respond within a week or two with this answer. But now it puts me in this situation. And my, my question is, if the state allows the, the, the city to have objective standards for ADUs, then why are we not allowing? And the purpose for me having an ADU is for my safety and my family's safety. I have, because of my profession, I've been exposed to multiple types of, of communicable diseases and needing to isolate, even in just this pandemic, there's been multiple times that I've needed to isolate. And having this ADU is, is a safety concern, a safety measure for my family. And it's something that's needing all the city requirements and all, all the state requirements yet, because of the process that the city was taking so long, in, we, we're, we're at this point where we're told, yes, you, you have, you can continue, but you don't have the time to do so because we're going to ban them now. So I guess I'm just asking for assistance.
Ms. Dominguez.
Mr. Guzman, if you're on the call, you're welcome to sign in any information with all the legal stuff.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Eduardo Guzman, and I'm the resident helping owner, property owner. We're just trying to explain to you the situation that based on your ordinance, your, your intermittent ordinance, it's been established, but there's nothing that tells any, any public, any architect, any designer or any developer that you're changing your ordinance to a new one. And that's, basically, we started this project months ago. We've been going back and forth with planners, Joe Dennis, Cassandra, David, Dennis, Danny. So, and, and we get different information in terms, in terms of ours to, you know, because it's not, it, it, the, the, the way that the process is done for your city, it's not a submittal that we submit plans and they get reviewed and they get red marked. You guys don't take a, a, an application or anything that is proper. And, and it gets, and it goes back into the email, phone calls, conversations, but it's, it's not considered a, a submittal. So what happened in our situation is that we were going back and forth and trying to understand your codes, because your, your ordinance is really limited and specific in, in situations like in this case of an ADU above a garage. So the, the project consists of doing an ADU above a garage, but we actually wanted to implement, aside from the ADU, a laundry room and a washing room. And it just limits the, the ability to do that because of your, your order not being completely specific or limited on, 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 on trying to find out issues. So now we're in a situation that of, of, over this six-month period, now we're, we're only have a limited into delay, basically, to submit a full package, which it requires working drawings. But how could we develop working drawings when we haven't got our approval and planning? We don't, we're not going to elaborate working drawings just to submit and then revise and then revise and then revise, which costs money and time. So hopefully this makes any sense for you guys in understanding the process and helping.
Okay.
The owners in elaborating their work.
Excuse me.
And getting their application submitted and approved.
Excuse me.
We hope that we, we could, we're allowed to continue with the unit, ADU above the garage.
Sir, Mr. Dominguez.
Excuse me. You, you guys had only, Ms. Dominguez had only three minutes. She went over the three minutes. I gave you the chance to speak. Why don't get in, in touch with Mr. Rubik Galanian, the city interim manager, and let's see what can be done? I mean, we can't resolve this on today's, in today's meeting, okay? We call Mr. Rubik Galanian, the interim city manager, or Mr. Garcia, the city attorney, and let's see what we can be done, okay? Thank you. Next caller.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, that was the final caller.
Thank you. Okay. All right. So where we are now, okay, we have the callers. Is there a motion to approve what we have, or what's the?
I still have some questions that I could.
Okay, if you have a question, Ms. Councilmember Bratman, yes.
Yeah, so I, I read the material from Mr. Garcia. And I don't know, Mike, are you going to be going over your, that kind of the legal, the legal argument? Because I did want to ask a question about that, where you said, you know, we, we would not be able to restrict mandatory ADUs in any case, and you're saying that if we restrict non-mandatory ADUs, we might get challenged by the state. So my question was, maybe you can elaborate a little bit on that, but my question is, so what if we do not allow the non-mandatory ADUs on these through lots? And if we get challenged, we'll see how it goes. But I mean, why, why presume that we're not going to be able to do that? Your analysis seemed like it was not, not 100%, you know, on that point.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, councilmember Bratman. So you're correct, with respect to the, the mandatory ADUs, as the legislation is written, it's very clear that regardless of whatever development standards you have in place, you have to always allow one of those mandatory ADUs. The primary example being the one that is no larger than 800 square feet, four-foot setbacks, 16 feet in height. With respect to the non-mandatory, so what, and when we say non-mandatory, it's a, and it's maybe not even the right, the right verbiage. It's, it's an ADU that otherwise complies with your development standards. But, but in addition to the, the ones I just listed, it could be parking or floor, FAR, all those other development standards that we impose in single-family or multifamily neighborhoods. And, and the question being, could you allow, could you prohibit these non-mandatory ADUs within, on through lots, lots that have two-street frontages? And again, and the, if there's a, an open-endedness to our answer, it has to do with the fact that the legislation was, in many areas, is not clear, and this is one of those areas. And it's the, what the legislature said is that, in its findings in adopting the legislation was, you cannot enact any regulations that are arbitrary or have the effect of precluding development of ADUs. Now, that's not clear whether it's ADUs in general in the community or ADUs on individual lots that would otherwise qualify for them. That's something that's probably going to be, have to be worked out. In addition, HCD, the Department of Housing Community Development, which appears is going to have some judicial deference accorded its opinions based on, on the fact that the legislature gave it the authority to review ADU ordinances, has taken the view that, yes, you can impose front yard setback requirements, but not in a way that's going to prohibit, prohibit the development of ADU on a property. So that's kind of where there's some ambiguity in the interpretation of legislation. So obviously, from our view, the safest point is to allow them on through lots. We cannot say for certain that would be a losing battle if we were to get challenged. And so that's sort of the, the, the push and pull of where our opinion is. We think there's, there are, could be some issues with not allowing them on through lots, other than the mandatory, but we can't say for certain. And that's kind of where, that's where our opinion lies. And that's why ultimately we recommend that you include them, so that, and, and the argument being, and I raised it last week, is that somebody who owns a through lot would not be able to have an ADU that complies with all the other development standards, simply by virtue of the fact that they have a through lot. And it's not clear how the, how the courts would interpret that. And that's, that's the, the cause for our concern.
Yeah, so, so my, my suggestion would be, I mean, we're, we're already having, you know, both arms tied behind our back. And, and it sounds like you're trying to be very safe, but now we're tying our own two feet. So what I would suggest is, let's not go beyond where we think the legislation is requiring us to. If it gets clarified later and we have to tighten it up, tighten it up. So, so that would be my, my, my proposal would be, we do not add this provision for through lots, or if we do add it at all, we make it only with respect to mandatory ADUs. But I don't see why But I don't see why we should go beyond where we absolutely need to go to this stage, just because we want to avoid some, you know, potential problem that we're not even really able to articulate fully at this point is, is going to be a real problem. So that's, that would be my recommendation, and I'd like to hear from my colleagues.
I'm with you. I'm with you on that, Dan. Let's, let's be as strict as we can, and if we need to loosen it up later by court order or legislation, we do that. But I support that idea.
I am not in favor of it because do, how many through lots we have that this problem going to arise? Then who will support that case in court? We have to spend money on something that we don't know how this is going to appear and what we, why we are against. There will be residential unit, people will live in there, and that may help them, those who do not afford much and those who, especially considering, we're going to have, next few years, we're going to have major financial problems. The coronavirus now, people from the past, they have savings, they can manage their lives, the businesses are closing. And in a few months or a year time, we're going to see lots of people, they go through probably bankruptcy or other problems. These houses going to help some, those who cannot afford the big houses. Maybe they rent smaller units, smaller places to live in. So I'm not in favor of going against what has been said, and I don't want to challenge the court or challenge the, go and challenge this in court and spend money on this for no reason, in my opinion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I could just, I do want to make it clear, you know, I support ADUs. I think ADUs are a good part, are an important part of the solution to our housing shortage. And I, and I've probably said this before, I mean, I'm building one within the footprint of my existing house. So I support them and I, and I just, I just think in this case, the law is still so unclear, and we're, we're being kind of, I think overly cautious. So I would, you know, do what we have to do. And if we find that, you know, the legislation becomes more, you know, clarified and we have to go beyond, it's not very hard for us to introduce an amendment to the ordinance and take it from there. Anyway, that would be my proposal.
My problem is, why to challenge it? Let's see what happens. If there is a challenge, somebody will come forward and challenge it. Why we get involved with it? Why we have to spend money and effort to put in this when, as has been mentioned by all of you, we have housing shortages? And so this ADUs are helping some who they cannot afford larger houses. They're going to have smaller units to live in it. So I don't want to challenge this and later to figure out that, oh, we were wrong and spend more money and pay some damages to those who wanted to do it. That's me, of course.
I don't know that we would pay damages. We would probably just have to go along. But anyway.
Ms. Devine, thank you. Ms. Devine, Councilmember Devine.
Thank you. First, I want to thank Kristin As for bringing the visuals on, on board because it helped me a lot to see exactly what we mean by a through lot and the impacts and of the ADUs, where they can be placed, et cetera, and on the corner lots as well. So I think it's been made very clear that we would not allow through lot to locate or not allow a new ADU within the front or the side street setback. The ADUs between the street front setback and the primary dwelling unit, that's going to be in the ordinance. I think this is protecting the front facade, as was mentioned in the city attorney's explanation. It does not, this does not apply to corner lots. It provides equity for through lots. I think that we should not unduly constrain the creation of these types of ADUs. And do you think we'll have a lot of these, Kristin? A lot of through lot ADUs?
Kristin?
Councilmember Devine, members of council, through lots are a rarer condition in the overall law configuration in the city of Glendale. I suspect we will get, we'll get a few.
Okay. But not, so I think as long as, and we do hold them to our design standards. I think with the ministerial oversight that goes along with these, these creations, I'm going to, I'm in favor of the ordinance as it's written to allow through lot ADUs.
Ms. Kusakian?
Mr. Kusakian, I thank staff for their presentation, and I made most of my, I made my comments last week, and I think that there's, there's a need definitely for us to be able to implement this now, lest we have to succumb to even more restrictions on our local control. So I'm fine with, I'm fine with it as it is, and I thank Kristin for those visuals. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Kristin. Thank you for bringing this and of course, Phil Landsafame and others who worked on this and Mr. Garcia. As I said, I lived here and I don't want to remind this all the time. For past 40 years, I did not see through street in Glendale that many. There are very few, rare, I would say. And I don't want to challenge anything. I don't want to see our attorneys to go to court and try to support this. So I'd rather see what we have has been proposed to vote on this item. So I would like to see if anybody will offer or move the item based on what has been offered by the city manager and city attorney.
Ms. Kusakian, I think this was your introduction.
Sure. I'll move the item.
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman?
I will, I will vote yes, even though I'm not perfectly happy with it, but I think it's probably the best we're going to have right now. So I'll vote yes.
I wanted to say thank you because that's a minor issue based on this major change to, for our city, so that would be a very minor change anyway. Okay, let's continue, Ms. Jumia.
Councilmember Devine?
Yes.
Kusakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yeah, me too. I have reservations, but I'll go along for the good of the order.
Thank you.
And Mayor Agajonian?
Yes. Okay. Thank you, guys. Okay. What's next, please?
Next would be eight action items, eight community services in parks regarding the Verdugo Park North, all-inclusive playground design project. One motion selecting a playground design for the Verdugo Park North all-inclusive playground project and directing staff to incorporate selected design into the Verdugo Park North renovation project in progress.
Mr. Mayor, members of city council.
Mr. Galanian, I'm very sorry. I was trying to find my.
No worries. As City Clerk, right into record, this is the much awaited all-inclusive playground design at Verdugo Park North. We have finally received three proposals, three different designs, and Mr. Onik Bolanikian, our Director of Community Services and Parks, will go over it and open it up to questions. And we are seeking your direction on the selection of one of these designs to move forward. With that, Mr. Bolanikian?
I mean, before to go to Mr. Bolanikian, I'm sorry. We went through this, I remember even I mentioned this issue on the briefing, it was around 2018, that I remember Councilmember Warthon Garpetian was here. And we went through this, we said, don't do anything to this Verdugo Park, let's concentrate on South. I don't know how this ended up coming back being an issue and we have, how this came about?
Mr. Mayor, members of city council, Mr. Bolanikian will cover the chronology and history of the initiation of this project. You are correct in stating that this was discussed back a couple of years ago, but ultimately, council had directed staff to bring it back after we visited and after the completion of the all-inclusive project at Maple Park. So if you don't mind, I'll ask Mr. Bolanikian to.
Before we go that, I mean, you say we asked for this to.
Yes, sir.
When was that?
Onik, do you remember the date in the report?
When we said to this to come back? Last time we were arguing that concentrate on South. We have lots of parks in North, and people are suffering in South. You go to, what's that famous park on, that tiny one on the corner, I forget, Wilson? And what's the other street? Adams, I guess?
Yes.
There are hundreds of people, they go there and they don't have room to sit or do anything, and we have these vast parks in North. And again, we are concentrating, yeah, coming back to Verdugo, coming back to Duque Medean Park. For who?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, this is, as stated before, this is a playground equipment of this size and magnitude will not fit in a mini park like Wilson. But I do completely understand your point.
No, you're spending money. That's what I'm complaining, not that I'm saying this will fit in there.
Right.
I'm saying the money we are spending on this.
Yes, sir. And that funding was allocated by the council and directed to staff to bring forward. Again, if it's the council's direction to reverse that direction to staff, we will oblige, but I would submit to you that to let Mr. Bolanikian to go through his presentation, who would answer, as part of that presentation, some of your questions.
Mr. Bolanikian?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Agajonian, members of the council. I have a brief presentation. We'd like to show you the three playground vendors that submitted plans, and then you can ask questions. We do have the three representatives from each vendor here, and they're available to ask any questions after the presentation.
No, but you're not answering the question first. You're going again through this. When we said to bring this back with this, all this information, still nobody is answering.
August of 2019. It was requested by a council member, seconded by another council member, and this is the item.
Who was the council member and seconded by who?
Council.
Go ahead, Onik.
Councilmember Devine and Councilmember, back then Mayor Najarian, I believe.
Mayor Najarian, do you?
That was me?
I believe, I believe so.
And I mean, in fairness, from what I recall, when Councilman Devine made the motion, there was a number of seconds to it, so it wasn't just Councilman, then Mayor Najarian. There was a number of council members that made the second along with Councilmember Najarian.
I'm having second thoughts, Mr. Mayor, so don't think that I'm locked into that second from August of 2019.
I mean, usually I have good memory. I don't remember such a discussion, but okay, I will listen to this, but I'm not happy with what we said also. We said we want to concentrate on South. I remember Councilmember Najarian also spoke about, especially this Verdugo Park, that he did not want anything to be added to this park. Am I right, Mr. Najarian? Councilmember Najarian?
You could put it that way.
May I, may I interject?
Yes, Ms. Devine.
Back when the, if I may add, back when the idea for a all-inclusive playground was introduced to Glendale and the city council, the council decided that we would, we should have two of them, one in the north and one in the south. The one in the south has been constructed and is so popular, and I think Onik can give you figures and how many kids go there for their programs and events. And this, all the council agreed on this particular location at the time that we should have one. What was, what was discussed, Councilmember Garpetian did not want it to be a Shane's Inspiration Park because he thought it was too expensive. So he asked, requested that staff go and look at other vendors that could do an all-inclusive park. And that's, it's taken staff this long to bring it back. Now, if things have changed, then, then that's, you know, that's where we are. But the idea was to have one in the north, because this is all-inclusive, this is for kids with disabilities. And if any of you were at the grand opening at Maple, you know how popular this park is. And so the idea was that we were going to restore, redo Verdugo, and why not? That would be a perfect place for an all-inclusive playground. So I guess before we, you know, before we even go any further, Mayor, maybe we should just get a poll or a vote from council if they want to go forward with this. If Mr. Najarian doesn't want to do this, or Councilmember Brotman or Kusakian, if they change their minds, then there's no reason to even look at this at this point.
Yeah, this is what I was saying. This park, people, they say this is kind of a historic park, they like the way it is, and they don't want to see anything added to this. This is what I get, I don't know, others receive the emails or not, that this is the way it is, people, they like, they go there all these years, it's a kind of a historic park, why do we want to add something here and something there? I don't know. Maybe anybody else wants to jump on this issue and safely work?
Well, I can add, okay.
Mr. Najarian?
Well, let me sort of be clear. On the issue alone, I think that especially, especially in the last few months during the pandemic, I realized the huge benefit that a passive park area has to the community, just where you can get out there, lay out on the grass, forget about the virus, and just relax. Verdugo Park does have a playground area in the southern part by the skate park. Upon reconsideration, I don't think that an all-inclusive park or any other type of playground equipment is best sighted in the northern part of Verdugo Park. And so that's kind of where, plus, we're going to lose a tree or two. I'm not saying that the renovation of the restroom, I think restroom renovations are included in this. I'm not saying that lotion should be done, but an active park, it right in the middle of the most passive area of our Verdugo Park is not well-sighted. And that's, I mean, I love kids and I'm sensitive to special needs, but it's a balance for the entire community. So that's kind of where I'm at on this.
Ms. Kusakian, do you want to say your words?
You know, I actually love having as many parks and places for recreation for our kids as we can possibly have, but, and if we go down the path of actually selecting one of the proposals, I have a favorite one, obviously, but, or rather, I should say, my kid helped me pick a favorite one. But I do tend to agree with the idea of preserving the passive space, and Verdugo Park does have that children's play area. If we can save that money, and if there's another park, and I do agree also with Councilmember Devine, who suggested having an all-inclusive park that's accessible to all in the southern portion of the city, as well as having one in the northern portion of the city, perhaps there's another place that's where we can have something like this that's accessible. And quite honestly, all three proposals look great. So that's where I'm at as well.
Okay. So my point was, I'm not against, by the way, if we have to renovate bathrooms and whatever we have in there, but to add something in there and to spend money, that's what I'm complaining, not that. I'm complaining, not that I'm against the idea of having something somewhere else. I'm okay, not with Verdugo Park. And I want to see that we concentrate on South only, not to spend any money in North, whether it's Verdugo Park or Duke Magian. I mean, that's enough. I mean, let's think about what's going on in South. That's me. I don't know, can we now, where we stand now? Mr., yes, Mr., sorry, Councilmember Brot.
Yeah, I put in my sense on this, and I think I'll probably be in agreement with the majority here. So this park is only a few blocks away from me, and I walk through it all the time. There's a playground there which is functional, but you know, certainly is dated. I wouldn't be opposed to seeing a modest upgrade to that park, to that playground. But I am, I'm with you, Mr. Mayor, and the others in that, you know, we'd be talking about spending $750,000 to $800,000 really to put in something that would be state-of-the-art. I just, I think this is not the right time, and I agree that, and this came up, this came up in 2018 or 2019, whatever it was. I attended those, those meetings and there was an argument made by one of the residents here that, you know, and well, a number of people, I guess, that, you know, these, these impact fees are coming out of the development occurring in South Glendale and the, the money should be spent, you know, closer to where the impacts are occurring. And I think that makes sense. So I would personally, if there was something modest to refreshen that little playground there, I wouldn't be opposed to it. But I would say where we are now, I would definitely rather this money and the rest of the, I think it's 3.4 million dollars that's been set aside for the overall project. And that includes, you know, the parking and the bathroom and the community room and a number of other things. I would really like to see the majority of that be used either to acquire new space for an additional pocket park so that we have something, you know, maybe in an area where we don't have good access, good walking access to a green space. I would rather see it used there or to refresh some of our other South Glendale parks. So maybe, maybe this is going to be a short discussion and sorry, Onig, maybe you don't get to make your presentation.
Why you don't study based on what we have said, Mr. Golanyan? Can we revisit this item based on what we want to do and bring it back maybe just to do the- Yeah, I'm sorry, Ms. Divine, Ms. Divine.
Maybe we can just take a vote right now. I think we're all, we're all on the side of more parks in South Glendale. You know, times change, ideas change, feelings change, thinking changes, and maybe it's not the right time for, for this all-inclusive playground or to do anything like this at Verdugo. And we should concentrate more. I know we allotted or we thought we had, I think we lauded some money, even Measure S funding for, for parks in South Glendale. So perhaps with this funding and, and other funding, we'll be able to make that a priority and a park in South Glendale can come to fruition.
And Mayor, I do have two callers on the line for this item.
Okay, let's go to the caller.
Before, I'm sorry, before we go to the calls, Mr. Mayor, just to respond to your question.
Yes, please, go ahead.
Since there doesn't seem to be a motion to move forward with this project, specifically the playground equipment, we will forego that project. The savings that we realize out of not moving forward with the project, we will add to, like Councilmember Divine mentioned, to the set aside of about a million dollars as part of Measure S monies. And we'll add this to the pot in the hope of the search that we have already started in a, to locate a site that will be suitable for a park in South Glendale.
Okay.
And can I make another swap?
I think we should, Mr. Mayor, I think we should thank-
Ms. Divine.
I think we should thank the Onig and his staff for doing the research on this and for the vendors that are here tonight. Thank you so much for the work that you've put into this. And I, I hope you understand, it's purely business.
Thank you.
Can I say one thing?
Yes, please, Onig Bolanikian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you. The north end playground, Verdugo Playground, needs some upgrading. We would like to come back to council eventually, maybe to keep the same footprint, to get new amenities, you know, install new amenities if council approves. It won't be an all-inclusive, but we will like to upgrade and update the playground in that area. I think it will go nice, especially with the renovation project. We will, we are working on construction documents for the north end restrooms with a small community room that won't be rented out. I do want to emphasize that will not be rented out. That'll be used for special events. We do have a number of special events, community events at Verdugo. And also renovating and upgrading and expanding the community garden and adding picnic tables and picnic shelters. So that's part of the renovation project, but we will come back to council with some smaller scale playgrounds that will fit that area.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Okay, I think, how we go to the next?
Well, hold on, so-
Oh, we have callers, I'm sorry.
Well, I was gonna say, but if you're not, you can take the callers you want, but you're not required to because you're not, the council's not really taking any action. They're just basically being pulled off calendar, but it's, yeah, certainly, they called in.
No, we can go to the next item, you're right. If it's about this, we already decided, so maybe they can call back when this comes back, like this some, in some way will come back, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then we will ask them to call back when this item is coming back. Thank you. Thank you for waiting, and I'm sorry that you waited this long.
Mayor, I will inform the staff to let the callers know.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's go to the next item, please.
Next item is B Public Works regarding the standardization of backhoe loaders and tractor loaders to Dear and Company, John Dear, for the purchase of a new backhoe loaders and tractor loaders, parts and maintenance services. One resolution adopting John Dear as the city standard for backhoe loaders and tractor loaders and dispense with competitive bidding for the procurement of John Dear backhoe loaders, tractor loaders, John, John Dear equipment, parts and John Dear maintenance services from Braggs Investment Company, DBA Coastline Equipment.
Thank you, Mr. Golanyan.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, this item was presented to City Council last Tuesday as well.
Right.
And during the discussions and deliberations, a question came up and the staff has gone back and made modifications to the report that would clarify and, in response to those questions. And Mr. Imran, our Public Works Director, is on the line to explain what the clarification and the change has been.
Mr. Imran. Is he on?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. So as Mr. Golanyan mentioned, this item discusses the standardization-
Mr. Imran, I'm sorry, stopping you. Where are you connecting from, from the city or from your house? I'm sorry to ask you that.
I'm telecommuting, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, but where you are sitting now, in the city?
This is my home office.
Oh, home office. Maybe you want to add a little bit of light because this became like, I don't want, not, I don't mean you, but Frankenstein in this town. All right, let's-
Frankenstein, I'm frightened.
Either way, it ain't good.
And it's not even Halloween.
Yeah.
You look great, Mr. Imran.
He looks great, without question. The light is not enough. And he's an engineer, I'm sorry, because he's an engineer, he can arrange to have more lights in there.
Yeah, I'm a civil engineer, not an, not an electrical engineer.
Yeah, but you are engineer, professional engineer, you can do it. Okay, let's continue.
You can do everything, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, thank you very much. So this was the standardized our fleet of backhoe loaders and tractors. We do have a lot of units right now, 21 active units. And basically, because of the, the advantages that John Dear presented, because of its power, because of its capacity and the training that would be uniform, and also the familiarization of our field staff to utilize this equipment, we were recommending the John Dear, the policy position basically to standardize on John Dear's equipment for the next 10 years. The question that came up was if we were locked into this manufacturer, should something better come up by another manufacturer, such as in the case of an electric backhoe? And we conferred with our city attorney's office and we added that clarification basically to this updated report, which is, this is purely just a policy position that the city has. And each of our purchases would be a separate purchase that we would look at individually. And if there was something that is better or more comprehensive or technologically better in the case of an electric backhoe or tractor trailer, we could definitely move within with that piece of equipment from another manufacturer. And there are no penalties or liquidated damages associated with, with this report, basically. So what's before you is, it is for the purchase of one backhoe tonight, plus the policy position for the standardization on the John Dear equipment. And I would be happy to answer any questions here.
Thank you. Is there any question from Mr. Imran?
On the item?
Second.
Okay, our own call, please.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Kusakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Avijan?
Yes, thank you. What's next on the agenda?
Next would be city attorney regarding retention of an executive recruiter to assist with recruitment selection and appointment of a city manager. One motion authorizing execution of a professional service agreement for executive recruitment services.
Mr. City Attorney, Mr. Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The item before you is to select a executive recruiter to conduct the city manager search and recruitment and selection process. The council authorized me to solicit proposals from executive recruitment firms with experience in this area. We received seven proposals. The council narrowed that down, shortlisted that to four, four firms with experience, with, you know, extensive experience in the executive recruitment field for public agencies focusing on city manager recruitments as well. So the item before you is to hear from each of these proposers and have the council then ask any questions that you may have for the proposers. And so the order will be, we'll hear from each proposer, then the council will be able to ask that, that individual, representative from, from that firm, any questions you desire. And then we'll move on to the next one. So it'll be three minutes for each, for each, each individual proposer to make their initial remarks and then, you know, as many questions that council has. And then after all of the question, the presentations and question and answer, we'll hear from any members of the public who are calling on the item, and then the council can deliberate and make a decision. So we will start with, and I'll note that the proposers, the proposals are a part of this agenda item. I know that the council has gone through them in detail and you're going to have some questions. I would note that generally speaking, the, the process takes anywhere from 12 to 17 weeks, just depending on kind of when we start and the level of community outreach that the council decides to do as part of this process or, or community input. The, the fee proposals for each of the firm is, is in the report, and I'm happy to go through them when we get to the discussion on that. So we'll start with the first firm, and I'm just going to go alphabetically. So it would be Alliance Resource Consulting, and the representative from Alliance is Cindy Krebs. So if we could bring Cindy up and then she can, we're going to give three minutes to each, each proposer on.
Okay.
Hello, thank you. Can you see, hear me okay?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I apologize if it looks like I'm in a cave.
Yeah.
But I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you and the other council members, and I understand this is meant to be a brief presentation. So first of all, I'd like to say that you've probably noticed yourselves already, the approaches that all of us take are very similar to one another. And your city, your city attorney's office has done a good job of providing a brief synopsis for you of the differences between or among our proposals. What I want to do in these few minutes is talk about the results that you can expect from Alliance, that may or may not be different, but I think they will be different from some of the other proposals. First of all, we have a very open process and we take pride in that. We have complete transparency. You will be able to see what we're doing all of the time. You'll be able to reach out to us all of the time. We've actually initiated a new system that allows you to look live at who has applied. We call it our client portal. You can see the resumes that we've been receiving and then we will work with you on the review process for those. We'll also give you weekly updates throughout the recruitment process so that you're always up to date with where we are, who we've advertised with, how many, or I'm sorry, applications we've received and how we are viewing those in terms of the qualifications. We also keep our, the candidates all updated throughout the process too, so that reflects well on you. We'll also be available when you need us. These days, more than any other, the 24/7 office is part of our job. And although we prefer not to take the late night calls, we are available all day long and on weekends and in evenings, especially if we're going to do community outreach. The things that I think differentiate us from some of the other firms are we have lots of experience with stakeholder outreach. As a matter of fact, most of my career focused on that. I worked as a community planner and as an environmental planner and have lots and lots of experience working with stakeholder groups, community groups on issues such as this. Another thing is the average tenure of our city manager placements over the last six, since 2008 has been at least six years. A matter of fact, the four most recent placements that we have have all been six years or better. So that speaks well to the types of candidates that we bring to you and their interest in staying with you long term. And then finally, we have a very effective process for doing outreach to diversity candidates. And we know that that might be of interest to you too. I can share further details on that, but our placements have been very, very good for women as, as well as other minorities for the last several years. One more very quick item, when we submitted our proposal, we were hoping COVID-19 was going to be in our rearview mirror, and we anticipated a lot of onsite meetings. The pricing of our proposal reflects that. We are willing to talk with you about different pricing because we do not anticipate that we'll be able to be there with you four, five meetings as our proposal presumed. And with that, I'll, I'll wrap up and happy to take any questions you might have.
How about we go through all four?
No, no, my, my suggestion is since we have, is to go through, and it's up to you, it's up to you, Ms. Mayor and Council, if you want to do it that way as well. I just announced that we were going to do it that way. It's up to you though, I apologize.
All right, I will ask my colleagues, do you have any question or you want to wait to the end, maybe we can question them after we go through all the potential companies?
I think, I think we can ask questions now.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Kusakian.
Thank you for your proposal. And when you talk about reduction in cost, how much of a reduction? Is it something that you could state? Because based on the report and, and the costs, obviously you're on the higher end of the spectrum.
Right. So for each one of our onsite meetings, we factor an average of 1,500, so we reduce it by 1,500, 1,500 times five, 7,500. We would be at $30,500.
Thank you.
Question?
Is there any other question? Yes, Mr. Najarian?
So in terms of your openness and transparency, don't you think it might be a problem and inhibitor for potential city managers to have their resumes posted on our website? And that might not be so good with their current employer and other things like that? How do you come to terms with that?
Yeah, I know, I appreciate the question. I'll clarify, they wouldn't be posted on your website, they would be posted on the portal that we control. Only you would be able to see that, and we would trust that you would keep it confidential. You raise a very, very good point. People do want to remain confidential throughout the process.
Thank you, I misunderstood the direction, thanks.
Thank you. Is there any question or we go to the next? Yes, Mr. Brot, Councilmember Brot.
Yeah, hi, thanks, Ms. Krebs. So could you talk- So could you talk a little bit about how you would do community outreach? I mean, how you do it typically and how you would do it today and what kinds of, you know, thinking about Glendale specifically, what kinds of organizations would you expect that you would be connecting with? And what kinds of questions would you be asking them? Like how, just give us, give us a little bit of a visceral sense of what that looks like.
A lot of that would actually be informed by you. One of the things that we do that's very similar again to all the other firms is meet and talk with you before we kick off the recruitment. So we want to know who is it in your community that it's very important that we connect with and talk to. So we would do targeted outreach and communication with those individuals, those groups that you say make sure they're part of it. But we would also be able to do one of two different things in terms of the broader community. We can do a survey and work with city staff on creating that survey, posting that survey, collecting the results and tabulating them. We've used Survey Monkey as recently as a few months ago with the San Francisco Municipal Transportation Authority. Several hundred responses came back from that, but that's an effective way to get input. Another is of course the community meetings and we can do those one of a couple of different ways. We can do a Zoom type meeting where we have a lot of people attending and providing input or we're happy to host one-on-ones with people as well. So we want to make sure that you're enabled to get as much of that information and that community input as you think is important for this process and we'll work with you on that.
Okay. And then what do you do with that input? How do you, how do you consolidate that and filter it and share it with us?
So we would take what we've heard during the process, we'd blend it with what we've heard from you and we would, that would become the basis of what we communicate to people in the recruitment brochure, that printed document, that online document that describes what it is you're looking for in terms of the ideal candidate and some of the community challenges, the opportunities and everything that, that gets formalized in a document. It also becomes something that we share with candidates when we're doing our outreach, our recruiting calls to them. And when they're asking us, what, what can you tell me about the city of Glendale? What can you tell me about what they're looking for? That all becomes part of our conversation or dialogue throughout the recruitment process.
Okay. And then one more question if I could. You mentioned diversity. Can you talk a little bit more about, you know, the kind of your track record?
Yeah.
Maybe look at the last couple of years. You say that your average placement is, is, is six years for, I think you said city manager positions? I wasn't quite sure. You mentioned diversity. So can you give us a sense of how that's, what successes you've had in achieving diversity?
Yeah, happy to do that. And first of all, I will acknowledge that what you heard is correct. Our average for city manager placements is at least six years. Three of our four most recent have been longer than that, eight years or more. One just resigned after a six year. Diversity, so I tabulated some quick numbers for you. In terms of C-suite, so the city manager and department director types of placements, we have 42% female placements and 43 racial and other minority placements within the last few years. And in terms of senior executives, it's 35% female and 53% racial and other minority.
Thank you. Thank you. I guess let's go to the next, Ms. Divine, you have a question or we go and later?
I do, I have a.
Okay, Ms. Divine.
Thank you. Let's see, Cindy, you are the National Director of Alliance. So that would mean that your outreach goes nationwide. I mean, you would work nationwide. What kind of success have you had in recruiting out of state employees or city managers to California? And my second question has to do with videos. One of the other consultants is, is offering a video and, you know, that sounds really exciting to me, but I'd like to know your impression of that as well and how we could work that.
Okay. To your first question, very good luck with out of state candidates. And I'm sure everybody else that you talked to would tell you the same thing. California beckons to people from all over the United States. So we typically do get a lot of interest from candidates from throughout the nation, especially for the higher level positions in very attractive communities like yours. We're just now nearing completion of the city manager recruitment for Palm Springs. We got a lot of interest from candidates inside California and outside California, well qualified candidates. And then to your second question, videos, we are using them more and more. We did not provide anything like that under proposal, but we would be happy to talk with you if you want to do something like that. Where we typically use them is we, again, we have this portal. If you log on to alliancerc.com, it would take you to the portal. You could see all of our current recruitments. It's the same for the other firms. We typically would post the brochure there, we would post the application there. And again, more and more, we are also posting videos. More often than not, those videos are provided to us by our clients. But again, if that's something you're interested in, we would work with you on that.
And that was what I was going to ask, if we could, you know, because we have a very great TV production.
Yep.
Staff and they could probably provide you with a really good video.
Yeah, if you go to our website right now, you'd see a couple.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Very good.
Okay, Ms. Cindy Krebs, thank you. So we go to the next, I don't have any question for you. If I have, I'll ask later.
Okay.
So we go to the next.
Sure. Mr. Mayor, the next would be Avery Associates, Bill Avery.
Mr. Avery? Mr. Avery?
No, we're having some technical challenges.
He's here, he's been here, in and out.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
So go ahead, Mr. Avery, and you have a couple of minutes to, if you want to give an overview of your proposal and then the council asks you questions.
Sure, Mayor and Councilmembers, nice to talk to you. I'm Bill Avery, Avery Associates. Been in this business for quite a few years, probably about 20 on the search side, although even before that, doing labor relations work. So I'm very familiar with the state of California. I've done substantial work for the city of Pasadena and the city of Burbank and hopefully the city of Glendale. So as a former city manager, I really understand that role extremely well. I certainly understand cities that have full service including power and water and all the utilities. And I have a really good sense of what will work in a given city in terms of the sort of personality and presence that will work in different places. So you have a sophisticated city, I have a pretty good idea what you're looking for and, pretty good idea what I'd be looking for and would look forward to working with you.
Mr. Avery is connecting through phone or?
No, he's on, but his video is not working, so.
Oh, video is not working, okay. Mr. Avery, so you said Pasadena and Burbank?
Uh, yes. I worked for Pasadena for years.
I'm sorry, say again.
I'm sorry, did work for Pasadena for several years.
But you said you have been city manager in where?
Oh, Los Gatos, where my office is now.
Oh.
That was an earlier life. I was a city manager in Los Gatos, so.
How long back that was, I'm just curious.
Long time ago, but.
Okay. All right, that's fine, thank you. I go to my, so are you done with your presentation?
I am. I was told I only had two minutes, so I think I used it.
All right. My colleagues, any question from Mr. Avery?
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yeah, could you, could you discuss the experience you have with doing community outreach and, you know, stakeholder outreach or whatever we want to call it? That was, well, let's start there. Maybe you could just describe what you've done, how you see it working in, in a place like Glendale specifically.
We've done a series of different things. We do, excuse me, we do community outreach in terms of doing things on terms of outreach based on your email. We've done different things in terms of, and maybe the most expansive example is San Jose City Auditor Controller. In terms of police, we did like 15 community meetings in terms of that. So we've done all that. We've done dedicated email outreaches, we've done community meetings, you name it, we've done it and we're pretty comfortable in that. San Jose Auditor Controller was probably the most extensive. That was probably 15 community outreach meetings and it was very extensive. So we do all of that stuff and we're very comfortable with it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any, my council, Ms. Divine?
Yes, were all of those, may I ask you, Mr. Avery, were all of those outreach meetings included in your price, in your 26.5?
Yes, they were.
All inclusive? Okay.
Yeah, all inclusive, whatever we want.
And do you use, do you use video as well? Do, can you, do you have access to, or able to use video or?
We have access to that. I'm not a big fan. Before you appoint someone, I would think you'd want to see them in person and we can do that in safe ways. So I would not recommend that you hire someone without seeing them in person. I would not.
No, I think I mean video of our city is what.
Oh, sure, yeah, absolutely.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you.
Is there any other question from Mr. Avery? I guess not. Oh, I just have a very quick question. Those who you help the cities to hire, what was the average time that they spend in the city which you helped them to get the city manager, let's say? Do you know that?
Uh, yes.
How long they stayed with the city?
Seven to eight years, without question.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to the next one then.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Avery.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, the next proposer CPS HR Consulting, Frank Rojas.
Mr. Rojas? I saw him a while ago.
Yeah, I know, he was on. He's coming.
Oh, he's coming, okay. Mr. Rojas?
I think he's on mute.
Oh, he's on mute.
Oh, here he is.
Are you able to hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
So thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council, really excited to be talking with you. The city of Glendale is really an elite city and really a kind of a go-to destination. And I'll talk a little bit about that. But first, just would like to let you know a little bit about CPS HR Consulting. And I apologize if the lighting's bad. Not sure why I wasn't able to get that. I know we talked about that earlier, so it probably doesn't help.
No, but this is better than the Mr. Avery's light, so.
Well, thank you for that. So we are a joint powers authority, a state agency, completely understand that the same issues that you deal with and the same challenges that we're all having right now as a state agency. We, it's very sensitive to what your needs may be and I think it's, it'll impact how we do recruitment. So we've been doing this type of work for a number of years. I personally have been recruiting since 1981. Learned to use my cell phone contact, so I've got enough of city manager position as contact. These are people I've worked with and I stay in touch with, asking for referrals, asking them about other positions. But I would just pick up the phone and just start calling people. As far as the process goes after we would meet, I would recommend doing some community outreach. I am completing a city manager search currently in the city of Salinas. And what we did there was a survey for, for just residents who could go online and basically answer questions. What do you like about the city of Salinas, this particular case? What do you see as, as particular challenges that your next city manager will have to address? And what are you looking for in your next city manager? I take all those comments and then beyond that, I actually did outreach phone calls. So the city council had given me a list of four or five names apiece, picked the phone and I called each one of them and I got their feedback on similar issues and other comments. They could have been people who were in the construction industry, school district, superintendents, your, your, your business person on the street. But I contacted a number of people and what I did at the end of that is I put together basically this, which is all the comments that I received, I typed it out. And before we would meet, after, when I provided, before I provided you with the resumes and all my candidates, I would give you basically a book like this so you could go through the comments and really understand what, what kind of feedback we receive from, from your constituency. So that's, that really helps to, and also a lot of the comments that we, that I would share in my interviews, I may not necessarily put all of those comments in a brochure. I really want to take that brochure and make it about what you're looking for. But as I talked to candidates, I absolutely used the language and talked about permitting frustrations that planners might have had. What ideas do you have for streamlining a permitting process? Or if it was about safety, what issues have you addressed to or homelessness issues? What have you, in terms of addressing the homeless, that you were affordable housing? I know in the city of Glendale, again, you're a very innovative city and going back to, you know, the, the Glendale Tech Strategic Plan or the Glendale Tech Week that you do. But even the urban art program, so much of what you do are the things that I would get excited about as I called candidates and really talked to them about the city of Glendale and how cutting edge you are and a lot of things that you've been doing to create higher paying jobs, whether it's bringing more healthcare, finance or creative based type organizations to the city, but also trying to balance that, the growth with the quality of life that you're looking for and what you talked a lot about in terms of parks. So those are some of the things to talk about with each candidate, really trying to bring to life. We absolutely do the videos, as you probably saw in our proposal. You've got some very nice videos already on your website, which I was very impressed with. This, this video that we would do would be specifically talking to members of the staff, potentially city council members, but people who would talk about what they liked about, what they liked about working for the city of Glendale and really just kind of bringing it to life, much like I try to do in my, in my recruitment efforts. So last thing I want to share with you is how I go about doing recruiting. Your citizens want to know that the position's being advertised. So we do advertise, I, we do a lot of email outreach. We get that, once we get that brochure going, we will blast it to basically everybody who's applied for a city manager position, qualified people have applied for any city manager position within our organization. On LinkedIn, I go in and really kind of create a vibe, start talking about the position, connect with all my LinkedIn. I've got, I'm considered one of the top 1% viewed profiles on LinkedIn. So when I go on there and start saying, this is the best city manager position you're going to find, people will see it and they'll share it with their colleagues as well. And so it does create that. But all of that said, really where this, where this person's going to come with that does is it basically gives you the best person that applies for the position. What I try to do is find you the best person that's available for the position. And that's why I pick up the phone and I call people. Again, since I started recruiting well before there was an internet. So my methodology has always been picking up the phone, calling people, are you interested in this position? This is what we're doing. Who do you know that would be a good fit for this position? Where do you, where would you recommend I find these people? So that kind of strategy I think will give us the best, basically highlight.
Thank you, Mr. Rojas. It's okay. What's the average time that those who recruited stayed in the, in that city? Do you have any idea, average time?
No, I've heard the seven to eight years and I'm sure if that's like a, an average, we offer guarantees for all our recruitments. So I can tell you that people, you know, are not finishing their positions before the guarantees are up. But that said, I don't have the numbers as right now off the top of my head, but it takes the going number, I'm sure it's consistent.
Thank you. Is there any question from Mr. Rojas? Ms. Divine?
So how many years is your guarantee?
It's a one year.
A one year guarantee?
Thanks.
Okay. Because we, you know, we just had two years of our city manager from the last recruitment.
Yes. Question.
Is there any other question? Is there any other question from Mr. Rojas?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes. Mr. Najari.
Thank you. So, hi, Mr. Rojas. We're, I think, some council have expressed an interest in a nationwide search. How does your, how does a nationwide search differ from a California search for you in terms of your process?
We're advertising on all the, all the public sector sites. So the people who are, again, potentially looking for jobs, will see that nationally, whether it be jobs available or any of the other ICMA's, you know, local organizations there and especially some of the diversity sites as well. But we do a national search, a national advertisement. But on that, again, we've had people from, I mean, I just, today I placed somebody in San, but I live in Riverside. So I know the local community very well. And the person I just placed in Bernardino today is coming from North Carolina. So we, our outreach, those emails we send do go to basically, again, everybody throughout the country. Most of my candidates, most of the people I know personally that are on my phone contacts, quite frankly, are Southern California, Central Valley and Northern California, where I've done most of my city manager searches. Although I have colleagues throughout the country that I also tap into and say, hey, who do you know who's interested in this position? We're very, about 120 people on our staff. So I'm tapping into all my colleagues and letting them know about this opportunity.
So, Mr. Rojas, what would you do? Would you pass on a resume to us if someone from Canada applied? Or London or the Netherlands? I mean.
Not necessarily. There would be a challenge for a person like that. And sometimes it's even a challenge for people from out of California to come into California. Number one, we have a high cost of living. So people may see the salary and say, well, that's a great salary. Then they come to California and realize what it costs to live in Southern California. A lot of that is something that we, that I like to try to focus again. Initially, on the calls are people who have lived in high rent districts such as San Diego, Southern California in general, the Bay Area. Again, a lot of the outreach will do. I mean, we do let people know about it. As far as people from out of the country, a learning curve would just be too high for a person like that. It just basically, and California regulations and ordinances, let alone the, you know, outside of the state. So I would, you, the process, you do get a list of everybody who applied for the position, their names. So you'll know how many people and I do, I would, Mr. Garcia informed of all the candidates that have been applying for the position. So he would get a weekly update from me and can tell you at any meeting, how many candidates have applied, what regions they're from, information like that that might help you out as far as the progress. I do like to keep you informed.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
One last question, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Devine, yes, council member.
Yeah, Mr. Rojas, would we be working directly with you or with another staff member?
If you don't mind, I'd like to work with you directly.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay.
I have some questions.
Ms., Mr. Bratton, Councilmember Bratton.
Hi, Mr. Rojas. You talked about your outreach in Salinas. You mentioned, you said something like four to five. Each council member gave you four to five people to call? Is that what you said? Or four to five in total?
Yes, they did. Again, they each, and there's seven council members there. Actually, there were six because their mayor had passed away. But each one picked up the phone and it was really good phone calls because I was able to learn a whole lot more about the community, about some of the community concerns and, but also the business concerns. And again, things about, you know, permitting processes that I could talk about city managers and how did you streamline your permitting processes at the city that you're at? What challenges have you had to confront as far as homeless issues? Or what have you done about affordable housing in an area where it's very expensive and there's not a lot of room for growth? So those are all, again, valuable questions I was able to get answers about.
Right, and that's great. But if we wanted to go beyond that, because that would be, you know, people we already know, we're telling you, talk to this person. These are already people that, you know, we're probably getting, they're probably getting our ear anyway. So how would you anticipate broadening that net a little bit? You know, I know a survey is a survey, but I'm thinking of like a town hall type arrangement or meeting with, you know, organizations, let's say, some community organizations or, you know, homeowners association, you know, renter groups. I mean, you know, different groups representing different, different, you know, major, you know, ethnic groups within the city, right? We have a big, you know, Armenian population, Latino and Korean, et cetera, Filipino. So how would we, if we wanted to get something broader than, you know, you making, you know, I don't know, 30 phone calls? What would you envision?
Well, I appreciate your comment about surveys because quite frankly, we don't get, you know, maybe between 75 and 100 responses from those surveys. And a lot of it's the same information. What I did in Santa Barbara, for example, when I did a recruitment there, was I actually showed up in person and we had two different nights. We're in the evenings when people off of, I showed up. Would be a little bit more challenging here. Some of this would have to, as one of my, I think the first thing we mentioned, we probably use technology for a lot of that. I, again, I'm glad to drive out and try to do something, a social distancing effort. All of this is, again, included in the fee that we've offered. But again, with COVID-19, I'd love to come out to the community. I'd love to have those evening meetings. And when I did a small city in the Central Valley, we had, you know, over 100 people show up each night. They were Facebooking it, so people could go on to their Facebook page and actually ask questions. We could do something, do a combination of, you know, kind of a Facebook meeting and a Zoom type of things so people could chime in. I'm glad to work with our technology team and work with you on that.
Okay, and is that, does that affect the fee that you're charging? I mean, you know, because obviously you could go, you know, we could, we could put you to work doing nothing else, you know, than that for two months, which is not probably what we'll do. But where's the line there and how much are you prepared to do?
I'm prepared to do what it takes to get you the best candidate. I mean that sincerely. When I worked, a neighbor of yours in a small community, San Marino there, when I did their city manager search, I came out like seven or eight times. I mean, their mayor would pick up the phone and say, can you be at our closed session next week? I'd get in my car and I'd go to their closed session. I mean, it was, it was a drive and, but I'll tell you, it was worth it because they put in all their effort into it. They were showing up every night and they were, you know, they were following up. So I would do the same thing. The fee's not going to change. That, I think with my proposal, it mentions a flat fee, that's not going to change.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rojas. I guess we can go to the next one if we are fine, Mr. Garcia.
I don't know if any of the council members, council members had any comments. Councilmember Kusakian?
No, that's fine. City Attorney Garcia, CPS did the last recruitment first.
Okay, next one?
Mr. Mayor, the next candidate or next proposer and the last one is Peckham McKenney. And Tony Dollarbrook is the representative, will be the recruiter for that proposal and I believe he's on as well.
Mr. Dollarbrook?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. I hope you can see me. We had prepared a slideshow that the city's streaming for us. It's just seven slides. It'll take three to five minutes. We can just kind of walk through it. I know you have a copy already. Starting with the first slide, Peckham McKenney is, you know, well-recognized for focusing the time and effort to find candidates that fit. That's our slogan. And we do that through a number of different ways. And by the way, I'll say 89% of our people stay with our clients for five years. So we're proud of that number. I'll also add that 53% of our placements across the board are women and people of color. We accomplish that fit by limiting the number of clients that we take. I won't have more than possibly four or five different at one time. So we can focus the time that's necessary to learn what it is that you're looking for and then reach out to those folks to find places for you. And like the others, we have found that telephone calls are the most best way to make that connection. Because really with COVID right now, people not wanting to step outside their bubble, you know, we have to make that connection to talk about the opportunity and the challenges and the exciting place that the city of Glendale would be. Personally, I, we also accomplished this. I can say for myself, I was a city manager until about April of 2019. So I'm very, very clear about not only what the role and responsibility is, but also I served, I live and have resided in Los Angeles area. 12, the past year, city manager, 17 years before that, as a, leaving the city of Beverly Hills as a deputy city manager. I've served over my career on the League of California Cities Executive Board and every chair in the city manager's department, including president. We, if I go to the next slide, just again, real quick, I want to just go through this quickly. I know you've already had a chance to look at it. We spent a lot of time trying to find the ideal candidate for you. You talked about community engagement and let me jump to that real quick. We have a slide that talks about that. There's really three opportunities from our perspective for you to involve the community. First would be when you, when we as a team were preparing the.
Excuse me, excuse me, Mr. The page one, you said that you, with 12 years as city manager, where?
My last six years, ending April of 2019, was the city of Palos Verdes Estates.
I see.
My six years before that was with the city of Rolling Hills. And then, as I said, I did 17 years with the city of Beverly Hills as city manager.
Okay, thank you. Sorry interrupting you. Go ahead.
Yeah, no problem. And I'm talking fast. I don't usually talk this fast, but I want to be mindful of your time. So with community engagement, really, you know, I would say there's three different opportunities. We're teaming with you and the information that we collect in that community engagement process is actually for you. So you have the information and knowledge from your community, how to select a city manager. And I would say by and large, most people really don't know what a city manager does. You know, so part of the process is finding out what they're looking for in, you know, for the city council to make a decision. In the, if you do community engagement in preparation of the candidate profile, we're collecting data to craft the ideal candidate. Another opportunity would be to do community engagement during the recruitment time when we're busy collecting resumes and doing, you know, finding people that fit with you. So you can then take the information from that outreach and apply it to decide who it is that you want to interview. And then the third opportunity for community engagement would be in the interview process. That's a more limited involvement because not everybody can be involved in the selection process. But what that involves is maybe having some community leaders engaged, maybe in a meet and greet, where they can meet the potential candidates and then give you feedback about what they heard from them in that conversation. COVID is a challenge, I would say, for the community participation. You know, we have been doing a lot by Zoom and by telephone, as you know, you know, to meet with you. I am local and I am able and willing to come out and meet with you personally. But large group engagement right now may not play given COVID. So, you know, we would suggest teaming with, creating a survey at any one of those appropriate times. We have a number of questions that you could ask. I give you one, for example, in the slide. There's several other I could give you right now. And putting that out there and then having the staff assemble it and giving it to you directly. So you can use it to evaluate candidates. Again, I'm trying to move through this quickly for you. We, let's see here. You know, we have a very specific process that you asked council member about if we would introduce to you people from Canada or from Europe as candidates. Our process involves, after we do the general outreach, we try to find candidates that fit the profile that we worked out with you. We will then send them supplemental questionnaires. Then we will have a telephone interview with them. And then ultimately, we will bring candidates to you that fit the profile that we developed. It may be people from, out of the country. It will result from that screening process. We'll give you a list of all the people that applied, but we'll give you the recommended candidates to choose among to then select who you want to pick for an interview. We will not tell you who to interview. We're just going to bring you folks that we think would fit with what you're looking for. And again, not to take up too much of your time. You know, again, I'm local, I'm jumping to the end of page six, the last slide at this point. I am local. We will keep you up to date throughout the process. We likewise keep the candidates up to date throughout the process. It's important that they're a part of knowing what's going on as well. And we will, you know, commit everything we have to try to find candidates that fit. With that, again, mindful of your time, that would conclude my presentation.
Thank you. Okay, is there any question from Mr. Dollarbrook? Any question from Mr. Dollarbrook?
Yeah, I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Councilmember Bratton.
Hi, Mr. Dollarbrook. Hope I pronounced that right.
And Tony is.
Tony, okay, Tony, that's easier. This, maybe, could you talk a little about, like, about what the market is like right now? And how you see Glendale being competitive among, you know, the best candidates that are out there? And what would you say to a candidate to sell Glendale? Because, I mean, that's half of the battle, right? It's not just, it's not just we pick, but it's getting them to pick us. So what could you say about that?
Well, and that's a great question, so thank you. So first of all, COVID's created this unique environment. I think there's a lot of things that are going well for Glendale that would make it attractive. And first of all, your salary, you know, I looked at the state controllers report. It's very competitive, it's attractive. So somebody who's looking for a promotion, an opportunity, is going to find your compensation attractive. That's one of the basic requirements. You're a full-service city. You have a very diverse community with a number of challenges. You have a vibrant, a commercial sector. There's a lot going for the city that will make it attractive. And you're a large city, no question about it. I think there's other things you have to be cognizant of again, is that the candidates are interviewing you as much as you're interviewing them. What you have, point for you is that you're a well-functioning team. You have an organization that's very professional. And this, you know, part of, from doing a little homework, but also knowing, you know, folks that have worked there or do work there. So, you know, you're a professional, ethical team. The candidates are going to look for a city where there's stability. They're, you know, don't want to, you know, go to a place where there's going to be a two-three vote on everything. So you don't have that. That's a positive for you as well. There's a number of things like that. Is that answering your question?
Yeah, yeah, that's good. Thanks.
All right, is there any other question?
I have quite a couple of questions.
Yes, Ms. Devine, Councilmember Devine.
Okay, I'll call you Tony, okay?
Please. Yes, thank you.
Tony, would we be working directly with you or would there be another representative from your company?
It's all me.
All you.
He promised in this writing that he will do the work. He promised here.
Okay, and let's say that we would like for you to come over or call us for a closed session. Would you be willing to come to Glendale for it to be, meet with us in person for a closed?
Absolutely.
I mean, you don't have numbers on here, like how many. Well, it says the 26,000 is inclusive of three to five days of onsite or virtual meetings. Do you really limit it to that or are you flexible?
Well, you know, I and we are flexible. We'll talk, we'll talk through that. Absolutely the five without a question. Absolutely the five without a question. If we need more, let's talk about it. And it depends what, what context it's in, of course, as well.
Okay. And you have like the shortest recruitment time of 12 weeks of all of the applicants. Do you usually complete this recruitment in, in that short a period of time? I mean, I'm, I'd be happy if you could do that.
You know, we do. And, and I think, again, Glendale's an attractive place. So I think we're going to have, you know, be effective in getting a good response. Well, it takes time, interestingly enough. At the, at the very beginning, you know, we allocated two weeks to put together the candidate profile. And that follows an individual conversation with each of you and then assembling it all together and then sending it back to the city to review. And we make modifications. That actually, you know, it might take longer because there's so much in the process. But the actual recruitment itself, you know, four weeks is, is the minimum and totally successful. Six week works, I would not say go longer. And especially if we're going to start, I'm making assumption here, after the first of the year because of the holidays. The city managers are going to be right in the middle of budget. You know, if, if it goes too long, and they're not, we're not going to have their attention. And we are doing so much more recruitment through online. Western cities, we publish online. We extensively do then and then other, other ads through other agencies. And it's all online. So, you know, we're getting immediate, getting immediate out there. We're not waiting to have something published in order to meet their timeframe.
And, and do you have success in recruit, recruiting from out of state?
Oh, you know, thanks for asking. I was going to bring that up. You know, it's so funny because it's actually harder, I would say, to recruit from only within the state. Because, because of technology, everything is out for everybody. Now, we, we get lots of responses from out of state. And I've been, I've had a number of recruitments from out of the country as well. I, I didn't mention now, but I was on the ICMA board for a time. And so I still have connections through ICMA to do a more national outreach. And so national is not a problem. I mean, it's just-
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you, Tony. Thank you.
Okay. Any other question from Mr. Dollarburg? No more questions? Okay.
Thank you very much.
One, one more thing. I just, you said you are local. Can you tell me approximately how far you reside from Glendale? Where do you-
I, I live in Rancho Palos Verdes. I live in Rancho Palos Verdes.
Rancho, Rancho Palos Verdes. Okay, I know where you live. That's close. All right. You are local. That's true. All right. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Garcia.
I think at this time it'd be appropriate to take callers and then-
All right, let's go to the callers.
Dina Garibian, you're live, Dina. Go ahead.
Thank you. Hi.
Hi.
My name is Dina Garibian, and I have been a resident of Glendale for nearly my entire life of 21 years. I wanted to speak today because the city is considering retaining an executive recruiter to appoint a city manager. I urge the city council to reconsider this decision and have interim city manager, Mr. Rupi Gulani, take on the role. It's disappointing to see a lack of obvious justification for bringing on a new city manager. Simply put, the trivial fact that Mr. Gulani was Armenian may be preventing him from continuing to do what he has already done so well. As an Armenian and aspiring public servant myself, I find this incredibly disheartening and discouraging. Please ask yourself, is this the kind of message you want to be sending to the young people of this community, which by and large are Armenian? After all, this is a man who has done so much excellent work for the city over the years. I hope to one day serve the city I was born and raised in. Looking at what the city council is considering doing, I don't feel proud to be a citizen of the city right now. And I don't feel the urge to serve it as I've always dreamed to. It's no secret that public service is a thankless job, but it should be one that is at the very least rewarded by the city council itself. Seeing the lengths that this body is willing to go to replacing him after his years in the public arena is not only baffling but unfair to Mr. Gulani and the city of Glendale. What's most shocking to me is the amount of money going to be spent on this. Between $18,900 and $38,000, depending on the firm, for their services. These taxpayer dollars would be going to recruit and screen candidates for the city manager position at a time where every dollar the city spends should be on something useful for its citizens. Hiring the company to then hire a person to do a job that someone is already doing and doing well is not an appropriate use of the city's money. This is not a political position, and it shouldn't be treated as such. It should be given to the most qualified person. What's sad is sitting here and listening to the city council members wondering how it can ensure that new recruits would want to be in Glendale if they would choose Glendale. Mr. Gulani chose Glendale, and he chose it years ago. He has served this city for decades and is the most qualified individual to be the permanent city manager. I know I'm not alone when I say that bringing someone from the outside to take on this role is as unnecessary as it is disrespectful to the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller.
Shant Delgazarian. Shant, you're live.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone, Mr. Mayor and city council members. I'm kind of going to shadow what the previous speaker just said. So I just want to give a quick background of who I am and how it relates to Mr. Gulayan. I'm here obviously to highly recommend Mr. Gulayan for city manager. So my name is Shant Delgazarian, LA County Public Works Inspector for 33 years. I cover all areas in LA County. Been in the government more than half of my life, specifically in the La Cressenta and the unincorporated Montrose area, which borders with the city of Glendale. So why, why do I say this? To establish my credibility. I have dealt with Mr. Gulayan on a few projects, specifically the Pennsylvania Avenue Rehabilitation Project, which had, which was a joint project with the city, and many storm drain projects that are currently still on the books that I'm working with. I have dealt with Rupi many times, lots of emails back and forth. I've seen him at site visits. This man has 20 years of experience and loyalty. Why are we looking elsewhere? Experience and quality cannot be put on, on a, on a dollar figure. This man is more than qualified, especially considering the positions that he's held with the city. I highly recommend Mr. Gulayan to receive this position as a permitted city manager. His reputation precedes himself. I have, I mean, that, that tells you a lot, that I've been around 33 years. This man is loyalty to the city of Glendale for 20 years. That's 20 years of knowledge, experience. And I, which is higher up than the city, right? We have 88 cities within LA County. Glendale happens to be one. It's telling you, I've had good rapport with this man. Why are we going to outsource it and start from scratch? Just wanted to say my two cents. And please make sure that's on the record. Shant Delgazarian, LA County. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Lori Kazandia, you're live, Lori. Lori, can you hear me?
Yes, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Lori, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor and council members, thank you for taking my calls. As we all know, COVID has been rough on everyone, including businesses and municipalities. With that being said, I'm not sure I understand the logic of the current council that they would want to procrastinate for the next several months looking for a city manager when you already have an extremely qualified candidate in Mr. Gulani. I believe he's been with the city of Glendale for many years, and he has a great track record. If the average span of a city manager is six to eight years, he's already exceeded that at least threefold. A new person to the community will take time to adjust, to get to know the city, the employees, the programs, the residents, which all take additional months to get acclimated. And even if I'm hearing that you're going to go out nationally, outside of the state, then there's, there's new laws, new ordinances and other things that they would have to learn. All of this time between the recruitment and that, you know, learning gap that it would take, it's going to be at least a year before a city manager is fully adjusted. I don't know why that you can't see the knowledge of having somebody from within, somebody who knows the city well and has worked well with the city and been loyal to the city. Mr. Gulani is ready to start working on day one. I hope you will not vote to hire one of the recruiting firms, but rather vote to hire Mr. Gulani as the new city manager. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kazandia. Next caller.
Mayor, that was the last caller.
Thank you. Okay. Now, my colleagues, are there any comments or what? We do nothing.
Well-
Any com- yes. Councilmember Bratton.
I, I guess we have to first decide how, what's our, what's our process going to be here? I mean, I have, I've, I've put a list in order in my own mind of who, who's, you know, who's at the top and who's at the bottom. And maybe everybody else has too. And I'm, I'm wondering if, if anybody has an interesting and creative strategy for us to kind of see whether we're lining up and, and, and make this, make this quick.
Throw it out, Dan. Who do you got?
Well, I mean, I, I-
It's your top three, and then let's sort of-
I thought everybody was good, but I, I liked, I liked Mr. Rojas the most. You know, he knows the city. You know, if we talk about not wanting to have a lot of time wasted in the process. I mean, he, he can get up to speed immediately. He, he had a lot of specifics. So he would be the first on, on my list. I liked Alliance too, although their, their price, you know, I'm still not quite sure whether, where they are on price, but they, they seem like a little bit pricey. And I don't really know what we get for that additional, that additional cost. Those would be my, my top two.
Okay, Mr. Najarian.
I'll give you three. I like Frank Rojas, number two spot, William Avery. Third spot, Anthony, Anthony from Rancho Palos Verdes.
CPS, that would be Peckham.
Yes, Peckham.
Ms. Devine.
You're on mute, Paula.
Okay, I give mine.
Councilmember Najarian. No, I thought that Peckham was number one, my number one choice. Alliance was number two. I'm not sure. I didn't get a chance to ask Cindy if we would be dealing with her or whomever. I am not in favor of using the same consultants that we used the last time. I am, I'm not in favor of that. And, and then Avery was last.
Okay.
So my top two are Peckham and Alliance.
Okay. You want to know if the, this, the first one, if who will handle the case? You asked who will handle the case from this, the first Alliance?
Alliance.
Is, is she still on, on? I forgot. Ms. Cindy Krebs.
Hi, I'm here. I would be your consultant.
You will be our consultant. Okay.
And Cheryl, my colleague, would be backing me up on everything too. So you'd have two consultants.
All right. But you will be involved also with it? Or you just supervise?
100% me. She, she's the backup. If you need somebody on the phone and I'm busy, you can call her.
So it's, it's not that you will supervise, you will do it yourself?
Correct.
All right. So that's the answer, Ms. Devine.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Councilmember Katsak.
So my top two are CPS and Alliance. You know, with the bottom tier being with Avery and with Tony's group. So I think that, so I think that the strengths of CPS, I think, were already mentioned. They happen to be familiar with the city. I think that's an advantage. Obviously, they've done a lot of work with a lot of cities in California and recruitments and looking at what they've been working on. I overall like Alliance's package and the presentation and approach to the recruitment. Cost-wise, you know, I, it's, once we're spending over a certain amount, to find the right person who will hopefully lead our city, a few thousand dollars is, is not my greatest concern. My concern is just approach and their commitment to doing outreach and talking to the stakeholders and finding the person who is going to be the best fit. None of them were bad, and I'm just expressing who I think impressed me the most.
Okay. From my side, all of them are great. It's very hard to distinguish whom you want. It's just, you have to take some chances because, you know, we're just talking a few minutes. It's hard to figure out what's going on. All of them are great, but I would take Peckham, Alliance, Avery and CPS.
I agree.
So what are the thoughts?
Anybody wants to change it? Anybody wants to change the position, just hearing others? Or everybody is where they stand?
Well, I, I'm not, I don't want to change the position, but I'm just looking through the list here. I took notes and everybody except Councilmember Najarian had Alliance on their list. So if we were looking for somebody that at least got the most, the most total votes, it would be them. So I don't know if, if, if you have a strong feeling against them. I, I, my first choice is, 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 what is it? CPS?
CPS HR.
So there's three of us who have them at the number one position?
Three of us have CPS as the number one.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we have that too. So we have this, okay, so that's where we are. That's the big picture.
And two of us have Peckham.
Right.
At the top of our list. So would anybody, you know, Peckham is, he has a lot of experience with being a city manager and a lot of really kind of-
Yeah, that's what I like, Ms. Devine, that he has been the city manager himself. Saying 12 years city manager.
Yes.
And before, worked for the city for 30 years. I thought that, that was the only thing made me-
And also, if you look, if you look at the list of cities that they've provided, their, their recruitment experience and the cities that have, you know, the 43 city manager recruitments and, and the cities that they've worked with is impressive. And he's local. He's local. Why are you laughing, Councilmember Najarian? Are you looking at the cities?
No. No, I'm, I'm just, I, I guess I'm just reminded that in the end, let's all keep it in perspective that we're going to be picking the city manager, all of us. These are folks that are going to be serving them to us. And I don't think any city manager of any quality is going to go unnoticed on this search. So it's, I mean, any city manager candidate would be left out. So it's-
But, but, but on the other hand, Councilmember Najarian, it is this recruiter who brings in the recruits. And that's what we will be choosing from. And if the recruits are not strong, then we are picking from a group of not-so-strong applicants. So I, I just, you know-
Well, I know a couple that are going to apply, and I'm pretty good with, you know, anyway. What about the city attorney? What do you say? How do, how do we score this?
It's really a council decision. Councilman Najarian.
Well, well, okay, let's just, let's get the ball rolling. I'll, I'll move that we hire Frank Rojas and CP, whatever his company is.
CPS HR. And, and his, and their fee was 25,000.
I'll, I'll second it. I mean, I, I liked, I liked them.
The motion is seconded.
So we should probably take a vote, Mr. Mayor, and if there isn't three votes-
Hold on, hold on, Mr. Katsakian. Is there anything you want to say?
What was their timeline for completing the recruitment? I mean, everyone was within a couple of weeks, right?
That's correct.
17 weeks versus, I think the shortest was Peckham for, for, yeah.
And I, I think regardless- And I, I think regardless of the recruiter, because you, the council seems to want a, you know, somewhat robust community outreach, whether it's Zoom meetings, whatever, I think it's all going to end up lining up.
Okay.
We'll probably be the bottleneck, not the recruiter.
Okay. Sure, that's fine.
So what, what's, what do you see?
So there was a motion and a second.
I was just asking about the timing, and it looks like everyone is relatively the same, or we can kind of squeeze them to within our timelines. So that was it. There was a motion and a second.
Okay, let's do the road call, please.
Councilmember Brotman? Yes. Devine?
No.
Kusakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes. Ms. Devine, you want to change your vote?
For the benefit of the, the group, no.
Yes. Let's, because it's going to go pass, so why we don't?
I want Peckham, I'm sorry, I, I want.
And Mr. City Attorney, just so we're clear, regardless of who we hire, any of us can present a candidate or candidates to the recruiter to be presented to the council as a whole. Is that fair to say?
It's all part of the process, and then the council decides who to interview, absolutely, as you, as you're aware.
Okay, I guess we have a recruiter. Congratulations to Mr. Rojas for the second time.
Yeah. No one has a thing.
So you have it. Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is Management Services regarding opposition to Los Angeles County Health Order that prohibits outdoor dining. Resolution opposing L.A. County Health Order that prohibits outdoor dining and request its immediate repeal.
Okay, Mr. Golanyan, City Manager Golanyan.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Member City Council, we had placed this item on the agenda in response to council's request. However, effective yesterday, the new California State Health Department orders became effective, which basically made this action or proposed action moot. However, we kept it on the agenda so that Chief Lanzus was getting ready to provide an overview of all the elements that went into yesterday's state health department orders and open it up to questions. Hopefully, this will clarify. There's a lot of issues at hand, and he will walk you through it and open it up to questions.
Before.
While Chief Lanzus is bringing that up, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask our city attorney, I know some local businesses had inquiries about dining at places like the Americana, where after orders were issued, people were sitting at tables. I understand that people weren't being served, but a couple of questions. One is, have you had a chance to respond to those individuals? Have we given them our legal opinion or where our, our legal department falls in terms of interpretation of the law? And also, is this going to, is whatever was happening at the Americana, if you can explain, is that going to be able to apply to any other parklets or other places that may be deemed public seating?
Councilmember Kusakian, I, I do know that in a, while those emails are coming through, I know staff from both Management Services and Community Development has had conversations with various businesses that raised the issue of the Americana and other, other, other issues related to outdoor dining. I will tell you that in terms of the interpretation, the interpretation on the county health order ultimately does not rest with me, rests with the county health department, working with county council. We are aware that, we were made aware that the county health department had subsequently over the weekend, either on Friday or Saturday, interpreted their order to not allow that sort of outdoor dining, outside dining, outdoor dining in areas, public areas that were open, but not necessarily being serviced by restaurants. And so that, our understanding is that communication was made to the folks at Americana in general as a relate, and, and I think the chief will probably get into this too, that the order, the county's order is, is relatively strict in terms of outdoor activity, out, gatherings. So obviously, any, any sort of gathering is outside of individuals within the same household is generally prohibited. Obviously, there's, there's enforcement issues with the county, but I do know, again, that the county was specifically made aware of the issue at the Americana and had been working with the management at, at the Americana to resolve that issue.
So any, no, no one can sit and have a meal whether they have bought it or picked it up, someone handed it to them?
Or bring with it. How about bring with it?
Or bring with them. Is that correct?
At a place like the Americana, yes, where there, there is a close location to other individuals who are walking by or patrons of businesses, that type of activity would be prohibited.
And that also is for the parklets?
Correct. Yes, correct.
Okay.
Okay, Chief Lanzus.
Good evening, Mayor Agajanian, members of council, Sylvia Lanzus, your fire chief. I'm going to go through a brief presentation, and I'll keep it very brief on the numbers. As you, Mr. Mayor, mentioned earlier, today was another grim day in Los Angeles County. Next slide, Arm, please. Quickly, I will go through the, the worldwide numbers. We are at 67 million plus cases with 1.5 million plus deaths worldwide. The United States has 14 plus million, which I just, in the back, got an update that we actually crested 15 million today in the United States. 279,000 plus deaths in the U.S. and in California, 1.3 million plus cases with over 20,000 deaths. Arm, if you'll go to the next slide, I'll cover the other two. This slide covers Los Angeles and Glendale. In Los Angeles, these numbers were updated late this afternoon after Department of Public Health provided their new numbers for today. So there are some minor discrepancies to some of the details that Councilmember Brotman spoke of earlier in his comments, but I will share those. But we're still very close to what, what, what he said. The total cases in Los Angeles County were at 466,321 cases. The seven-day average change in the county is 14%. In the city of Glendale, we are at 7,155, with the seven-day average, excuse me, the seven-day change being 12.06%. That's 770 new cases. And the grim mention that I, that I just spoke of is that today we hit the 8,000 death toll in Los Angeles County. In Glendale, we are at 203 deaths, which again, the seven-day change of that number is 4.64%, totaling nine new deaths. The also sad reality today and why the stay-at-home order was enacted throughout the state was that we are at 3,000 plus hospitalized patients today in Los Angeles County with COVID-19. Roughly 25% of those are in the ICU, which keeps our bed availability at 10% below that 50% criteria that was set by the governor earlier this month. The hospitalizations throughout the county have broken records every day so far this month. Next slide. This next slide references, I'm sorry, was there a question? This next slide references some of the information that Councilmember Brotman spoke of earlier. In Glendale, the total cases per 100,000 were at 3,465. The daily average for the past 14 days per 100,000, we were at 45, which we went up from 44 yesterday. And in comparison to Los Angeles County, as Councilmember Brotman mentioned, they were at 62, and they are now at 65 per 100,000 for the daily average over the past 14 days. So we are still, the comments were accurate, we are still holding our own, we are not an outlier, we are not the worst. There's some other references, i-if you look online to, to some of the other communities and areas across Southern California, and we are not great. I don't want to give the impression that we are, but we are not the worst. So before I go to referencing what's open and what's closed per the health order, I just want to take an opportunity to remind everybody, the three Ws, as I've coined them, we can still make a difference, we need to continue to continue to work to make a difference. Those three Ws are simple to remember, wear a mask, watch your space and maintain six feet when possible, wash your hands and practice good hygiene. Now I'll go to.
Chief Lanzus, and Mr. Mayor, can I?
Yes, Mr., yeah, Councilmember Brat.
Yeah, so thanks for these numbers here, and I'm looking at this Glendale, this 45, so this is 45 new infections per 100,000 daily, right? Over the last 14 days, that's the daily average over the last 14 days. That's right, isn't it? That's how to interpret that number?
Yes, that's correct.
And, you know, and I was talking before about, you know, well, we're not an outlier, we're not the worst of the worst, but the other side of it is, you presented these figures, or at least you sent them to me about a month ago, it was mid-November, and instead of that being 45, it was 16. So in one month, we have gone, what, like tripled our new infection rate in the city of Glendale. So just, just, you know, for everybody to be aware, by saying we're not as bad as some of the other areas, it's, it's still, like, it's bad, right? It's, it's a tripling. And I think they're still saying that these numbers are maybe just beginning to pick up the Thanksgiving travel, but that's still going to kick in over the next couple of weeks, right?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Brotman, you're absolutely correct. We, we have tripled. I think what's important to remember, and, and again, I, I don't want to give off the perception or, or the feeling, because I don't feel this way, that, that I'm trying to paint a rosier picture than it is. I think we are a microcosm of the larger numbers that we are seeing throughout our county, throughout our state, and throughout our country. I read late this evening that one in 22 Americans have now been diagnosed with COVID-19. So it, it's out there, and it, it is, I think I mentioned it the last presentation that I made, you should go about your day with the idea that everybody that you come into contact with has it, that, that is the best way to protect ourselves and to keep ourselves healthy and to keep ourselves as a community strong and healthy. So the, the tripling number, you're absolutely right, we have gone from 16 to 45, but so has the county, and so have the other jurisdictions. You know, if you look at, on that, that last graph that I showed, Pasadena and Burbank, less populous cities, they're at 44 each, right behind us at 45. But outstanding points, Councilmember Brotman. So I will quickly read through this order on what is open and what is closed. Under the order, the current order, the following sectors are allowed to remain open with safety precautions. Those are critical, critical infrastructure when remote is not possible. Schools which were previously approved to open may, may remain open. Non-urgent medical and dental care, childcare and pre-K may remain open. The following sectors have additional modifications in addition to 100% masking and physical distancing. Those are outdoor recreational facilities, retail, shopping centers, hotels and lodging, restaurants, offices where critical infrastructure sectors and remote is not possible, places of worship and political expression, outdoor only, entertainment production, and fitness facilities. Those that under the order must be closed, indoor recreation facilities, lounges and nightclubs, bars and craft distilleries, public, public entertainment venues, movie theaters, live performance theaters, concert venues, theme parks and festivals, family entertainment centers for all activities, card rooms, satellite wagering facilities, and racetrack onsite wagering facilities, indoor and outdoor playgrounds, museums, zoos and aquariums, hot tubs, steam rooms and saunas not located on residential property, small water vessel charters and outdoor equipment rental, personal care facilities, including hair salons and barber shops, and this is the one that our city attorney referenced, all public and private events and gatherings unless specifically allowed by the order. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions, if there are any.
Okay, before we go to question, I just want to add that cities around us, Silmar, North Hollywood, and West Hollywood, they have more, per 100,000, they have more people are infected with coronavirus than Glendale. As you have mentioned, we are not in good situation, but we are in the middle. However, there are cities which are worse than what we are going through now. Thank you for the report. Okay, is there any question from Chief Lanzus?
Question.
Mr. Councilmember Najarian.
Thanks. Thank you, Chief. So I understand that the ruling today by Judge Chalfont still keeps the outdoor dining ban on for three weeks.
That, that's my understanding too. I haven't seen the order, but that's what the newspaper articles refer to.
Yeah. So until, I mean, some people are claiming it a victory, dining is open, they couldn't prove their case, that's, there may be some truth to those statements, but the ban nonetheless is in effect until, is it December 21st?
I don't know the exact date, but they said three weeks from the date it was issued, and, or maybe from today. And then you're correct that it's, not only the, obviously, the county order is still in effect, but this, the governor's order also, you know, banning outdoor dining is also in effect, because the county has hit the threshold, as Chief Lanzus referenced.
So, I mean, it's, you know, it's difficult as a council member, because you want to open it up for businesses, you want people to be successful and to get the economy going, but then we're faced with these dawning numbers of infection rates and the declining availability of the ICU beds. And, and then you say, jeez, you know, what's more important, money or lives? And then you're said, well, and then we're told that, oh, it's only a small percentage that are severely affected. I mean, there's a lot of, a lot of different information flying around. But here's something a little more concrete, Chief. Let's say tomorrow morning I wake up and I'm not feeling well. Let's say I've got a headache and a cough. What should I do? Stay home, quarantine, go get tested, call the emergency services? I mean, what's the advice for, for those of us who wake up not feeling well?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Najarian, the recommendation per the CDC in your exact scenario is to first call your health, healthcare provider. Attempt to reach your healthcare provider via phone. Attempt a phone consultation or a virtual consultation with your healthcare provider. He or she will give you instructions based on your symptoms, whether or not you should go be tested. We also would recommend that you quarantined yourself and, and kept away from other people, even within your household. But the answer to your question is to call your health, your healthcare provider. If the scenario.
Three people that, that I saw, let's say today, or, or yesterday, that, hey, I'm not feeling well, I just want you to know that I'm quarantining myself. Do I have that obligation?
No, I, I would.
To let people know, hey, I'm, I'm sick now, I don't know what it is, but I'm not feeling good.
I would say, Councilmember Najarian, I would say that you have no, no more obligation to let people know that you aren't feeling good as you would any other time until you tested positive. Once, once you were diagnosed, then it, then it would be the responsibility of that person to let people that he or she has been around know that they have tested positive. Because we are in the flu season as well, there are many cases of the flu out there right now that are not COVID-19.
Right. Okay, thank you for your report, Chief, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And probably that's the reason that they suggest everybody to be, take the flu shot. So this way you can differentiate between whether it's flu or it's coronavirus right away, rather than waiting and to figure out you are infected with what. So that's why to take the flu shot is very important. Anyway, is there any question from Chief Lanzus? Yes, Mr. Kusakian.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This is actually for, for both chiefs. One of, thank you for the presentation, it helps clear. It, it helps clear there and, and give some, a better understanding to these constantly changing and levels of superseding guidelines. So hopefully we can synthesize this. I'd like to ask staff, I know that you've been working on getting the information out there, but please continue to work on putting the information out there as soon as we know, the public should know as to what the guidelines are. But one of the things that's very frustrating, and I think it's one of the primary causes of perhaps the spread of this, is seeing our younger population, teenagers and youth that, that are completely ignoring the guidelines of both social distancing and wearing masks. You know, I've been in downtown Glendale a couple of times, walking around and especially in the evenings around the marketplace and especially the little corridor between Artsoc and Brand where, you know, you have, where we used to have the, the spitting frogs, that area of, by the Old Navy. You see a ton of teenagers who are just hanging out without masks right in each other's spaces. And I'm hoping that we can do some better enforcement, some targeted enforcement in the areas in downtown where we see young people not following the rules and potentially putting themselves and, more importantly, their parents and loved ones at risk. That, that I think is a big problem and it continues to be a big issue. And I empathize and feel for these kids as well for, you know, having to endure completing school on Zoom, not being able to see friends for an entire potentially academic year. I get it, it's not easy, but you know, that's not an excuse for endangering everyone.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Devine.
Yeah, I want to piggyback on what Councilmember Kasakian said because when I was at the Americana, and I mentioned this, I think, last week, there were four teenage boys who did not have masks on. And I asked the security guard about that and he said they will not accept them. They refused to wear them. Do we have any jurisdiction in the Americana proper if, or on the streets of the Americana? I'm sure if they're on the sidewalks, we could. But it was crowded, there was a little social distancing, and here were these four boys, young, probably seventeen, eighteen-year-olds, walking around, not, no masks, completely ignoring what the security guard had, had asked them to do.
Ms. Devine, the common area of Americana belongs to this city, isn't it?
Some, some common areas do and some don't. I mean, there's still, it's a, it's a regulatory order, so there's authority, whether it's private property or public. And we, you know, if we get a complaint, like, like the police chief has said in the past, and, and there's some, there's a call for service, we could, we could at least reach out and try to make that effort for folks to put, to mask up.
So, so then perhaps what we should do is, or what we could do, is alert the administrators at the Americana for their security services that if they have kids there that are not putting on face coverings, that they should call the Glendale Police Department and have them come over. Can we do that?
That's, that's one, one avenue available.
Well, I'd like to recommend that we, we do that because that's really, I mean, if you think about the Americana and the amount of people that could be there, that would really be a, a, a virus-spreading environment for sure. So I think we should notify their security that if they have an issue, call the Glendale Police Department. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Is there any other question from Chief Lanzus? No? All right. Thank you, Chief Lanzus.
Mayor, there is a caller on the line.
Okay, let's go to the caller.
Patty Silvershire. Patty, you're live. Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry, my phone started doing all this stuff. Am I on?
Yes, you are. Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you.
We are listening.
Go ahead, Patty, you can talk.
Perhaps what we should do. Right now or when?
Yes, Patty, you're alive. Go ahead.
Lower the volume, lower the volume on your TV, please, and then.
Lower the volume on my TV? Okay.
That's why, or go away from your TV unit. Walk away from TV unit.
Okay.
Or lower the volume.
All right.
This is what I go through every night, so I know.
Okay, so I'm going to say something right now?
Go ahead, Patty.
Okay. Hi, this is Patty Silvershire, and I'm very concerned because what I have noticed throughout the past several months is that our Glendale police have not been enforcing any of the regulations that the city council has put forward in regards to wearing masks and groups in gathering. And now, as you all are talking about this, I'm still extraordinarily concerned because what are the police doing to enforce our regulations? The masks are so incredibly important and groups gathering in banquet halls that I have noticed tons of cars going into. And people are getting out of their cars without a mask and going into a building. How is this helping us? Where is our enforcement? That's all I had to say.
Thank you, Patty. Thank you very much. Next caller, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Brodmann.
Yeah, I wanted, I wanted to say something to respond to Patty. And, and what I would say is that if she or anybody sees what she just described, they should immediately call the hotline. We have a number that they could, we have two numbers, I think, and maybe we can repeat them here. But if, if, if you call the, the, the police department, they, they have people who will respond to those kinds of situations. Since they can't be everywhere and see everything, it's important for members of the community to play that, that eyes and ears role and not, not to get involved themselves because it can be, you know, dangerous and that's not what you should do. But to call it in, in real time so that they can get there before, you know, while the event is still taking place.
All right. Do we have any other caller?
Mayor, that was the last caller.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Golani.
Yes, in response to Councilmember Brodmann, would you like me to mention those phone numbers?
Yes, please.
It's eight-one-eight-five-four-eight-three-three-zero-one and eight-one-eight-five-four-eight-four-nine-one-one. Yes.
Thank you. All right. Okay, those are the numbers, eight-one-eight-five-four-eight-three-three-zero-one and eight-one-eight-five-four-eight-four-nine-one-one if you want to call the police and tell them that there are people who do not follow the rules on coronavirus. Okay. So, so what we do now with this item, Mr. Garcia? No action?
Receive and file.
Right. Okay. Received and filed. Thank you. What's next on the agenda?
Next on the agenda is nine, nine hearing would be nine, a community development regarding public hearing on appeal of design review board's approval of design review board's case number two-zero-zero-four-seven-seven-zero located at one-two-four-eight Corona Drive, one resolution adopting a mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the project at one-two-four-eight Corona Drive, two, motion to sustain the design review board's decision to approve the design review board's application with conditions, three, motion to continue the matter directing the city attorney to draft findings reversing the design review board's decision and denying the project.
Thank you. Mr. Golani.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. I'm going to turn it over to Dennis Joe, our planner from Community Development Department for the introduction of this item and a presentation. And I do believe that the applicant and their team, as well as the appellant, are on the line.
Let's first listen to Dennis Joe, I guess, right? Do we have?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor Akajanian, members of the city council. I'll do my best to make this presentation brief, but I'll be sure to make, I'll hit the critical points. I'm going to wait for the tape to be shared. The next item before you is an appeal in regards to a designer review board case located at twelve-four-eight Corona Drive. The appellant's request is asking the city council to overturn the design review board's decision of approval for a project to construct a new two-story, two-thousand-nine-ninety-nine-square-foot single-family dwelling with an attached five-and-forty-five-square-foot two-car garage. The project's located in Adams Hill neighborhood. It's a vacant property approximately eight-thousand-eight-hundred. Has a steep uphill topography, approximately seventy percent. The zoning of the property as well as the surrounding neighborhood is R10R4 area district. As you can see on this slide here, further east across Vista Cerrova is the city of LA. Next slide here is photographs of the property, both taken from Corona Drive. The first one outlined in blue on the top is looking at the subject property in the southeast direction. And the second one on the bottom, outlined in red, is looking northeast of the subject property. Moving forward on, on site planning, the, will, will be configured with code-compliant setbacks at fifteen feet from the street front, twelve-and-a-half feet from the north interior, ten feet from the eastern interior, and seventy-six linear feet from the southern interior property. The grading will be approximately one-thousand-fifty-nine cubic yards. And this is to accommodate to set in the building pad, to set into the terrain. Mr. Priest, just to briefly go over the project history, this project was reviewed by the DRB three times. This is the rendering of the first design in 2018. The design review board decision was a return for redesign, return for redesign, which the conditions were to greatly reduce the mass and scale, reduce the facade width, and redesign the finished materials to be more complementary with the Adams Hill neighborhood. This is the second design by the designer review board in 2018. This version here included a reduction of approximately forty-eight square feet. And that area of volume being reduced is outlined in the registered area on the slide. The board's decision was once again, return for redesign, and once again to reduce mass and scale, facade width, simplify materials, and they asked for supplemental materials such as additional geotech and grading. This is the item which was reviewed this year in 2020. And this version included a reduction of approximately two-hundred-and-nineteen square feet. And once again, it has, it's, the area of reduction is shaded in red. Decision by the board for this one was approval with condition. Moving on to the appellant's basis of appeal, the first one being, the, 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 the project is inconsistent with Glendale's comprehensive design guidelines. The amount of grading and the use of retaining walls should be, should be minimized and/or avoided. Hillside design guidelines discourages excess grade, which causes major alterations to the hillside scarring. And it will be overexcavation to create a flat side or rear yard. However, it proposed grading for this project is to set the building into the terrain in allowing the step-two-story profile to follow the natural upslope of the property. Staff believes this design achieves the guidelines' objectives. The applicant further contends, the geotechnical investigation is based on assumptions because of the grading load C three-two feet, and the test pits, the test pits explored were only five feet into the ground. The designer review board did not take this in consideration before rendering a decision. As part of the project's environmental review, a geotech report was produced, which evaluated the slopes and formulated recommendations for the building's design and construction methods. Subsurface explorations were conducted. Bedrock was encountered at all six test pits at a depth of five feet. The bedrock was, is expected to provide very good support through conventional spread footing. The geotech report's conclusion did disclaim that the recommendations were based on the six exploratory window test pits, and variations between these windows are possible. As a result, mitigation measure, this one being the first one, which reads, site work should be, should be made under continuous observation and testing to identify if significant variations are noted in the geological features of the underlying bedrock. And the purpose of this mitigation is to confirm the geotech's findings through continuous observation through various construction phases, phases such as slope cuts into the back, bedrock, backfilling, shoring, as well as pouring of foundations. Appeal number three, the geotechnical report did not investigate or analyze potential risk of constructive wave vibration. In response to, to appeal number three, the applicant had a vibration memo prepared by Meridian. It's not, is new for the purposes of this appeal. It, it provides new information altering the conclusions of the M and D. In fact, the memo amplifies and clarifies the M and D's findings. This, this vibration memo identifies the closest retaining wall, I'm sorry, the closest dwelling to the east. It's ten feet from the project's five-foot-tall retaining wall, fifteen feet from the dwelling's approximate twenty-five-foot-tall impact wall. And since the municipal code does not have, currently have a significant vibration perception threshold, the memorandum views the federal transportation authority's noise and vibration assessment threshold, which identifies construction activities exceed a zero-point-five particle velocity would be considered significant. For table one on your screen, heavy equipment such as pile drivers would be able to exceed the zero-point-five PPV threshold at a distance of twenty-five feet. However, the project does not include pile drivers, clam shovel drops, hydro mills or vibratory rollers as part of its constructions. The expected construction equipment used for this project will be large and small bulldozers, caisson drills, loaded trucks and jackhammings, as you can see here, shaded in green. See table two on your screen is additional table, which is adjusted to evaluate vibration at fifteen feet as a previous, in the previous slide. At these adjusted distances, the equipment to be used would not exceed the zero-point-five PPV thresholds at those distances. As a result, vibration would not exceed it at a significant level. Moving on to the last and final data of appeal number four. The Glendale Hillside ordinance calls for terrace retaining walls where retaining walls are necessary. The proposed wall is one continuous wall over three-two feet high and seventy-two feet wide. This is a slide of the project's site plan. And in reference, in orange, in the line going across is the mentioned retaining wall. This tall service building's rear wall, rear wall, and will be concealed by the dwelling's facade. As a result, terracing that retaining wall would be unnecessary for aesthetic purposes. This includes staff's presentation, the appellant's basis of appeal, and I'm moving.
Sorry, could you repeat again your last sentence? Your last?
Under base, under basis number, number four?
No, you, I mean, you got cut off, so if you want to say what you were saying, I, I didn't get it. No, you, I mean, you got cut off, so if you want to say what you were saying, I, I didn't get it, I don't know.
I apologize, Mayor. If it was the truly last one, I just concluded my presentation and stated I was available for conditions, for questions. If you'd like me to go over basis of appeal, number four, and staff's response, I'd be more than happy to do that for you, sir.
No, wait a minute, that's fine. All right, is there any question from Dennis Joe or Planet?
Uh, yes, I have a number of questions.
Okay, Mr. Roth.
Um, okay, well, let me start with the, on this, you know, I know there's, there's an issue on mass and scale and, and, and kind of whether the design meets the, the guidelines, but, but I want to focus on the, kind of the more the structural engineering issues with the hillside and the risks, things that people are very concerned about on that. So, I understand, you know, these, these test pits were, were, were drilled down. I forget how many feet you said, five feet or so. And, and AEF says, you know, that, I mean, they can't be sure that as you go down further, it's, it's, you know, they're not going to face something unexpected, right? So, we know that that's a possibility. And, and the mitigation is, you know, this sentence that says, "Site work should be made under continuous observation and testing." So, I mean, my question is, like, then what? So, you've got, well, I mean, first of all, who's, who's choosing the people that are going to be doing the continuous observation and testing? How do we, and, you know, how, how do we convince ourselves that these are the right people? And then, like, what happens if they, if they say, "Whoa, this is different than we thought"? It doesn't say anything about what they need to do, what their obligations are. And, and in the event that they find, hey, you know, we can't build here. Who's responsible for fixing up that hillside and putting it back the way it was? So, I, that's a whole bunch of stuff, but, but if you could address that, because that's, I think, a really key element for me is whether I believe that that mitigation is really enough.
Councilmember Brothman, Mayor, and members of the council. The purpose of the geotech mitigation is someone from the, will be hired to observe whether being a geotech engineer, a grading deputy, whatnot to, to verify each phase. And that's going to be to verify every construction phase occurring during grading. I do have the building official here also, who would answer as, as far as on the city's side. And my understanding is the city would be there also as well, but I'm going to allow the building official to answer that question. But if they discover variations that are significantly deviating from the findings of the report, they must stop work, and they must reanalyze, and they need to address it. The only real way to find out what exactly is, you know, on below the subsurface on the site is to excavate the whole entire site. And that's why they do six boring sites at the upper half and the lower half, just to get an idea what, what the composition is down below, and that's standard practice for engineering. Like I said before, the only way to find out what exactly is down there is to actually excavate it out. So, that's why we included this, this, this mitigation measure, so that there's constant observation going through every phase.
And are these our people, or are these, who's, who's selecting these people?
Miro, you're, you're on mute, Miro. To answer that, Councilmember Brothman, my name is Miro Lotzki. I'm your newest building official interim. I've dedicated 40 years of my life to construction, design, and enforcement. And I am a licensed civil and structural engineer. The people that are going to be designing this project are licensed engineers and licensed geotechnical as required by the state of California. The process up until now has not ended. When they submit to building and safety, they're going to be asked to produce additional reports, additional structural calculations, and we will be reviewing that by structural engineers in-house. They will be doing grading, which will be reviewed by civil engineers. Once approved, there'll be bonds that will be posted, that will be kept on file should anything go wrong. But before anything goes wrong, they go through the analytic process in order to minimize all of this. At the time of inspection, there are multiple inspectors that, that are observing this, this site. The geotechnical will be out there on a daily basis. Our building inspectors will be out there on a daily basis. Our grading inspector will be out there on a daily basis. And then they hire special inspectors for the very specific topics of, of construction, where they monitor on a minute-by-minute basis all the construction that's going on. So, this is, this is fairly typical of construction that we have throughout the city, including all the basement-type projects that we have in the downtown area, which normally exceed much deeper than the, than the cuts that we have on this project, and are much closer to adjacent commercial buildings where loads are, are much more significant. So, the challenge of this project, yes, but it, there, there's, there's a process that's typical and standard, and we have the qualified manpower, woman power to handle all this.
And is that all spelled out in the, is like a mitigation document?
All this is spelled out and demanded by the California Building Code and as amended with ordinances with the city of Glendale. So, all this gets, gets documented onto plans and reviewed back and forth, and then approved once all the information pertinent to quality assurance and the demands of a structural design to principles and codes placed before even construction starts.
Okay, um, I'll, I have some other questions, but I'll, I'll let somebody else go, and I'll, and maybe I'll come back later.
This is, I just want to say, this is a standard process in building. I mean, when they do, I mean, this is not like somebody goes and does something. This is all watched by the city, and, you know, this is a long process. It's not that the building owner or the contractors, they're going to do something and nobody knows about it. Continuously are inspectors, or any city's inspector, they go and look at what they are, the contractor is doing, or the developer is doing, or the owner of the property is doing. This is, I mean, the process which everybody goes through it. And engineer knows, this is, they have to provide all documentation. There are the standards by the state of California, and there are, you know, it's a long process. Anyway, anybody else has questions?
Sorry, the, the, the other half of my question, so what happens if we find, you know, that something unexpected? How, how does, how does, how does this hill get put back together?
May I answer that question?
Yes.
I'm the, my name is Sean Venus. I'm the engineering geologist for this project with Applied Earth Sciences. So, Councilman Brothman, it's a good question you ask. So, the, first of all, about the, the test holes and, and advancing the test holes. So, this is, as the building official said, this is, what we did here is a common practice, or, sorry, the planning official said, this is common practice, we did six test holes across the site, and we found more or less the same bedrock type. Now, we've done several dozen projects in the Adams Hill area, so we're familiar with what we found there. And what we found on this site is, you know, basically either very similar or the same, practically speaking, is what we found elsewhere. So, we don't anticipate highly unusual conditions here geologically or soils, soils-wise speaking. In fact, if you drive by the site, you can see the bedrock exposed. You don't have to, you don't have to be a geologist to, to note that. As far as if we dig deeper and we find something different, it's always possible. It's unlikely on this site. This is what we're dealing with here is what's called a massive conglomerate that you could drill several hundred feet, and you'd be still in the same or similar material. Or certainly, within the depth of the excavation, the 30 feet or so, it's going to be the same conglomerate. And then the other question about what, what would happen if, if there were unusual circumstances found during the course of excavation? The hill doesn't generally get put back together, that's not what happens. What we do, I mean, in some cases it might, and it, it wouldn't in this case. My, what we would do is we'd reanalyze, we'd, we'd, we'd look at the excavation, say, okay, we anticipated conglomerate, it happens to be a different kind of a bedrock, or maybe there's a pocket of soil. How are we going to deal with this? We deal with it, it might, it might stall the construction for a temporary time, while we, the geotechnical engineers and the structural engineers, and perhaps architect, will get together and say, okay, how are we going to deal with this? Let's do a redesign, we'll go back to plan check. We tell the city engineers what, what we, what we encountered and why we made a change to the design. And they usually, maybe ask some questions, but approve it, and then they'd get, get, get on with the construction. It's very rare that a, a project is stopped in the middle of construction because of some change in conditions that would, that would halt the project completely. In fact, I've never seen that, so, and it's just, it's highly unlikely that that would happen on, on this site.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Is there any other question? Any council members?
Couple of questions.
Ms. Devine, Councilmember Devine.
Thank you, thank you. This is probably for staff about, you know, there have been three estimates of the cubic yards to be graded. 2018, it was 987, 2020, now we're up to 1,058. And then I see another report says it could be as much as 1,500 cubic yards. What is it? How, what, what are we, how, how many cubic yards are we excavating here?
Councilmember Devine, Mayor, Councilmembers. The project's cubic yards rating changes as they adapted their design to reduce the mass and scale as the project moved along from 2018 to 2019, and then we got our final product that was approved by the board in 2020. So, the cubic yards does change. The, the, the estimated rating by the applicant is 1,059 cubic yards. The 1,500 cubic yard is a, that, that number was provided by the higher geologists from a comment that was received by, from the public.
Okay, now, let, okay, let me ask you this, this is about our grading permits, okay? Section 1A dash 129, permit issuance. And it says, "No permit issued for export, import of earth materials involving ingress and egress on streets having less than 30 feet in usable width. Corona is 19 feet wide." How did they get a permit for this?
Corona has not received a building permit yet. I, I'm, generally when a permit is issued, a traffic control plan needs to be approved by our Public Works Department, which they will review the construction, the, the equipment, of the proceeding, the duration, and they will identify what, what they will be writing to during the construction phases. And I, I talk about, for example, when are they going to provide flagmen certain days and analyze haul routes. Now, usually for this, traffic control plan is reviewed by our Public Works Department.
Okay, so, so this is, this is one of the, you know, the conditions that goes along with that permit and that 30 feet versus this 19. One of the conditions is that the hauling equipment is regulated, the size of the hauling equipment is regulated by the width of the street. That means that if the street is 19 feet, and there's no, there is no curb, no sidewalk, then the equip, the hauling equipment is, trucks are going to have to be small, which means that that could increase the number of days of hauling, it could be up to two months. And that would impact all the parking on that street. The, I mean, just, it would really be a kind of hardship, don't you think?
I would like to answer that, Councilmember Devine.
Okay.
We actually have garbage trucks that roll up and down those hills on a regular basis. And the vehicles, though much larger, they are going to be, through Public Works, approved haul routes. And I'd like to also give an example of other areas, such as the Mount Washington area, where streets are even much more narrower, and projects of areas much steeper, and still they're able to accommodate the removal of soils. Is it, is it more difficult? Yes. Is it going to take a little bit more time? Yes. But it is something that, that gets, that gets monitored, it gets inspected, and, and it's part of the process of, of putting together construction for homes in, in the city.
Right, well, that, that, that's, and what about the condition that says that all vehicle loads shall be trimmed and watered? And according to my resources, there's no water available on this site.
I, I know by SQAMD for dust, digit of dust, there's usually, their mitigations is, you would do that from a water truck, so that as grading excavation goes, occurs, as they're putting on haul trucks onto a dump truck, they're spraying the ground so the dust is not kicking up into air and getting onto adjacent properties. I believe that's what that, that references.
I agree, Councilmember.
Okay, and also, I noticed, and we talked about this, and I'll have you explain this as well, if I can find it. Report the, I'm sorry to, I just have to find this, and then report the, the environmental hazards, this is the landslide-prone in our own city subdivision map. And this property happens to be in that area, specified as landslide-prone.
There are landslide-prone areas identified are a safety element down at Hill. A portion of that goes through this site, and that's really on the corner where the driveway is being excavated around the area. But for the most part, where the building footprint is going to occur, and the majority of the grading is going to be happening, it's going to be outside that landslide-prone area, which I believe the AES report does touch up on that. And that's part of the reason why they do the boring pits, to analyze what's under the subsurface. And then they come up with design and construction recommendations.
Okay, those are my questions for now, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember, I'd like to add something to that.
Okay.
Regardless of whether a project is within a, a prone area like, such as this, it is a demand that a geotechnical report include a slope stability analysis on three levels, a general slope stability, a seismic slope stability, and a superficial. So, all these issues will be resolved before construction ever starts.
Thank you. Is there any other question by my colleagues?
Mayor, I do have three callers on the line.
Okay, let's go to the callers.
Well, hold on, Mr. Mayor, is there a presentation? So, this was staff. Is the, is the appellant going to present and the applicant, or?
I'm the applicant, so I, if I can present.
I mean, it's not to the mayor, I can't, I would love to call on you, but I, it's not my role.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, so what I would suggest, again, the appellant has the burden of proof. So, the recommendation would be to allow the appellant and his or her team get a certain amount of time. And then, and then allow the applicant.
I do that, but first I want to go to the callers, or go to?
I, my recommendation would first be to allow the presentation to go forward.
How much time do you need? I don't have the name, the appellant, how much time you need?
If I can have 10 or 11 minutes, please.
10? You're the only one that?
No, I'm one, I'm presenting, and then I have a number of callers that are standing in line to call. But I'd like to start with my.
Do we know how many callers?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I, I think she, what she's saying, she doesn't have a team, so she, she's going to speak as the appellant. And then there are going to be other neighbors and, and representatives that are just going to speak. So, my recommendation is to let her speak, then let the applicant team speak, and then just call them the speaker.
I give you 10 minutes to present your case, and then applicant will have 10 minutes, then we're going to go to callers. then we're going to go to callers. I think that will be the easiest way. All right, I'm listening now, we are listening.
Just, hey, I'm going to share my presentation with you, hopefully you can see that. Um, so, this is, uh, a drone that we flew.
I just want to make sure, Ms. Sophia Strada, is the applicant, appen, right? You are appen, right? So must, but I just want to make sure the name is right, Sophia Strada, because there's no name there, so I want to make sure that, so then, the applicant.
I'm going to start my clock?
Yes, I will tell you when we'll start, and then applicant will have Mr. Creo, Eduardo Creo would have ten minutes, all right? Let's have the clock rolling, and you can start now.
Thank you, um, that first picture is, I'm going to demonstrate a series of pictures of erosion in that hillside. There's about ten properties on that whole strip of land, and I've circled some of the area so that you can see it. Um, this first picture is a very close-up picture of, uh, erosion, and I want to point out that what the geologist's reports keep referencing are bedrock, but in fact, it's just soil, and that's about ten by twenty feet, a chunk of dirt that's disintegrated. You don't see boulders or rock or anything like that, you just see dirt disintegrated, and you could see it, it spilled over to the street. This is the bedrock that everybody's referring to. It's soil, it's brown, and look at the bottom there, it's disintegrated, it's become pulverized, powdery, sandy, there's no rocks in there, so even if you were to drill down and you were to find, you would find this bedrock that in the end becomes soil dirt, that's pul- uh, pulverizes. Here's another example of another, um, uh, um, erosion, uh, you see how it looks bedrocky there, and then it just disintegrates? I'm really trying to simplify it for you. This is a very close-up of the, right in front of the, where the proposed, um, developer is going to develop, uh, this home, uh, look at that big chunk of dirt that just fell off, you know, and it just disintegrated. You don't see any boulders there, this easily disintegrates, my point that I'm trying to make is it easily disintegrates with mild pressure, and this isn't us destroying the, the hillside, it's just natural, natural erosion because of the rain. Uh, this is a picture of Adams Hill and the windy roads, and a trash truck, uh, sideswiped my daughter's car, cost the city three, four hundred dollars. Why? Because you, oh, twelve hundred dollars, my husband just yelled at me saying twelve hundred dollars. Um, if there's just no room in that windy, narrow road for us to pass through when the trash cans are there, if you're going to be having all that, the trucks piling on and doing excavation, this is a very narrow road. Here's a picture of balcony, um, it's ten feet away from the nearest property line. I keep seeing seventy-two feet, but I thought it was eighty-two feet, that retaining wall is going to be anywhere from seventy-two feet to eight, two feet, uh, long, and it's going to be anywhere from twenty-two to twenty-five feet high. Um, let's spend a little bit of time here, um, these are the three homes that are going to be impacted, the first home is in white with the four caissons, and then the second White House, and then the gray house, the third one on the right. Um, notice that the two homes on the far right are not on caissons, we were built on the, right on the top of the hillside, so I want to be clear that it's one thousand one hundred cubic yards that you're going to remove, you're not going to remove one thousand fifty, you're going to backfill and put fifty feet, fifty cubic yards back in there, but your reports say that you're going to take out one thousand one hundred. And the reason fifteen hundred has been floating around is because two of the geologists, one that I hired, said, you know, you're probably just going to excavate one thousand one hundred at the minimum, it's possible that you might, with more retaining and more shoring, you might have to excavate two thousand five hundred, so I wanted to clarify that point. Um, there is no guarantees that the jackhammers won't compromise the foundation, I appreciate the report that, um, the geologist produced earlier, but, uh, I, the jackhammers have vibrations, and, uh, I, I'll have to study the report a little bit more. But it does say in the report, down at the bottom, that I have a little board there that says that the excavation will be, uh, deeper bedrock flooring and the use of jackhammer will be required. Up until a few minutes ago, didn't have a list of all the heavy machinery that they'll be using, so I just wanted to point out some of the machinery that was mentioned. This, uh, slide here wants to, I want to demonstrate two points, the homes in the circle with the big red, I've talked to the neighbors there, and their foundation has cracked, um, every eight feet, and, um, it's because the he- the, the hillside up there is very sandy, and it's getting to erode, so I wanted to share with you that there are two homes already up there that have e- excavation. Um, the circle on the right, um, is a vacant lot that we've been trying to, uh, somebody's been trying to build for the past fourteen years, uh, short story on that is that, uh, the developer ran out of money, uh, so he sold the plans and the, and the half-built home, uh, fourteen years later, we're still trying to get that, uh, property built, they just put in the windows this weekend, so great, uh, this summer, so great, but it's, it's fourteen years. Um, this morning I saw two boys running there to, to bait, so it's, it becomes a hazard for, uh, the neighbors where people do squat at night, um, but i- it's just, I wanted to point out that that vacant lot is diff- i- it just shows that it's difficult to build here, and that's a different lot than this, this, uh, proposed property, but, um, and to Mr. Minas, he said that, uh, he's built or, uh, looked at dozens of properties or many properties at Adams Hills. I've lived here a long time, and I've never seen this many new home, I haven't seen too many homes being built in Adams Hill. There's another subject matter expert, Randy Werner, who's, uh, on the board of Adams Hill, I don't, I, I don't, I doubt that you've built that many homes up here, if you did, I'd like to see the addresses. Um, the, the homes on this slide, uh, are the two homes that have, uh, cracks on their foundation every eight feet, I just want to point that out, they're not right above the subjected property that's being proposed, they're a little further away, but I just wanted to prove my point that they are homes that have foundation problems. Um, the point that I want to make here is that the city's requiring the, uh, developer to have a fifteen percent back in the front for their driveway, but yet, um, there is a hillside guideline that says there should be a twenty-five foot radius, uh, and, but this property butts up against the other property line, and there's only ten feet in between. This is a better picture. So a picture on the left, it's the proposed property, the picture on the right is the, um, one of the neighbors, and that circle represents ten feet, yet the hillside ordinance, picture number six over on your right, shows that there should be a minimum twenty-foot radius curve, and when we asked that question from DRB last time in May twenty twenty, they gave us some answer that it didn't apply to this hillside or because it wasn't a new, it wasn't a new development, and I just don't understand why you discriminate against this vacant lot versus other vacant lots. So I'd like for staff to be a little bit more clear about why the twenty-five foot minimum radius isn't addressed or enforced. Okay, I want to spend some more time and most of my time in, in, in here. Um, most of the pictures that I've shown you have demonstrated the erosion, that's the word that I really want you to focus on, erosion. Um, I want to def- this definition under sandstone and conglomerate bedrock is directly from the geologist's report, page six, and I want to walk you through that definition, and I spent a little bit of time trying to figure out what all those words meant. It says bedrock was encountered in all the test pits, remember they said six, bedrock consists of thick bedded to massive sandstone. Let me, let me define sandstone for you, it's a clay-like sedimentary rock mainly of sandgrains that are very common in soil. Conglomerate is a word, another fancy word for, for meaning of a number of different things or parts that are put or grouped together to form a whole, basically soil, with medium to coarse, subangular, meaning that the grain is angular or rounded, they go on to say that it's grains. Diorite, I want to spend a few minutes talking about diorites. Diorite is formed of lava or magna, which is, um, uh, rock-like composition, similar to, but they talk about grains, they don't say that that rock is made out, that, that diorite is full of rock, they're, they're just saying that it's grains. The next word is shale. Shale is defined down there, uh, that looks very similar to clay, and if you look at my picture versus the, the vacant lot, the pictures look a lot like the clay, uh, the reddish color and the brownish color, and decomposes very easily. In fact, the yell, the words that I've highlighted in yellow for you say, crumbly to slightly friable. I've defined what the word friable means, it means easily crumble or reduced to powder. So if my pages, if my past twelve pages of pictures or presentations haven't demonstrated to you that this hillside has been eroding over years, and that you can't find any rock or granite, I, I find it, uh, you know, everybody talks, everybody's been talking loosely about this misconception of saying loose, loosely saying that it's bedrock that is made of granite. There's no granite in this hillside, guys, it's easily decomposed clay soil, and if you undermine and excavate one thousand one hundred cubic yards minimum, it could, it could potential for more, you're really un- finding the foundation of those three homes right there, um, and then up until today, I haven't really heard about any remediations or what would happen, this is the first time I've heard about the bond, and I wish that the, the neighbor, that the developer had talked to us about that when they had an opportunity to talk to us about that, and I want to be clear, he's a developer, uh, he's associated with three engineering companies, uh, he lives in Downey, has a beautiful home there, it's three thousand square feet, he bought three vacant lots that were undesirable, he rezoned them, and all of a sudden, he has the ratio that he needs to build, but the safety matter is still a concern. I just don't understand, uh, we're going to spend so much money, so much resources, uh, the engineer talked about all this in-house calculation, civil engineers, that's a lot of money on your side, guys, uh, to be, have the multiple inspectors out there, and I know that's part of the process, and I appreciate it.
Ms. Strada, your time is up. Okay, now, the applicant, uh, or the representative of applicant, uh, who wants to present the case? The applicant or representative of the applicant? Is there anybody there?
Yes, hi, how are you?
Um, hi, my name is Elisa, and I'm, I'm the property owner, and I'm here with Eduardo, also property owner. Um, and the first thing that I would like to say to you guys is that we are not developers, we actually wanted to build this house for ourselves, um, and we started this process about five years ago. Um, every time we went to the, uh, to the meeting, we were met with many objections on why we should not be allowed to develop, develop our own property. Our proposed home design was finally approved by the design review board a few months ago. During the, the three meetings of the war, we provided to the neighbors in the city of Glendale with different opinions and reports from professionals to ease any, any concerns, including environmental reports, justice report, tolls report, and then now we're providing with the vibration report, and we have followed the design guidelines of the city of Glendale. And the reason why we provided these reports is to reassure and to give peace of mind to the neighbors that we will build our home for accommodations of professionals and the building and safety department of the city of Glendale. It is in our best interest to build a safe home. We will, we will follow all typical construction methods, our proposed home meets the Glendale design criteria, and tonight I am asking the city council members here to plead with fair and neutral in deciding on this development. We have done everything we can to comply with requests from the beginning, um, we spoke to the president of the homeowners association for any suggestions to the design, uh, we promoted the geologist's reports to the neighbors, and we addressed all the design review concerns during this process, and, um, at this moment, I feel that, um, the neighbors are trying to find any excuse to, to deny us from our right to building our property. And, um, we would like to be given the same opportunity that any property owner would enjoy, please trust physical Glendale, various departments, including the design review board, other professionals and expertise to ensure that the building safety guidelines are followed. You want to add anything?
Um, and then for any technical questions, our, uh, geologist, Sean, and our vibration consultant are here to answer technical questions.
Okay, uh, so, anybody else from the, from the owner's side, applicant's side, wants to add, because they still have few minutes, I guess, right?
Uh, Mayor, correct, they have eight minutes.
Eight minutes?
Yes, the applicant's side has eight minutes.
Oh, okay. From applicant's side, anybody wants to add anything? If there is a?
Maybe if, if you could maybe cover some of the, uh, some of the comments that the applicant had regarding the stone, um, and the rock?
Yeah, uh, got it. So, um, i- it, it is a bedrock material there, it, that, that doesn't mean it's, uh, it, bedrock comes in different shapes, sizes, and kinds, and we, like we said, this is, this is sandstone conglomerate, and that's what it is, it's not clay, and it's not considered a soil, uh, from our, uh, geotechnical professional purview, okay, so, uh, so it, it is, as we said, the, the upper material is weathered and crumbly, and as you get deeper, it's usually more competent, we did indicate in the report that it's what we call well-indurated, which means well-cemented, that it's not a soil material. Um, there was some comments about the slope stability, the slopes, this, this is a, a case where it can be argued that the site undeveloped is more prone to erosion and sloughing and sliding, particularly the road cut in the, right off of Corona Drive, then the finished product will be, the finished product will be a home, and it'll be built, constructed up to the current code, and, uh, the area of the, the building pad will no longer have any erosion problem. Um, I'm not an expert on vibrations, but, uh, as, uh, as the planning official said, this type of construction is done routinely, uh, with the way it's designed with shoring piles, in this case, the, the line of excavation is, is at least ten feet away from the nearest building, in fact, it's more, uh, uh, maybe on the order of fifteen feet away. Uh, we, we work on projects where it's property line to property line, a building being constructed right up against a building, and it's used, we, we use the same protocol and the same techniques and, and recommendations. And one last comment about the, um, the inspections, uh, I think Councilman Brodmann asked, who actually does the inspections, who decides who, who's out there? Uh, the, the applicant has, doesn't have to go with the original consultant, us, for the inspection phase, but usually they do, and so if we are the consultant for the construction inspection phase, it'd be myself and the soil engineer, Carl Minas, who would decide which one of our guys would be, would be out on the site, either performing continuous or periodic inspections, and that would be based on the, our, our staff expertise with respect to what's taking place on the site at a given time. And, um, uh, every so often, we'll make visits to the site over the course of construction, usually to start the project, and then at some point during the interim, if there's, if there's issues, obviously we come up, but, um, so, so that, that was an unanswered question from earlier, I wanted to answer as well.
Thank you. Okay, we go to, I guess, the callers, the applicant and applicant spoke, so let's go to the callers.
Jefferson Black, you're live, Jefferson?
Yes.
Jefferson, can you hear me?
Yes.
Jefferson, can you turn off your TV? Or move away from the TV, Jefferson? Jefferson Black, can you hear me?
Oh, here, hello?
Hi, Jefferson, can, you're live.
Hi, yes, uh, Mr. Mayor, Glendale City Council members, hello.
Hi.
I am a longtime Corona Drive resident, former board member of the Adams Hill Homeowners Association, um, I am in opposition, of course, to the, uh, proposal at twelve forty-eight Corona Drive, um, I believe that digging, excavation, construction on that plot of ground would be catastrophic, and under the existing geological conditions that they've reported, any new construction on a seventy percent slope would be suicidal, uh, it would be like, you know, building a, making a, constructing a building on the side of a cliff, basically. Um, major structural concern is the real danger of the, of the surrounding houses, they could be compromised, and with all the proposed. They could be compromised and with all the proposed land excavation, bulldozing, et cetera, surrounding structures could suffer damage or literally cave in on top of themselves and collapse in a man-made induced landslide. We're already jam-packed on Adams Hill and parking is either scarce or nonexistent. There's many, many narrow, blind corners, no wiggle room, pedestrians who don't even acknowledge cars, they get some pedestrian promenade ever since the pandemic started. And, uh, anyway, I, I implore you to stop the proposed 1248 Corona Drive structure and, uh, evidence proves that the hillside with its surrounding structures is too fragile to build upon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next caller, Jeff Hunter, you're live, Jeff?
Yes, Mayor, City Council, uh, thank you for taking time to listen to me. I am a longtime resident, uh, of Vista Superba, which would be directly above, uh, the building site. I want to put my concerns out that the last home that was built in this neighborhood in a similar fashion, the road directly outside, and this is an LA house, our, our hilltop, our side is Glendale, the other side of the street is Los Angeles. With that construction going on in a similar fashion, the water main in the street broke, the ground has caved in, you've had crews that have come out here to do partial repairs, uh, not completely fixed, but it was directly caused from the construction that was done in the neighborhood, on the hillside. I, I see the cracks, I have videos, I have photos of what the street looked like before construction and I have what it looked like after. I have the water seeping out of the ground and I have where the, the ground caved in. This is just one of my concerns. You're asking, the, the applicant is asking to remove roughly 1,100 square feet of earth. That equates, and I'm the transportation coordinator, that equates to 74.6 dump trucks coming in and out of this neighborhood. If someone in this neighborhood is health is compromised, heart attack, and all this work is going on, that road is just over 18 feet wide. When a trash truck is on this street, no one can get by. Now you're talking about putting a massive construction site directly across the street from a house that was started in 2006, it still looks like it did when they abandoned the project. That'd be another concern of mine is if these builders come into any complications and abandon this site like the last person that built on Corona Drive, now I'm sitting here with possibly compromised hillside and I sore for the neighbors to look at for another 14 years, seeing that the house that is already down there has not been completed in 14 years. But my number one concern is what, if anything, is anyone being concerned about our well-being and the possible erosion of the hillside from this construction? I've heard nothing from anyone about any, any guarantees put in place, any insurance put against us just in case something bad happened. The council had asked for the, the builders to reach out to the neighbors. They came by, knocked on the door and handed me some paperwork. They've never once had a conversation with all of us. They've never once come by, introduced themselves. At the request of the council, they were asked to do that. I do not believe that they're here to build a home for themselves. I think this is just like the other homes that have gone on in this neighborhood. They've built them, put up a sell sign and moved on.
Thank you.
I, I feel for them if, if, if they actually are here to build a home for themselves, but not at the safety of my children, my family and my neighbors that I've been around since 1993. You have people that have lived on this hillside since the 50s and one of these houses is already crumbling under foundation damage.
Your time is...
Eroding away.
Thank you, your time is up. Uh, you had three minutes, we went way beyond, beyond that. Thank you. Next caller, please.
Rondi Werner, Rondi? Rondi Werner, you're live, Rondi? Rondi, please, uh, turn off your TV or step away from it. Rondi? Go ahead, you're live.
Good evening, Mayor Ogudzani and city council members and staff. I'm Rondi Werner, Vice President of the Adams Hill Neighborhood Association and a certified construction contract administrator and construction specifier. The Adams Hill Neighborhood Association remains opposed to this development and we share our neighbors' concerns that this project could have irreversible and substantial negative impacts on safety and the neighboring properties. We do not believe that the proposed mitigation measures or the geotechnical studies are adequate to ensure that the lives and property of the families uphill and downhill from the site will not be in danger. The hillside development review policy in chapter 30 of the Glendale Municipal Code requires consideration of development being compatible with the surrounding neighborhood in terms of size, scale, mass, roofline orientation and site layout. This project violates all of these. The policy also requires that the architectural style and architectural elements of infill development be compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. And yet, although the design has been submitted three times, the architectural style remains very contemporary in stark contrast to the historic charm that characterizes Adams Hill. The code also requires minimizing alteration of terrain necessary for development and yet, as we've heard, extensive grading is being planned along with massive retaining walls. We also thought it was very telling that the two DRB members who were reviewing the project for the first time in May both voted no. As Board Member Welch said, he was able to look at the project with fresh eyes. In contrast, we believe that the other DRB members who had returned their project twice in the past had some misplaced feeling of obligation to approve it on the third round since there was an effort, however inadequate, to address some of the conditions placed on the project. Construction activity could take much longer and be much more costly than anticipated due to the challenges and expense of building on steep hillsides with specialized equipment on those streets. The home that others have mentioned on this very same block that has been under construction for over 14 years is a compelling indication that hillside projects on this slope are especially problematic and perhaps impossible to complete. Our neighbors do not want to see the hillside destroyed with extensive grading only to end up with another project that stalls for years at a time. We wish the developer no ill will, that his dream home should not be our community's nightmare. Please consider our safety and our municipal code and reverse the DRB decision and deny this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Werner.
Next caller, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, just, uh, not to interrupt, but I know, um, just got an email or a text from, uh, Mr. Kusakian about this particular item. I don't know if he wants to make that announcement now.
No, thank you. Um, and I hadn't realized that Mr. Minas was the soils engineer and I respect his work, but because I've received campaign contribution from Mr. Minas, I just checked with the city attorney just to be clear what our guidelines were and he's confirmed that it would present a conflict for me to participate in this. So I apologize for fi- finding out about this at this late hour and bringing the issue up, but, um, so at the risk of undoing all of the discussion that's happened, um, up to this point with my participation, I'm going to recuse myself until the next item. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. I just, uh, uh, I wonder if I received any count, um, money, because I don't know, Mr. Minas, Sean Minas, I don't know.
It's been a year.
Yeah, it's just the last 12 months.
A year, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry?
It's just the last 12 months, if you've received it in the last 12 months and so it's, obviously, well, your election was a number of years ago.
No, but I owed money, maybe they paid me afterward that, I mean, I contributed some money, probably later I collected money, I am not sure. But I don't know him, I have to tell you, I don't know him if, uh, because I don't know if he has to do anything with Mr. Carl Minas. Carl Minas, I know, but, uh, so now...
Carl's my father, Mr. Mayor.
So, did I get anything from you? I don't know.
But your, your question is what now?
The any contribution from you?
Actually, as I recall, yes, we did, it was, and it was within a year. Yes.
Before, more than a year ago?
He says within a year.
No, no, it was, it was not more than a year ago, it was with, within a year.
Then I guess I can't be here either.
So who's the pro temp? So I guess, uh, who's the, who's the, who's the?
Who's the pro temp this month?
So when you want to...
So you'll need to step off and, and for the rest of the item, Mr. Mayor?
Okay.
And, uh, we'll come get you when the item's over.
Uh, Councilmember Brodmann, that's pro temp.
Okay, so Councilmember Brodmann, you're the mayor pro temp, so, um, you'll have to run the rest of this hearing.
Okay, just tell me what I need to do. I guess we're still, still taking calls, right?
Yeah, so we're still taking calls.
Do we have one?
Yeah, do we have any more calls?
Yes, uh, Mayor Pro Temp, we do have, uh, we have three more calls.
And, and Arum, do you time the calls, since I'm not, I'm not there, uh, in, in, in person, do you time them and will you, will you give a flag when it's three minutes?
Yes, I do, yes, I do. Next caller is Lisa Morris. Lisa, you're live, go ahead.
Okay, just tell me what I need to do.
Lisa? Lisa, can you lower the volume on your TV or step away from the TV, you're live, Lisa?
Oh, Lisa, okay.
Lisa, you're live, go ahead, you have three minutes.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, can you step away from the TV or turn down the volume?
Okay, I have turned it down.
Go ahead, you're live now, you have three minutes.
Okay, all right, so it, this will be short and sweet. Um, I, I support the appellant who is against the project. I have lived, I have read their opposition letter and I have heard all the arguments tonight. And, um, the representatives for the project, as far as I'm concerned, did not adequately address the fear of the project excavation and removal will so seriously compromise the stability of the uphill property. As far as I'm concerned, this is a safety matter. You can just look at the hillside and common sense tells you that it's unbuildable and the inspectors should not be connected to the parties who involved in the project. They should be third party if they're uninterested. Um, so I'm opposed to the project and I support, uh, the appellate and the association members of the neighborhood and that's all.
Thank you, Lisa.
You have more?
Sean, you're live, Sean, go ahead, you have three minutes. Sean?
Thank you, um, this is Sean, I'm a member of, uh, Adams Hill and, uh, I've been a, been a resident here for a, for a little while now. Um, I am a, I am opposed to this project, uh, it's 1248, uh, Corona Drive. I don't believe that it should be, uh, I mean, I, I think this is a single loaded street, so, I mean, there's, there's, there's no houses on this side of the street. If you look, you know, up, up and down the street, no houses have been built here in the, uh, you know, 60 to 70 years, uh, that the, the rest of the houses have been standing here. So, um, like why would, why would one be built right now? And, uh, you know, also, it's real, really interesting to find out that two people can't vote right now because, um, you know, they're being paid by the geologist, um, of the, uh, of the people that are trying to build here. So, you know, to me, that says this, this project shouldn't be built. Um, you know, I don't know what else I have to say, you know? Honestly, um, soil report regardless. Yeah, that's all I have. With that, I give floor back.
Thank you.
Javier Estrada, you're live, Javier, you're live?
Good evening, um, Mr. Mayor and the city council. Thanks for listening to our, our please. Um, I want to start with the, uh, subject of the whole question about the illegality of Mr. Savan Ben Alian's, uh, vote counting, even though he should have, uh, recused himself from the DRB board on the last, uh, meeting because of his election to the college board. Uh, the city attorney, uh, responded to that question and his response was having the, the, he said it's okay that he voted because the, Mr. Ben, Ben Lanyan and the DRB didn't know about the rule. Uh, Mike, uh, I, I think that that is such an irresponsible and subjective answer. And since when does ignorance of the law excuse anyone from following it? This attitude is so dismissive of our community and what is so frustrating to us is that the tie-breaking vote was cast by an illegal member of the board. At the last DRB meeting, the chairman said that the applicant had complied, uh, with all requests, the facts state otherwise. In 2018, DRB told applicant to significantly reduce the size and scope of the project. Significantly is the size is defined as great. Yes, applicant did reduce the square footage of the dwelling by 236 square feet, but at the same time, increased the square footage of the garage by 48 square feet. So that led to a total net decrease of only 217 square feet. That represents 7% decrease of the original project. Heck, uh, the sales tax in Glendale is 10%. That 7% to me doesn't come up to any level of significant, the word is significant, and I don't believe that 7% overall reduction, um, is significant at all. And the second way that the applicant hasn't complied at all with the DRB request is the total lack of transparency and unwillingness to speak to neighbors about the project. This was one of the conditions DRB asked for and it has in no way been met. Applicant isn't interested at all about being a good neighbor. The other, the utter lack of communication, the applicant to the neighbor tells us that this is just a, uh, a deal to the contractor and nothing more.
Javier?
Just don't endanger our homes in the process.
Javier, can you hear me?
Mr. Estrada, Mr. Estrada, hello, Mr. Estrada? Your three minutes is up.
Then they can't approve this project under these present conditions.
Javier? Sir, Mr. Estrada?
I hear you.
Yeah, your three, three minutes is up, sir.
Okay.
Thank you for calling.
Uh, there are no more callers, Mr. Jimmian?
Uh, Mayor Pro Temp Brodmann, there are no more callers.
Okay, thank you. So, um, somebody got me here, what do we, do we go to rebuttal or do we close the hearing at this point?
Uh, yes, uh, Councilman Brodmann, we, we go to rebuttal, so it's, uh, usually the order to let the applicant go next and then the, the appellant will have the last, uh, the last word. So you can assign, give the, the, each, each party, uh, a minute or two, or two or three minutes or however, however amount of time you feel is appropriate for them to rebut, rebut or respond to any comments that were made during the hearing.
Right, okay, so, um, the applicant, uh, would you like to make a rebuttal? Is the applicant there?
The Creos.
Are the Creo, oh, there, I see. The Creos, would you, yeah, you're muted. Um, would you like, uh, two minutes to make a rebuttal? Um, would you like, uh, two minutes to make a rebuttal on any of the points that were raised?
Uh, yes, I'll, I'll kind of go back to maybe some of the design process when we started this project, maybe like five years ago. Um, and we, we actually met with the, with the planning department, uh, multiple times before we submitted the first submittal, and in between, we went through that process again. Um, we've hired, uh, uh, we've actually had the original soil report. We've had a, uh, we did a secondary soil report, and then this final one with, uh, Platter Science. Um, we did, we went through getting a vibration report to make sure that our, our neighbors felt safe. So all the questions and concerns that they've had, we've hired professional consultants to look into it before we actually move forward. Uh, we've had the civil engineer do the, 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 um, quantity takeoff from the soil that's expected to be exported. Uh, we did a preliminary shoring plan, we had soils reports and vibration. Uh, we've had, uh, our architect look into it and see what their opinion was on the massing. Uh, we had two architects look at our project. And then the biggest thing is that we've actually not, we followed the hillside ordinance and the guidelines without asking for any kind of variance. So it fits within all the guidelines that the city has in their hillside variants.
Um, and then one more thing, before we even start this process, we actually met with, uh, the president of the Home Arts Association, and I emailed her the plans, and I told her what we were expecting to do and if there was any input that they wanted to give us regarding the design. Um, and of course, I went and knocked on people's door to, uh, talk to them. And so I, I feel that's everything that we can to, um, make people...
That's a lie.
Okay.
All right. All right, are you, are you finished?
Who said that's a lie?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought someone was telling me that I was finished.
No, no, you still have, you still have a, a little bit of time. Uh, somebody cut in and, um...
Said that's a lie. Everyone else should be muted, Arum.
That's not appreciated, so, um, let's not have anybody make any comments. Um, so, yeah, Ms. Creo, you can continue.
Um, yes, so, like I said, this, uh, was supposed to be our house, and we started this project about five years ago, and we just keep getting, um, rejection from all the neighbors. And again, we try to give them what they want and give them peace of mind, but at this point, I feel that there's nothing that we can give them. They just simply don't want us to build our home. And I feel that as property owners, we have every right to build our home, and we are following all of our, all of the guidelines.
Okay, thank you. Um, and, uh, okay, let's go to the appellant, Ms. Estrada. Would you like to make any final comments within two minutes?
Yes, thank you, thank you. Um, I think there's some unanswered questions which are opposed just as generality. What does the project look like if the applicant is forced to excavate more than the 1,100 cubic yards of dirt? What does that mean for the safety of our hillside? Can the geologist's reports be certain and guarantee what is underneath? No, we've, we've, we can't. I've presented compelling evidence that the, the clay is crumbling. Uh, the pit drilling did not go deep enough. I think if it had gone deeper than the five feet that they did, if it had gone twelve feet, that would be a little bit more compelling, but that geologist's report didn't have any compelling, uh, points for me to make you feel that there is bedrock underneath. No one is talking about the potential for mistakes or other provisions. What happens if there is a mudslide while they, while they, while they, while they build? Uh, will the, and I heard for the first time that there is going to be a bond issuance, so thank you for that. Um, does the applicant have enough money in the event a stronger retaining wall is created? Uh, Jeff talked about the neighbor on the LA side. His re, his foundation cost $500,000. He was required to do by the LA 17 K-tons. That's just the foundation. You haven't even started to put your three bedrooms and your two bath. So that's why we're sharing with you what we've observed. We've lived here a number of years. We've seen a couple of houses on the LA side, rarely on the Glendale side. Um, and it's expensive and it's costly. Um, our foundation has zero cracks. Sean has zero cracks, uh, Jeff has zero cracks. Um, and nobody even considers the environmental stress of the traffic with the streets. We're not even allowed to talk about that. So, um, and, uh, the Creos reached out to me. That's who they reached out to. They didn't reach out to my neighbors. I think they left a packet on somebody's driveway with no phone number, no information. They reached out to, uh, Rondi Warner, and she shared with them the hillside guidance and said, "This is a difficult project to do." And that's all that I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Thanks for, thanks for staying within the, uh, two minutes. That was exact. Okay. Um, do we, um, I guess before we close it out, should we check to see whether anyone has questions for the applicant or the appellant?
Um, I think that's appropriate, uh, Councilmember Brockman.
So do either of my colleagues, um, have any further questions for, uh, either of the parties?
Well, I have a question of the, uh, the appellant. Uh, do you have a geotechnical report that says there's danger if there's any excavation or if that house is constructed?
Yes, I submitted it as part of the packet that I sent to the city council, uh, last Tuesday or last Wednesday. I believe his name is E.D. Michael.
Yeah, what? I'm not sure I saw that in the packet.
Could you read that? Read that, that, uh, that language from the report?
Oh, my God.
And just, just so the record, it was, it was submitted, um, and it was, the information was included in the record and provided as a supplemental documentation to the, to the council. I know there was a lot of, there were a lot of documents that came in the last... There were a lot of information that came in the last week, so I can understand why you can't recall that particular one.
There's a key sentence or two. I mean, I don't want you to read the report. If there's a sentence or two that, um, would specifically answer that question, because I, I seem to remember there was.
What exhibit was that? If, if staff could direct me to which exhibit number?
Um, it wasn't an exhibit, it was a, uh, it's in the report now, I think, on the, the agenda. And I know, uh, Mr. Landsafame sent it to council last week when it came in.
Yeah, I've had it.
On, on, uh...
It's from Landsafame?
Yeah.
I can send it to you now if you'd like, Mr. Jarian.
Let me, um, check and just see what you have. See, we used to get these all in a packet, um, when we were in person in City Hall, and it would all be together, and we're, um, doing this electronically, so you don't really appreciate all the documents that are... Um... If it's from you, Mr. Landsafame, I don't have it. But staff, can staff just summarize it for me without, you know, Mr. Joe or the building official, if you saw that? What does that geotechnical expert opine?
Is there any chance I could speak, uh, in regards to that?
Who is that?
Who is that?
I'm, I'm the architect on the project.
Uh, no, 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 we're asking, we're asking for the appellant.
The other side.
The appellant, uh, did hire an engineer, Edward, I think was the last name that wrote, wrote a report.
E.D. Michael. Michael is the last name.
Michael, sorry. E.D. Michael.
Correct, but can I note that, that that report did not have any...
Mister, I'm sorry, you're out of order, sir.
Just a second, yeah.
I, I understand, you're out of order.
I have a question, and, uh, yeah, we'd like to get an answer to that.
Uh, yes, Mr., uh, Councilmember Najarian. Uh, the referenced, um, geologist's report is from the, the appellant. My understanding of this is it's a general reference of the Adams Hill neighborhood that just talks about what is Lamar's findings. And this is just a general, um, map of the area. And he goes in to talk about what type of, um, general composition of what can be found there. Uh, and it has a very general map of, uh, fingerings. When, when to describe that is when the massive brush or the type of material, it, it, it doesn't go in straight lines. It actually goes in, 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 in waves, like, and then there would be fingers of, um, a different composition. So his argument was, you don't know what air this subject property is on this general map. Uh, and he made some, uh, conclusions about, well, how do you know what this is? And, uh, on, on this Lamar's map or the Sanchez's map, I forgot which one is, is exactly. Uh, and he starts to talk about, um, the construction, his opinions of like, for example, the grading. Now, I'm trying to summarize this and, uh, to my memory, I skimmed through this right now. But I guess with the, the rebuttal would be from staff would be, they did hire some, uh, geotechnics to actually the site, and they did go out there and drill six boring holes, three up top or three on the bottom level, and they did observe where exactly, uh, what, what did they find on this property? Um, and that's the best way I can summarize it.
Okay, I, I, you know, I did go through it, and, um, okay. Uh, I, I did, I did see it from E.D. Michael, and thank you, Phil, for sending that to me. Um, it is a little bit of a, it's not exactly, uh, I think on par with the first report of the appellant, but that was my, that was my question.
Um, Ms. Estrada, was there any, anything you wanted to say in answer to that question?
Sure, um, at, in the earlier part, we had hired, um, outside counsel to help guide us through this process, and we hired specifically a real estate hillside. And so he was recommended, and he, he works a lot in the Malibu area. So he evaluated the first report that was presented by the developer. And what I got from that report is that it is inconclusive for anybody to say that there's massive bracke down there. And I think that's why I started to hear the word, um, bedrock that's made of granite. And my whole presentation today to council was to demonstrate to you that it's soil that disintegrates, and I've, I've shared a lot of pictures with you, and I think that demonstrates that it's not granite down there. With mild pressure, it will decompose, and I have plenty of pictures. And it, I don't know what else to say, but I think we've been consistent that soil does crumble easily.
Okay, thank you, thank you. And, and, um, maybe I'll, I'll let the Creos just, uh, wanted to say something about this engineering report, just so that we get that out of the way. You were going to make a comment about the...
That our report was actually based on testing of the specific site. Another one, I think it was just the general that covered the whole area.
Okay. Um, all right, are there any, any of my colleagues have other questions, or can we close the hearing? No questions? Okay, I'll, um, I think Mr. Garcia is just right. We, I'll close the hearing now, and then we'll go into deliberations?
That's correct.
Okay, so that's, the hearing is closed, and, um, now I guess I'd like to hear from my colleagues. Uh, what's, Councilmember Devine, what's your view?
I will, uh, I will make this, uh, short and sweet. Um, I visited the site back in May when it first came to, was coming actually to DRB. And I was there, and I just happened, happened to be there when, uh, one of the, uh, DRB members, actually Chris Welsh, arrived to, to, uh, look at the same site. I watched the DRB meeting and heard all of the comments that were made, and, uh, of course, read all of the reports. I think I knew, I know more about geology than I ever thought I, I would. Um, and based on, um, all of this, um, I, I can't support or vote to approve the resolution adopting the mitigated negative depth and the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, because there are such conflicting opinions between the applicant's geologist and the appellant's geologist, and also there are divergent evidence and testimony from both, from the applicant and the appellant. And I'm not convinced, I just am not convinced and cannot find and determine that the proposed mitigation monitoring that we talked about, this engineer is going to be there and that engineer is going, and our guy's going to be there one day, et cetera. And the reporting program, I don't believe, I'm just not convinced, uh, that this is going to reduce all the negative impacts of the project to less than significant, uh, uh, level. Uh, as far as the, um, uh, what's the, uh, the, uh, I can't support or vote for the motion to sustain the Design Review Board decision to approve the appeal, because I can't make the findings concerning site planning and mass and scale. Now, for the site planning, I don't believe that the project meets the intent of a particular section, 1.6.12 of the Comprehensive Design Guidelines, which state, number one, it's important to modify the landform as little as possible. Grading and construction of retaining walls should be minimized. This is going to be a 25-foot wall. Use of large retaining walls to flatten portions of the site is strongly discouraged. The project ignores all three of these guidelines. And as far as the mass and scale, um, in regards to that, although the second floor has been set back from the first floor, uh, based on the renderings and the elevations, I think the mass and scale of the building still presents the appearance of a monumental structure in that neighborhood that is not compatible with the character inherent within the surrounding homes. The neighboring homes are one story above street line. This house is 34 feet above the street line, and it is 82 feet wide, totally out of scale for that neighborhood. Uh, so, um, in saying all of that, I, um, cannot support, um, the findings concerning, uh, the site planning and mass and scale, and I, um, I cannot approve the, uh, I can, I have to over, over, throw the, uh, Design Review Board, uh, decision.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Najarian?
Uh, yeah, I'm, I think I know where this is going, but I'm gonna say my piece anyway. I think it's clear that, um, no one in the city of Glendale wants this house to be built. I've got letters from, uh, the Northwest, Northwest Glendale Homeowners Association. Of course, nobody in Adams Hill wants it built. I've got it from, I think, Far West, uh, laid in on, Far, Far North laid in on it, and Homeowners Coordinating Council. But, um, setting that aside, I just want to look at the four main points that the appellant made and sort of dispel them. So the first one is that the design is out of character, it's too big, and it's too much massing. So, Mr. Joe, do you have that, that slide that you showed from street level, looking at the, at the site? With the, um, there's a couple of slides you had, if you could pull that up?
Uh, yes, Councilmember Najarian, just give me a moment here, and I'll, I'll show...
So, I mean, I'll set the stage. This proposed home is dwarfed, dwarfed by the monster structures that tower over it. I don't know how anyone can say that this house, which is not any larger than the average home in the area, is out of scale with the surrounding homes. Uh, keep going, it'll, you'll see it. I mean, that perhaps is one, that's a rendition. Uh, but there's an actual photo of these homes that are, uh, towering above. I mean, there's just part of it. That home gessled into that hillside in no way is out of character with those huge monolithic walls for those four or five homes that are right above it. So I don't buy that argument, that it's, it's too big, it's out of scale, the mass is too big. I mean, just look at that. If anyone's been to that site, those homes are towering, uh, 60 feet above that home, and the walls that they have are perhaps 20 or 30 feet high, monolithic, no articulation, all those little buzzwords that, uh, the Design Review Board likes to use. So I don't buy that it's out of character. I think it's a nicely designed home. The second point was about the geotechnical. And, uh, the, the report that, uh, that was just referenced by the appellant does not say that this is a dangerous place. It does not say that a home cannot be built. It says that there should be some other, uh, mitigation efforts placed in, and in the conclusion, he goes down the list. And, uh, he goes right down... And he goes right down the list and talks about the things, including things like a bond and the inspection. Furthermore, we heard from our building official, who I had not met, but I think I'm very impressed with you, Miro, in terms of maintaining the safety of any sort of construction. I mean, he says this is going to be monitored almost minute by minute. The appellant has built six, has dug six test holes. How much more do you want him to do? It's going to be monitored continuously through this process. So in terms of weighing the evidence on, is this a doable project? Is there not, is there a danger? The word that was placed immediately before the word sandstone and loose, Mr. Minas defined, that was the word induration of moderately well indurated, that means it's cemented, moderately well cemented ground. So in terms of weighing the technical aspects, I think that the applied earth sciences is, carries greater weight than Mr. E D Michael, because he doesn't say you can't do it. He just says you need to do these, these little extra things. Form, I don't know, he talks about, number six is Forman Adams Hill Homeowners Association to address the problems. So I don't know where, that's kind of a, an outrageous statement for a technical expert to make. In any event, during the course of the building permits, this is all going to be scrutinized by our civil engineers, by our building official and the other experts in the city before a building permit is issued. So the issue that this is too dangerous, it can't be done, that's an argument that is not ripe at this point. And the evidence that we have so far does not support that. The third point that was raised was that the vibrations are going to be too much. Well, we saw the vibration study and the vibration levels for the type of construction that's proposed are well below the standard. So the vibration argument fails. The last argument that they make discusses the retaining wall and the terraced nature of a retaining wall. Well, this home is going to be abutting the retaining wall. Yes, there will be a retaining wall, but it's not going to be visible because the home is going to be built into the hillside in accordance with our hillside design guidelines. So it's not like you're going to see some huge retaining wall there from, from the footer to the top, the home is going to be against it. So the argument that the retaining wall is, should be undulated or terraced makes no sense because the home is going to be flat up against it. Furthermore, if the complaint is that it's loose soil in the area, well, a retaining wall of that nature is going to fortify the slope, as I've heard before. And I think as the, I'm not sure if the building official mentioned it or the technical expert, Mr. Minas. You know, the fact that it's a narrow road, yes, it's a narrow road, but there can be traffic guidelines instituted. Is this a nightmare? I mean, we don't have to get, you know, there's enough technical issues here to discuss on a technical basis, but someone called it a nightmare, someone called it suicidal. I, you know, I think, you know, that unnecessarily brings emotions into this. So, I mean, just based on the own objections that were made by the appellant, I don't think she makes the burden of proof on any one of them. This is a lot, it's a, it's a proper lot. The, the owner should be able to build something on there and, but nobody wants it. I mean, that's clear, nobody wants this house. I think it could be done. I think it's not that great of a leap. I think there are other homes in Adams Hill which are built into hillsides much steeper and much more precariously placed, you know, just like the ones you see right there above, above those flags. So, I mean, I would vote to, to support the DRB decision, to support the mitigated negative debt, but that doesn't look like we're going to go that way. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Najaria. So I guess it's up to, to me here. So first, I want to thank both parties. Everybody's done a lot of work on this over many years, so it's, it's difficult for us to come down on one side or the other. I, I do think that the, the house itself seems well designed, but I, I have to agree with Councilmember Devine that I think when you, you look at it from the street, and I, I went up there and, you know, tried to think of, look at the pictures and look at how that house is going to present on the street there, I really do think it, it, it looks monumental. And, you know, I, I know that there have been efforts to scale it back. The size has been reduced. I know that some of the, yeah, there's this word articulation or some of the, the way that the design has been changed. It, it is a lot better than it was, but I still think it doesn't pass the test as far as I can tell from the, from my reading of the, of the guidelines. So I, I don't think it passes that. And, but I think the more important issue is that we're being asked to sign off on a mitigated negative declaration. And I, I just feel there are enough questions that I'm not convinced that the environmental impacts that have been identified can be mitigated with the mitigation measures that have been laid out. I, I just don't feel confident enough in those mitigation measures and I, I just can't bring myself to, to signing off on that MND. I think, you know, the, the competing geologist report, although it's, it's much more general, they didn't dig, dig the holes, but I think they do present enough of, enough question that, that, you know, leads me to have doubts about the environmental impacts and whether they could be mitigated the way we say. So I, I'm, I'm going to be a no on signing off on the MND and on conformance with the hillside guidelines. So we, Mr. Garcia, I don't know how to do the roll call. I think there are different, different things we're voting on here.
So we need a motion, I mean, based on.
Okay, forgot about that part. Yeah, my first time. Okay, Councilmember Devine.
Yes, I'll move to reverse the DRB decision and to deny the mitigated negative debt.
If I, if I may, so the motion at 983, you don't need to deny the MND if you're not approving the project. You really just need to, 983 is a motion, we would need to prepare findings consistent with the deliberation, the points raised by Councilmembers Devine and Brotman. Anyway, so it would be 93 to continue the matter. Come back on January 12th, direct us to prepare draft findings for your consideration to reverse the DRB's decision.
Okay, so is that your motion, Councilmember Devine?
My motion.
Okay, and I will second that.
So just one question, Mr. Mayor Protem. Do we know when those, if any of those conflicts will be resolved? And that's the, you know what? That's the other thing, while we're on the topic, this is totally unacceptable. Who's ever in charge of these things for halfway through a, a discussion, a presentation for two council members, all of a sudden to drop out? That's not fair to, to staff, to the applicant, the appellant, any one of us. So, you know.
I agree with that.
Yeah, and I, I agree. We can't, we're going to try to, you know, undo this and try to figure out where the misstep was. The disclosure, the information was not included in the disclosure that's given to you. And then, and I, luckily for, for him, Councilman Kusaki realized it during the middle of the hearing and so made the inquiry. So we will, I'm not sure exactly, I think Councilman Kusaki said his is in late January and I don't know about, I don't know about the mayor. So we'll, we'll get that information. The council can always, you know, we'll bring it back on the 12th, but that won't be, that won't necess, that won't negate Councilmember Kusaki's conflict.
I mean, but it's, I think it's very good. And I hope my colleagues agree that we instituted this, this rule that says that if you get campaign donations, you should recuse yourself. I mean, I think we're all, that's not what I'm complaining about. It's just that this should be known ahead of time. I think it's a great rule. I think not every city has it. And I think we set the standard for, you know, anti, I don't want to use the word corruption, but anti-bias in our deliberations. So that's all I had to.
And just avoid the appearance of, of, you know, bias or, you know, propriety. I think that's part of the, part of the basis for the rule as well.
Right. Okay, so we will go to a roll call then?
Hold on, Mr. Mayor. Yes.
Okay, so Councilmember, oh, okay, I guess you.
Councilmember Devine?
Yes.
Councilmember Najaria?
No.
Mayor Protem Brotman?
Yes.
The motion passes, okay.
Okay, so, and now we call back the mayor.
Yeah, the mayor's on his way back to the dais and we're going to put Councilmember Kusaki back in the meeting.
Good job, Councilmember Brotman.
Boy, that was really stressful.
Okay, sorry for confusion, but I didn't know, I saw name of the applicant and the appellant, so I didn't know anybody else was involved. And I didn't know even the Mr. Minas, I did not meet him. So all of a sudden crossed my mind, I'm still not sure that I had to leave, but for the, I was, I tried to be cautious. So anyway, thank you for confusion. So now, next item, please.
Next item would be 9B Community Development Regarding Glendale Register Nomination Mills Act Application 305 East Randolph Street. One, resolution to designate the residential property at 305 East Randolph Street as a historic resource on the Glendale Register of Historic Resources as GR 135 Newton House and authorizing the city manager to enter into Mills Act Historic Property Contract with the property owner. Two, motion to deny the request of the property owner to designate the residential property at 305 East Randolph Street as a historic resource on the Glendale Register of Historic Resources.
Mr. Intrim City Manager Golani?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Member City Council. I'm going to turn it over to Jay Platt, our senior urban designer, for presentation on the site.
Mr. Platt?
Good evening, everyone. I will be as quick as possible. I'll run you through a few slides and answer any questions that you have. First, I must make sure I can get this done correctly and looked good. You see the full screen now?
Yes.
Yes, we do.
Thank you. We're looking at a house at 305 East Randolph Street. It was built in 1906, for those of you who've seen it over the years, and it's a pretty striking little house. It's definitely one of the most unusual homes that we have in Glendale. In fact, it's in a style that's so unique, we had to have a new category created for our historic districts because this is actually in the proposed Casa Verdugo district. And you can see it highlighted here at the corner of Randolph and Louise. It's kind of a fun historic corner because here is our little house that we're considering tonight. Across the street diagonally, we have the Casa Verdugo Restaurant, which was the second of the Casa Verdugo Restaurants. This was put on the Glendale Register by council a couple of years ago. So it's kind of an interesting dialogue between two very distinctive houses that we have here. The house was built in 1906, as I said. It was, you know, subject to postcard view, as you see on the right, and used as a kind of a booster kind of image for the neighborhood. It was first owned by a couple named Charles and Minnie Newton, and the Historic Preservation Commission is recommending that council call it the Newton House, which is in line with the city's policy for naming historic properties. Here's an image of the house from a little before 1926 and then images from the current condition that you see. And the house really has not changed a lot. There are a few changes around at the back and the side, but the front and the side facades, which are both very visible at the corner, are still almost identical to what you saw back in the day. What's interesting is the street numbering changed in the early 1920s and this house still has its address from when it was 927 East Randolph instead of today's 305 East Randolph. That's just a fun little historic bit. The, the real striking thing about the house, which has been considered to be in the neoclassical style, it's really kind of a hybrid and it's so unique, it's even hard to give it a style name. But you see these Ionic columns at the front porch and then you have this kind of frieze of raised stucco decoration that just kind of wraps around almost the entire house, which is what really makes it a striking and unique place. Otherwise, it's a fairly simple house, which is also unusual because it has a flat roof, which we don't usually see from this period. The design of the concrete work and just the overall sense of the house gives it this real kind of, it feels bigger than it really is. It's really just a relatively modest one-story house. It's got a lot of original details besides the columns and that frieze. We see an original front door, you see the door hardware here, some leaded glass windows. Almost all of the windows around the house are original windows. There was a change made to this bay window that you see on the right. It's kind of on the side, probably you can barely see that from the street. And a few other changes were made. There was some damage when a tree fell on this part of the house a number of years, many years ago, actually. And when the Historic Preservation Commission considered this property for designation, they looked at the kind of the missing frieze and the change to these, these doors here, and they actually felt that that told, tells part of the story of the house. And so they were okay with designation in its current condition. Ultimately, it was just heard last month by HPC and they voted unanimously to recommend that council put it on the register and also enter into a Mills Act contract with the owner, designated under criterion three, which we call our architecture criterion. Very rare, you know, and you've heard me say that we don't like to use the word unique, but I think it's, it's a valid word in this case. Very unique example of neoclassical style and a, for a single family house especially. And I didn't mention, it's also the oldest residence, as far as we know, in the entire Casa Verdugo neighborhood, which is under consideration as a historic district. And it's also really interesting historically, we learned a lot about that in the nomination for the Casa Verdugo, across the street. And we'll learn more when we finalize the historic district report that's under preparation right now. And I mentioned that it was to be called the Newton House in conformance with the city policy for naming. And the commission put two conditions on, or recommended two conditions for the Mills Act, pretty minor conditions, replace some inappropriate lock, wall, light fixtures around the side and the back. And then also there were a couple of panes of glass that are broken and just as a preventative issue to prevent water from getting in, they wanted the glass to be repaired wherever that's needed. So we'll work with the applicant to make sure that happens. And that's the end of the presentation and I'm available for questions. And I believe the, the person who filed the application and lives in the house is on the line if, if council has any questions, but they don't need to speak unless you want to hear from them at this hour. Sure.
I'm just curious, what's the improvement square footage of the improvement?
Of the house itself?
Yes.
You've asked that before and I should be ready with that answer and unfortunately I'm not. I assume it's less than 2,000 square feet, just, just eyeballing it. It's not, it's not a particularly large house.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other question from my colleagues?
I have a question for Jay.
Yes, please.
Can we put a condition on? Can we add a condition?
Yes, the council can add conditions, definitely.
Okay, I, I don't think it was one, I don't know if it was one of the, the Historic Preservation Commission's conditions, but I noticed that the French, these are not French doors in the back, in the back facade. You have a list as a front porch floor, and he's, but it's really the back. And it's one of the, you know, I I want to give Shannon, I forget what her, Hawkins, is it?
Holden, the owner.
Yes, for having this list of of work that she plans on doing for to the house. I I commend her for that.
Hold on, hold on, just background. Holden is a man, but his aunt Elizabeth and uncle actually live in the house, so.
Oh, I see, okay. But what I'd like to do is is have one of the conditions, the immediate conditions, be that they replace the French doors leading to the back garden with period accurate French doors. I I think it's an extraordinary house, and I'm I'm absolutely in favor of putting it on the registry.
And the 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 commission did consider the French doors as a replacement. And they actually chose not to go there. They thought the doors there were appropriate, but it's well within council's purview to 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 add that.
Oh, okay, thank you. Holden.
I'm sorry, why the commissioner did not want to do it?
I believe they felt that that part of the house had been damaged significantly by this collapsed tree, and they looked at that as telling part of the story of the house. And then also, when you think of French doors, traditionally, French doors have multiple panes of glass. When you think of how the glass works, this house doesn't have divided light windows, it just has one over one windows. So we wouldn't put in the traditional French doors. So if we wanted to have a glass door, I believe it would end up looking fairly close to what's there right now. The side lights are a little different, but but it wouldn't, it wouldn't look like the traditional French door that we think of.
Oh, okay, well.
Ms. Devine, are you satisfied?
I I just thought that since she has, he, I'm sorry, Holden, has it on the list of future projects, that, you know, that might be something nice to do right away. And are those lanterns on the back, is that, are those the ones that are going to be replaced?
Yeah, those little black light fixtures.
Yeah, yeah, okay, perfect, yeah, good.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Brot.
Just a question for for Jay. Didn't, you might have just said this, the Historic Preservation Commission, they they unanimously rejected the idea of changing out those French doors? I mean, they deliberated it and they decided not to do that, right?
Yeah, they they considered two things. They considered replacing the missing stucco ornamentation where the frieze is. And they considered the French doors. And we talked a lot about it. There was a lot of discussion that was actually kind of interesting. But they came, at the end, they voted not to require the replacement of either of those.
Oh, too bad.
Okay, well, I'm I'm happy with it. This is all over my head. So whether you keep the French, I mean, I'll let the Historic Preservation Commission find on that. I'm just, it's a beautiful house. I'm glad it's in the hands of people who really seem to love it and want to take care of it, so.
Thank you. Okay, is there any other comment?
Yeah, I I think that this is a a great example of the style. It's unique, certainly fits the criteria. You know, it would be great if those doors were there, but if they're not, that's, I think it it doesn't ruin the whole importance and significance of this property. Jay, you mentioned that this was in a proposed historical district?
Yes.
And when will that come to fruition?
I believe if things keep on track, it'll be sometime third quarter 2021, end of 2021. We're we're going to enter the signature gathering phase for the second petition early next year. That can take up to six months, according to the ordinance, or it could be faster. So and then we just have a few hearings once those petitions come in.
Okay, given given some of the things that are coming down, given some of the policies and and guidelines that are coming down from the state, I know I don't need to remind you that sooner is better. So we can have it designated as a historic neighborhood. Yeah, I I will support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other comment about this project? Any calls? No.
I do not have any calls, Mayor. I do believe there was a speaker before. I do not see him online anymore.
Okay.
No speaker.
We'll move the item if if there's no other comment.
Before we go to the comments, is there the owner of the property on?
She may, she may have dropped off. She's not the owner resident.
Fine, I wanted to hear from the person, but anyway, if they are not here, that's fine with me. All right, is there?
I'll I'll move the item.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
For the record. Councilmember Brotman?
Yeah.
Devine?
Yes.
Kusaki?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajian?
Yes, thank you.
Do we have to vote on the Mills Act or not, Mayor?
I don't know. Do we have to?
It's part of the, it's part, it was part of the motion.
Oh, it's included, right? All right, okay. Let's, do we have any call?
Next would be oral communications. Mayor, we do not have any callers.
Mr. Mayor, before we adjourn, if I could say something?
Yes, please.
I I didn't want to bring it up, but it's bothering me, so I do want to raise the issue or at least respond. I recused myself from the item regarding the a a appeal of the home that was being proposed on the hillside. And one of the callers claimed that the geologist had essentially tried to influence us with a contribution. And the soil engineer, I just want to say that, first of all, I've known Sean Minas since we were in college, since we were undergrads. And I I respect his friendship. I've known his entire family. To think that anyone can influence us, and first of all, was a matter of influence, I wouldn't have looked up. It was just by my good fortune that I happened to be home during COVID and have my computer accessible to me. And I was able to look up and see if he had made a contribution because we've been friends for so long. But you'll be hard pressed to find a more qualified, more experienced, more honest soils engineer and and geologist than Mr. Minas. And I think that anyone trying to cast aspersions on us, on me specifically, or trying to malign Mr. Minas, is way out of line. So I caution people to know all the facts before they jump to assumptions.
Thank you.
Mayor, before we close, I just got two phone calls that came in.
Let's listen to our callers.
Patrick Hagelpeon, you're live. Patrick?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council.
Good evening.
I I heard all of this, people are trying, they've been calling previously and talking about it, and they're trying to save our city from a single dispensary. But where were those same exact people when the first illegal delivery company popped up? And now we have like about 30 of them in Glendale. Not one single call was made in regards to that. That one dispensary or two, actually, can eliminate those bad actors because finally we will have a city ordinance to refer to. It's not like these delivery companies are doing anything different. Maybe even though even in a worse way, but servicing the same youth you guys are so worried about. But remember, not one call was made in the last three years. City Council and staff, I personally think it's time you guys take a step into the right thing by creating drops, regulating cannabis in our city with our own standards.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Elizabeth Chappell, you're next. Elizabeth, you're live. Elizabeth? Elizabeth, can you hear me? Ms. Chappell? Elizabeth Chappell? Elizabeth, can you hear me? Elizabeth, can you hear me?
They're having a problem to connect, maybe. Is there any other one beside Elizabeth?
No, Mayor, she's the last one.
Elizabeth Chappell, can you hear me?
All right. Is there a motion to?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Okay. With that, we adjourn at 11:40 PM. Thank you, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.